Good evening. Before we get started, just general announcement, if anybody would like to make a public comment, I'm sure most of you have, but please feel free to. We've got some yellow public comment cards that we need to turn in to the clerk before he speaks. And before we get started, I'd like to welcome Taff Welch to lead us in an invocation. She's from Community Christ Church.
Father, we come together knowing that we live in a country where we have many freedoms that other countries do not. The freedom to assemble, the freedom to elect officials, the freedom to vote, so many freedoms. And Father, we come here gathered together tonight, and I ask that you guide us in our voice, in our discussions, our comments, and in the voting of what needs to be done on a local level. So much of our government, local, county, state, and federal are intertwined. But at this particular meeting, may everything that needs to be said be said. May we all seek to understand each other. May we all look at what goes on in zonings and be able to understand the process of a local government. And Father, I thank you for the elected officials. I thank you for the staff that puts in so many hours, and they go sometimes unnamed, but they put in so much effort. A lot of effort goes into this meeting, but a lot of effort goes on day to day to make the city of Milton what it is. And Father, I just again ask you to guide us, that we might seek to understand, and that we might try our best as citizens and as officials and staff to continue to make the city of Milton what it is. In Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you, Taff. Good evening, and welcome everybody here tonight. We appreciate you being here and look forward to hearing from everybody. I'm going to call the regular meeting of Milton City Council, Monday, December 16, 2013, to order. Will the city clerk please call the roll and make general announcements?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I will be happy to call roll for the December 16, 2013, regular meeting. I would like to remind those in attendance to please silence all cell phones at this time. Those attending the meeting who would like to provide public comment, either during the public hearing or during the call for public comment, you are required to complete a public comment card prior to speaking on an item. There is no public comment for consent agenda items or items under first presentation. Those called to speak will be taken in the order that the speaker cards were received by the city clerk's staff prior to the beginning of tonight's meeting. All speakers will identify themselves by name, address, and organization if applicable. City council may allow public comment on either an agenda item or general public comment from a representative of such an organized group or association, provided that such an individual shall file a notarized affidavit that they have the authority to speak on behalf of said organization on a form provided by the city clerk prior to the agenda item being called. Demonstration of any sort within this chamber is prohibited, so please refrain from any applause, cheering, booing, outbursts, or dialogue with any person speaking. Please show the same respect to the person speaking that you will expect to receive yourself. Anyone in violation will be asked to leave. As I call roll this evening, please confirm your attendance. Mayor Joe Lockwood.
Here.
Councilmember Karen Thurman.
Here.
Councilmember Matt Koontz.
Here.
Councilmember Bill Lusk.
Here.
Councilmember Bert Hewitt.
Here.
Councilmember Joe Longoria.
Here.
Councilmember Rick Morick.
Here.
Would everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the liberty of justice for all. Again, welcome everybody here. Looks like we've got a packed house, and we've got a lot of business tonight, so I ask that everybody be patient, and we will work through this. So, thank you for being here. I'll ask the clerk to call our first item.
Our first item this evening is approval of the meeting agenda. Agenda item number 13, 290.
Okay. I know we need to add an executive session to discuss land acquisitions. Is there anything else that... Okay. Do I have a motion?
Mayor, I'll move to approve the meeting agenda with the addition of an executive session to discuss land acquisition.
Second. Okay, we've got a motion, Councilmember Lusk, second from Councilmember Koontz. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous. Okay, next item's public comment. Public comment is a time for citizens to share information with the mayor and city council, and to provide input and opinion on any matter that is not scheduled for its own public hearing during today's meeting. There's no discussion on the items on the consent agenda or first presentation from the public or from council. Each citizen who chooses to participate in public comment must complete a comment card and submit it to the city clerk. Please remember, this is not a time to engage the mayor or members of the city council in conversation. When your name is called, please come forward and speak into the microphone stating your name and address for the record. You'll have five minutes for remarks. Now, if we... As we have more people to speak, I'll be glad to ask the council to add time. Is there any general public comment?
We have one, sir.
Okay.
That would be Mr. Scott Stokowski.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Scott Stokowski. I live at 3154 Chipping Wood Court in Crooked Creek. And tonight, I'd just come before you briefly to speak on behalf of Hopewell Youth Association, of which I'm the immediate past president. Hopewell's been serving the community for about 30 years. We're currently the largest recreation program provider in the city of Milton, and we've got a strong working relationship with the city that goes back to the city's creation in 2007. Tonight, you're going to vote on an amendment to our agreement, which will signify the end of baseball as we know it at Bell Memorial Park, starting from the simple plans with one rectangle field to the expansion to our four fields, the acquisition of the Bennett House, some of you around four, and we've grown together to make the most out of our small park. We're in support of the agreement and appreciate the opportunity. We've had to work with staff in its planning, and we look forward to working with staff for the plans for the park expansion, as it begins in 2014. Thanks for your continued efforts and your support.
Thank you. Okay, is that all the general public comment?
Yes, sir, that's all.
Okay, we can move on to the consent agenda.
Our first item is approval of the December 2, 2013, regular city council meeting minutes. Agenda item number 13, 291. Next, approval of the December 9, 2013, work session city council meeting minutes. Agenda item number 13, 292. Next, approval of the financial statements for the period ending October 2013. This is agenda item number 13, 293. Our next consent agenda item is approval of the First Amendment to the Facility Use Agreement between the city of Milton and Hopewell Youth Association for the purpose of providing a youth baseball program at Bell Memorial Park. Agenda item number 13, 294. Next, approval of a professional services agreement between the city of Milton and Universal Engineering Sciences, Inc., for geotechnical work at Bell Memorial Park. Agenda item number 13, 295. Our sixth and final consent agenda item this evening is approval of a professional services agreement between the city of Milton and On-Site Civil Group, LLC, for a supplemental survey in support of the final engineering plans for the Bell Memorial Park reconstruction. This is agenda item number 13, 296.
Okay, do I have a motion? Second.
Mayor, I move that we accept the consent agenda, approve the consent agenda as read by the city clerk.
Second. Okay, we've got a motion for approval from Councilmember Longoria, second from Councilmember Morick. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Okay, tonight, we don't have any items under reports and presentations, so we'll move to our first presentation with the clerk. Please sound the first item.
Consideration of T. 13-03 VC. 08-330 Batesville Road by STC Two LLC Doing Business as Crown Castle USA to replace the existing 150-foot-high stealth-designed light pole telecommunications tower with a 195-foot-high monopine telecommunications tower and a two-part concurrent variance. First, to reduce the tower setbacks from adjacent property lines from 293 feet on all sides to A, 165 foot and 181 feet on the northwestern property lines; B, 175 feet on the northeastern property line; and C, 49 feet on the eastern property line, all as more particularly shown on the site plan filed herewith. Section 54.6 D. 2. And second, to waive the 20-foot landscaping buffer requirement as the ground equipment on the site will be shielded by a wooded slatted fence and existing vegetation. Section 54.6 E. This is agenda item number 13, 297.
Okay, do I have a motion on the first presentation item?
Mayor, I'll move to approve the reading of the first presentation.
I'll second it.
Okay, I have a motion by Councilmember Lusk, second by Councilmember Thurman. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous, city clerk. And we can move on to our first public hearing.
This is an alcohol beverage license application. Consideration of the issuance of an alcohol beverage license to 850 Fahrenheit Pizzeria, LLC Doing Business as 850 Fahrenheit Bar Pizza, located at 12635 Crab Apple Road, Suite 310, Milton, Georgia 30004. The applicant is Glenn Griffith for consumption on premise wine, malt beverages, and distilled spirits. This is agenda item number 13, 298. Ms. Stacy Inglis.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The applicant has met all of the requirements that we have in place, and this particular restaurant is actually going to be in the old Irwood's location, just to let you know where it is. So, staff recommends approval.
Okay, is there any questions on this? Okay. Then, is there any... Was there any comment on this, city?
No, sir, there is none.
Okay, I'll close the hearing on this, and ask for a motion in a second.
I'll make a motion to approve agenda item number 13298.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion for approval from Councilmember Koontz, second from Councilmember Thurman. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Is the applicant here? Okay. All right. The city clerk would please call the next public hearing item.
Next item is consideration of the issuance of an alcohol beverage license to Fuji and Inc. Doing Business as Volcano Asian Bistro, located at 5316 Windward Parkway, Milton, Georgia 30004. The applicant is Jenny Lynn for consumption on premise wine, malt beverages, and distilled spirits. Agenda item number 13, 299. Ms. Stacy Inglis.
This applicant has also met all of the requirements for this application, and the location where this is is the old Xion China Bistro, I think is the name, how you pronounce it, and staff recommends approval.
Okay. Do we have any public comments, city, on that one?
We do not, sir.
Okay, I'll close the hearing, and is there any questions from council? Not, I'll open for a motion.
Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve, agenda item number 13-299.
Second motion.
Okay, we've got an approval from Councilmember Thurman, second from Councilmember Lusk. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to our zoning agenda. The city clerk will please read the zoning rules and sound the first item.
At the second regularly scheduled meeting of the month, the mayor and city council consider a zoning agenda. These items include rezoning, petitions, modifications of zoning, use permits, and associated concurrent variances, in addition to ordinances, resolutions, and text amendments. I would like to acquaint you with some of the rules and procedures for this meeting. The applicant and all those speaking in support of an application will be allowed a total of 10 minutes to present the petition. The opposition will be allowed a total of 10 minutes to present its position. If time remains, the opposition will be allowed to rebut. The applicant may choose to save some of the time for rebuttal following the presentation by the opposition. Since the burden of proof is upon the applicant, the applicant will be allowed to make closing remarks, provided time remains with the allotted time. The city clerk will be keeping track of time and will inform you periodically of the remaining time for your presentation. Those called to speak will be taken in the order that the speaker cards were received by the city clerk prior to the beginning of tonight's meeting. All speakers will identify themselves by name, address, and organization if applicable before beginning their presentation. The Planning Commission has heard the rezoning agenda items, and recommendations have been forwarded to the mayor and city council for consideration and disposition. The applicant shall not submit material to the council during this meeting unless requested to do so. All material that you wish to be reviewed by the council in consideration of your application should be submitted to the community development department to be included in the normal distribution of packages to the council. When an opponent of a rezoning action has made, within two years immediately preceding the filing of the rezoning action being opposed, campaign contributions aggregating $250 or more to a local government official of the local government which will consider the application, it shall be the duty of the opponent to file a disclosure with the governing authority of the respective local government at least five days prior to the Planning Commission meeting. A violation of relevant state statute constitutes a misdemeanor. Therefore, if you have contributed $250 or more to a council member and you have not filed a disclosure prior to the Planning Commission meeting, the city attorney strongly suggests that you have someone else speak for your point of view. Our first zoning item this evening is consideration of RZ 1316 VC. 1306, northeast corner of Bethany Bend and Cogburn Road by Arrowhead Real Estate Partners, LLC, to rezone from AG One Agricultural to NUP Neighborhood Unit Plan to develop 28 single-family residences at a density of 3.08 units per acre, and to request the following concurrent variance to reduce the interior building separation from 14 feet to 10 feet for the entire development. Section 64-921K. This is agenda item number 13, 286. First presentation was heard at the December 2, 2013, regular council meeting. Ms. Kathy Field.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. In front of you on the first slide is an outline showing the proposed application in terms of its site. The second slide shows revised site plan submitted November 12, 2013. This is the grading plan submitted November 18, 2013. The next slides show some of the proposed architecture that was submitted to us on November Let's run through these. And this slide shows the proposed landscape buffer fence detail that was received by us on November 13, 2013. The subject site contains 9.09 acres. Parcel is undeveloped with AG One zoning. A total of 28 single-family residences are proposed. The applicant is requesting a rezoning to NUP Neighborhood Unit Plan District to build 28 single-family residences at an overall density of 3.08 units per acre. In terms of history and background on the site, prior to the current request for 28 single-family homes, the applicant submitted a prior plan pursuant to RZ 12-17 for an assisted living facility in single-family homes. The applicant withdrew the application to allow time for staff to begin the Highway Nine North Visioning Study to further study the subject site as well as properties along Highway Nine North of Bethany Bend. The Highway Nine North Visiting Study held the first meeting on February 6, 2013. After further evaluation of the situation, there was a need for a more detailed study of the subject site to help determine what types of uses would be appropriate. The city also retained Dr. Michael Elliott of the Southeast Negotiation Network. Dr. Elliott interviewed members of the Stakeholders Committee, which consisted of adjacent and nearby neighbors, as well as the subject site's owners. After these interviews, there were four meetings held to discuss and mediate a solution for the site. At the August 21, 2013, meeting of this group, a consensus was agreed upon with the majority of the stakeholder members to develop the property with 28 single-family residences. Staff also held a technical meeting on September 19, 2013, for the stakeholders, developer, and property owners to discuss technical issues on the site. To help facilitate this discussion, the Public Works Director was present to answer questions regarding transportation and hydrology issues. The next step in the process was implementation. There were two paths that could take place to implement this agreed-upon plan. The first would be to wait for the Highway Nine North study to be completed, and then a subsequent form-based code would be created for the study area. This was estimated to take six to nine months to complete. The alternative path would be to have the property owner developer submit a rezoning plan based on the agreed-upon use and density, and this is the path that the developer and the owner chose to take. Thus, the site plan submitted to the community development department on October 2, 2013, was based on the discussions and agreement with the stakeholders. Subsequent to that site plan, a revised site plan was submitted on November 12 that reflected a minor change to the shape and location of the stormwater facility along the northeastern portion of the site, based on more detailed study of the hydrology of the site. Staff included the report from the August 21, 2013 Stakeholders Meeting and the Technical Meeting of September 19 at the end of the staff report that you have, which outlines the agreed-upon use, density, and other conditions for the site. The Planning Commission reviewed this application at its meeting of November 20. It recommended denial for the application, as well as denial for the concurrent variance. The Planning Commission expressed concern about the following issues regarding the proposed rezoning, that it did not provide an appropriate transition from Cambridge High School north to Oakstone Glen subdivision. They felt that residential is appropriate, but the density is too high. They also said that the homes are too close together and too close to Bethany Bend. The commission did not like the alley product, and they also noted that there was no guest parking on the site. And lastly, they felt that the internal roads were too narrow. Based on the applicant's revised site plan submitted to the community development department on November 12, staff offers the following considerations. Development standards. Under the Neighborhood Unit Plan, the following are proposed building setbacks and development standards for individual lots. Please note that the NUP allows for the applicant to specify the building setbacks, and so the following is proposed. Front yards, yard setback 20 feet, side yard setback 5 feet, side yard setback adjacent to a street 10 feet, rear yard 20 feet, perimeter setback adjacent to AG One 75 feet, landscape strips along Bethany Bend and Cogburn Road 20 feet. The applicant has requested a concurrent variance for the following developmental requirement, to reduce the minimum building separation from 14 feet to 10 feet between each of the The applicant is requesting this concurrent variance in order to develop the property in such a way to provide for the 75-foot under-stirred buffer and the 130-foot wide park. The buffer and park area provide additional transition from the proposed higher-density residential to Oakstone Glen subdivision, which is developed with a minimum of 1-acre lots. It is staff's opinion that by reducing the separation by 4 feet would not offend the spirit or intent of the zoning ordinance. Secondly, the 75-foot under-stirred buffer and park area, which consists of over 1 acre, are conditions pertaining to this particular piece of property that create an unnecessary hardship due to these requirements. Thirdly, if this reduction is granted, it would not cause a substantial detriment to the public good and surrounding properties based on the fact that the homes are oriented away from other developed lots. Lastly, the requested 10-foot separation is in compliance with city regulations regarding building code and public safety, health, welfare, or security. Pardon me. Therefore, it is staff's opinion that the proposed request for concurrent variance to reduce the minimum building separation from 14 to 10 feet should be approved conditional. Landscape strips and buffers. Sites developed with single-family residential are not required to provide for landscape strips and buffer. The proposed plan provides for a 20-foot landscape strip along Bethany Bend and Cogburn Road. In addition, a 75-foot natural under-stirred buffer and 10-foot improvement setback are provided along the north property line. These will be reflected in the recommended conditions. Staff notes that the applicant has designed their stormwater facility so as not to require a fence and 20-foot landscape strip. The applicant has stated that it will be natural in appearance. Other site plan considerations. The site plan shows compliance with the required Milton Trail along Bethany Bend and Cogburn Road. For this area of the city, the requirement is a 10-foot wide sidewalk. The applicant has agreed to relocate the existing above-ground power line servicing 13695 Cogburn Road underground with a power easement and provide power to service at 13695 Cogburn Road. A condition to reflect this requirement is included in the recommended conditions. An equestrian-style fence wrapped with hogwire with a maximum height of 8 feet will be required along the north property line or is needed to avoid specimen trees. A condition to reflect this requirement is included in the recommended conditions. We have done an evaluation of how many children might be generated by this development, and it is estimated that it could be from 19 to 30. We've also done a financial modeling to compare expected costs versus revenue, and we see over a 20-year period, there is a negative of $35,351. The city arbors has reviewed the application, and he has stated the following requirements: that the under-stirred buffer should be planted where sparsely vegetated, that tree protection landscape land required, meaning the tree preservation ordinance at the time of the land disturbance permit application be met. The plan showing recommends tree replacement for special men trees to be removed. For required trees, the site will not accommodate a dollar amount determined by the city arbors will be placed into the city tree fund. Terms of public involvement, on November 29, the applicant was present at the community zoning information meeting held at City Hall. There were two people from the community in attendance. One of the residents was concerned about the number of homes being proposed and the distance between the homes. The other resident did not have any specific comments. This application was also reviewed by the Milton Design Review Board at their November 5 meeting, and they had the following comments. They were concerned about the density of the development. They supported sidewalks along Bethany Bend. They felt porches should be a minimum of 8 feet wide. They stated that the reality is that the subdivision will not only cater to empty nesters, there will be families with kids, and that the applicant should share the proposed project at the November 6, 2013 Highway Nine Public Community Meeting. Standards of review: whether or not the proposal will permit a use that is suitable in view of the use and development of adjacent and nearby property. The proposed subdivision developed a density of 3.08 units per acre, provides a transition from the south, where Cambridge High School is located, to the north, where the Oakstone Glen subdivision and other scattered single-family residences are located and developed with a minimum 1-acre lots. To the southwest, Kings Ridge Christian School is located in the city of Alpharetta, which also impacts the subject site. In addition, the 75-foot under-stirred natural buffer is located on the north to further ameliorate the proposed 28 lots. Lastly, the 130-foot Greenway Passa Park along the west property line will appear as a more natural view from Cogburn Road. It is staff's opinion that the proposed use is suitable with adjacent and nearby developments and zonings, if approved with staff's recommended conditions that reflect the under-stirred natural buffer and green... natural buffer and Greenway Passa Park. Whether or not the proposal will adversely affect the existing use or usability of adjacent or nearby property: It is staff's opinion that the proposal will have a minimal effect on the existing use or usability of the adjacent properties as described above, if approved with the recommended conditions for 28 lots, 75-foot under-stirred buffer, and a 130-foot wide park along Cogburn Road. Whether the proposal is in conformity with the policy's intent of the land use plan for the proposed use density is single-family residential at 3.08 units per acre. Although the City of Milton's 2030 Future Land Use Plan recommends agricultural, equestrian, and state residential on the site, it is staff's opinion that the proposed development provides an appropriate transition from the high-density institutional use to the south Cambridge High School to the single-family one-acre lots to the north. In addition, the 2030 Future Land Use Plan recommended the following policy for the area: Creating a master plan for the Highway 9 corridor, including Bethany Bend, is a high priority for the community, and it is strongly recommend that development occur in this area only after the master plan has been adopted. Over the past months beginning in February, staff has worked with the community as a whole in special interest areas to develop the Highway 9 North Visioning Study. The subject site is within the area to be evaluated. Staff has hosted several meetings with the stakeholders of this Bethany Bend-Cogburn Road area and have professional mediated to assist the staff in providing a land use recommendation for the subject site. The end result of the mediation with the stakeholders and the property owner is the proposed 28-lot, single-family subdivision. Whether there are other existing or changed conditions affecting the use and development of the property which give supporting grounds for either approval or disapproval of the proposal? Since the adoption of the 2030 Future Land Use Plan, property to the south, which was zoned for single-family residential at a density of 2.98 units per acre, Fulton County Board of Education built Cambridge High School and associated uses. In addition, Kings Ridge Christian School located in Alpharetta southwest was approved for a total of 341,000 square feet. These large institutional uses affect the use and development of the subject site. It is staff's opinion that the proposed 28-single-family residential development would provide an appropriate transition from the south and southwest to the north of the subject site where Oakstone Glen subdivision and homes further north are developed with one-acre lots. Conclusion: Although the proposed request from AG1 Agriculture to NUP, Neighborhood Unit Plan, developed at 3.8 units per acre, is not consistent with the City of Milton 2030 Comprehensive Plan designation of agricultural question and residential, it provides an appropriate transition from Cambridge High School to the south to single-family residential developments developed at one unit per acre. In addition, the 75-foot under-stirred buffer along the north property line and a park with over one acre provides additional buffering and transition for the area. Therefore, staff recommends approval conditional of RZ 13-16 and VC 13-06 to rezone from AG1 to NUP. Recommended conditions: If this petition is approved by the Mayor and City Council, the rezoning of property located on Bethany Bend Road with a frontage of approximately 1,371 feet should be approved for NUP. Conditional: Subject to the owner's agreement to the following enumerated conditions. Where these conditions conflict with the stipulations and offerings contained in the letter of intent, these conditions shall supersede unless specifically stipulated by the Mayor and City Council. One: To the owner's agreement to restrict the use of the property as follows: Single-family detached dwellings and accessory uses and structures. B: No more than 28 total dwelling units at a maximum density of 3.08 units per acre, whichever is less based on the total acreage zoned. Approval of lots, units, totals are not guaranteed. The developers responsible through site engineering at the time of the application for a land disturbance permit to demonstrate that all lots, units within the approved development meet or exceed all the development standards of the City of Milton. Total lot units yield of the subject site shall be determined by this final engineering. To the owner's agreement to abide by the following: To the revised site plan received by the Community Development Department on November 12, 2013, said site plan is conceptual only and must meet or exceed the requirements of the zoning ordinance, all other applicable city ordinances, and these conditions apply to the approval of a land disturbance permit. B: All areas which are not part of an individual lot and held in common shall be maintained by a mandatory homeowners association, whose proposed documents of incorporation shall be submitted to the Director of Community Development for review and approval prior to the recording of the first plan. Three: To the owner's agreement to the following site development considerations: A: Minimum lot size 4,750 square feet; B: Maximum building height 40 feet; C: Minimum lot width 47 feet; D: Minimum lot frontage 45 feet; E: Minimum heated floor area per unit 2,800 square feet; F: Minimum front yard setback 20 feet; G: Minimum side yard setback adjacent to street 10 feet; H: Minimum side yard setback 5 feet; I: Minimum rear yard setback 20 feet; J: Minimum interior building separation 10 feet; K: Provide a 20-foot wide landscape strip along Bethany Bend and Cogburn Road, interior to the 10-foot Milton Trail. Landscape design along Bethany Bend and Cogburn Road shall be substantially consistent with the rendering submitted to the Community Development Department on November 13 or is approved by the Community Development Director with the assistance from the city architect. One: Provide an equestrian-style four- or five-board fence not to exceed 55 inches in height, interior to the Milton Trail. Two: Provide a minimum five-foot pervious walkway along the front of homes adjacent to Bethany Bend Road, interior to the equestrian fence, and provide interconnectivity with the Milton Trail as approved by the Community Development Director. I, or L, rather: Construction design of residential structure shall be substantially consistent with the photos submitted to the Community Development Department on November 13 or is approved by the Community Development Director with assistance from the city architect. Three: All front porches shall be a minimum of eight feet in depth. All structures located on a corner shall provide additional architectural design of elevations facing the secondary street driveway as approved by the Community Development Director. O: Provide a 75-foot under-stirred natural buffer and 10-foot wide improvement setback along the north property line as depicted on the revised site plan submitted November 12, except for the proposed stormwater facility and limited grading as shown on the grading plan received by the Community Development Department on November 18. In addition, where necessary, provide additional plantings in the buffer as approved by the City Arbors. P: Provide a maximum eight-foot-high equestrian-style fence wrapped with hogwire along the north property line or is needed to avoid specimen trees. Q: The subject site shall not be allowed to be ascending or receiving area for transfer of development rights. R: Grading shall be limited to areas shown on the grading plan received by the Community Development Department on November 18. Graded areas shall be replanted as approved by the City Arbors. Four: To the owner's agreement to abide by the following requirements, dedications, and improvements: A: Dedicated at no cost to the City of Milton, prior to the approval of a certificate of occupancy sufficiently and as necessary to provide the following as required and approved by the Public Works Department: One: Provide a 10-foot concrete trail and five-foot landscape strip behind back of curb along entire property frontage of Bethany Bend. Subsection 1: Proposed right-of-way shall be located no closer than one foot behind the back of sidewalk. Subsection 2: Installation and modification of the following transportation infrastructure according to Chapter 48, Street Sidewalks and other public places of the City Code of Ordinances. One: Westbound right-turn lane on Bethany Bend at Cogburn Road. Two: Eastbound left-turn lane on Bethany Bend at New Access Drive. Three: Westbound right-turn lane on Bethany Bend at New Access Drive. B. Let's see, did I get, yeah, sorry. B: Provide a 50-foot wide cross-access easement free of any structures or above-ground utilities for future vehicular and pedestrian interparcial access on the east property line as required and approved by the City Department of Public Works. C: Reserve of the City of Milton sufficiently and as necessary to provide for compliance with the Comprehensive Transportation Plan and proposed intersection improvement project at Bethany Bend. Reservation shall be approved by City of Milton Public Works. D: The 130-foot wide Greenway Passa Park along Cogburn Road shall remain undeveloped with residential structures and be included as common area in the final plat. E: Apply deed restrictions to the common area preventing future sewer easements through the property. F: Relocate above-ground power line to an underground easement and new power service to 13965 Cogburn Road with no interruptions. To the owner's agreement to abide by the following: The stormwater management facility shall utilize earthen embankments where possible; wall structures are not encouraged. If wall structures are proposed, they must meet the acceptable design standards of the City of Milton Department of Public Works. Where sideslopes of stormwater management facility is steeper than 4 to 1, the facility shall have a 6-foot-high, five-board equestrian-style fence with 2-inch-by-4-inch welded wire constructed around it. B: Owner shall be required to develop a stormwater management plan to maintain water quality and rate of runoff to protect neighboring persons and properties from damage or loss resulting from excessive stormwater runoff, pollution, soil erosion, deposition upon private property or public streets or water transported, silt, and debris. And that is my presentation.
Okay. At this point, are there any questions from council to staff?
Mayor, I need to make a comment. I need to make a comment for the record that one of my firm's clients is a minority interest in the developing, a company that may be developing this property. I have not spoken with them, but I just wanted to make sure it was on the record that it is a, I have spoken with the city attorney, and he says there is no conflict of interest. I am fine to hear the case, but because it's a minority interest, and I have not spoken with the client concerning this development.
Okay, thank you. Ken, do you have any confirm that?
I don't. The council member did speak with me last week, and I agree with what you just said.
Okay. All right, are there any questions for staff? Joe?
Yeah, Kathy, you mentioned that at a meeting with the stakeholders, the density of 28 units was something that a majority of the stakeholders agreed to.
Yes, sir.
When you say a majority of the stakeholders, what are we talking about there? Was it two out of the three that were there? Was it 15 out of 20? What are we talking about?
Robin, do you know how many exactly is stated in the report? I do remember that two objected to it, but everyone else...
The reason I'm asking is, for some reason, I don't know how I got this idea into my head, but I thought the agreed-to density was a lot less. I was thinking that what had been discussed and agreed to was on the order of 20 units total. So, that's why I was interested in understanding.
No, at one point, the developer was talking about 30, I think, at the previous meeting, but when he came in with his plan, it showed 28. And so, that's, that was the number that we used.
You threw, okay.
Yeah. I mean, there's a lot involved in this whole thing, how we got to this point. I guess the, I guess the question, and we can, I'm going to go back and kind of explain how we got here after going through a lot of the meetings, but when I looked at the minutes of the mediation, at one point, the residents came in, and I think this is where Joe was alluding to, from 15 to 18 homes, and then, of course, the developer came in with about 32, potentially some commercial office as well. And then somewhere in there on the August 21 mediation, there was a question of 28 that came up. I'm just trying to figure out how you went from 18 to 28. Seemed like it was, kind of went a little bit skewed towards the maximum density side, and I just want to know how that came about. We'll ask that question later of the applicant, I'm sure, too. But...
Well, if you'd like, there was a lot of discussion back and forth. We spent the second meeting, I believe, responding to the stated concerns of the stakeholders in terms of what they want, in terms of buffers, and they want to be, have controlled sewer, they wanted limited access to the site. There were a whole, there was concern about safety, there was a whole list of issues. And so, we sort of went through them one by one in terms of how to address them. And also, then, on the other side, the developer said, well, that, you know, there would be a certain amount of density that was going to be necessary to pay for, if you will, all of those improvements. And so, it sort of went back and forth. And the third meeting, which was our final formal meeting, and the fourth meeting was just a technical meeting to answer some technical questions that came up, at the third meeting, we came up with the final plan with all the conditions that I've listed, and with the buffers, and with the 28 was the number that we had.
With the clarification and the stakeholders, I know there was some mention of 12 stakeholders maybe attending the meeting. Would that be the meeting 12, and then maybe two?
I count 13 on the list, not including the property owners and the staff and the applicant, but 13 participants. And then, of those, two were called out as being...
And then, how many total stakeholders did you have?
Well, for the August 21 meeting, it was 15, 13 total.
Okay, but in total, in the whole process?
That's not including the applicant or the property owners.
Yeah, and all I can tell you is, the full number that Dr. Elliott interviewed, which we considered all stakeholders that stirred the process this summer, was 21. And that includes the developers, the owners, and the neighbors, so all stakeholders.
Okay. All right. I guess for clarification, it may kind of, because I haven't attended a lot of the visioning meetings and how we got here, I just want to make sure I explain the process to where we are today, because I think a lot of the questions we're asking is with that. And I have some questions that some of the residents had asked me as well, just part of that process to make sure we have some questions answered through that. So, obviously, we got here from a visioning process because the Highway 9 Deerfield overlay needed to have a plan, this particular parcel.
We need to hold the hearing before we do a...
Yeah, I was going to say, before we get too many questions, you can always...
Figure this gathering out, but that's fine.
Maybe, maybe you might be able to see that.
Joe, I've got a question. Kathy, out of those stakeholders, can you tell me how many lots were represented from the Glen Oaks subdivision?
I believe that most of the neighbors who were represented, and I'd have to go back and check the addresses, but it was my impression that most of the neighbors that came were from that Oakland subdivision.
Is that something that can be checked while we're going through?
Yeah. I'd just like to know how many people actually, out of the stakeholders, that were represented. I know we do have one stakeholder that was, has property on Cogburn.
Right, that is not in that subdivision, that's correct.
Right, but I'd like, if you could tell us the totals when we're looking at really what was represented, and how many people were involved, I think that would be helpful for me.
Okay. Robert, if you can, okay.
And so, right now during this hearing, I'm going to open up for those in support of this application to speak first.
Our first speaker this evening comes from Don Rolater.
Mayor, members of the council, I'm Don Rolater, 11660 Alpharetta Highway, Roswell. I'm here tonight on behalf of the applicant, whose principal, Curtis Hicks, is here. We also have Greg Goldenberg, who is the president of Acadia Homes, who would be the builder of the homes in question here. I think staff has adequately described to you the location of the property. I would strictly tell you this: The long frontage on this property faces Cambridge High School and the Cambridge High School parking lot. It's across the corner from the Kings Ridge School. It's located at a very busy, signalized intersection. The east boundary abuts property that's zoned for commercial use. It's not an area where anyone would want to build a home on a one-acre lot. This application proposes 28 very nice, single-family homes with only one access to Bethany Bend, not nine driveways. The setback from residential neighbors to the rear is 75 feet and contains a substantial buffer. The required buffer, if you built one house to the acre, would only be 30 feet. That's a substantial advantage to these neighbors. The corner of Bethany Bend and Cogburn has 130-foot-wide park, so there's no impact at that busy corner. And that, again, is an advantage both to this development and to the community. A right-turn lane is proposed to alleviate some of the traffic at this busy intersection. This is a plus for everybody. The eastern detention pond was redesigned to cause less impact to the property owner to the north of it. This property owner has a subdivision detention pond on his property now. This property has gone through a visioning process sponsored by the city with multiple meetings. I think we counted up the other day, and from coast to coast, it's about 14 meetings altogether. The multiple uses included several years ago, a church, after that, a senior facility, a senior facility and homes, and then what we have finally arrived at at this point in time is a subdivision of single-family detached homes. This is... This is the use that the majority of the neighbors felt was the most viable for this piece of property. It provides a quality, single-family residential use in a transitional area with two schools, nearby retail, and heavy traffic. Approving this use will have no adverse effect on the health, safety, or welfare of the citizens of Milton. Building quality homes will not serve to decrease the values of nearby homes. I don't believe anyone would buy a house on a one acre lot right there staring at the high school parking lot, the high school buildings, and be in one of nine driveways sitting in this intersection exiting out on the Bethany Bend. I believe, based on the input we've had through an extended process, this is a reasonable use of this piece of property. The staff recommends approval of the use and the variance. All of the conditions proposed, I can't talk tonight, all the conditions proposed by the staff are acceptable to the applicant. We're happy to answer your questions at this time, otherwise we resolve our remaining time for rebuttal.
Okay. Thank you. Probably we'll just go ahead and listen to the other comments, and then if there's any questions.
Thank you.
Our next speaker in support comes from Curtis Hicks.
Curtis Hicks, 8647 Eller Drive, Alpharetta, Georgia. I am the applicant. I am going to reserve for rebuttal, but I did want to say that we have been through numerous meetings. We think we've got an excellent plan, and it has resulted through a lot of the input from the community, the stakeholders and the neighbors, and we hope that we can get to a resolution tonight, and I'll reserve the rest of the time for rebuttal. Thank you.
Next speaker comes from Robert Sizik.
I'm at 3244 Watson's Bend in Alpharetta, been here since 1996, and I'm in support of this project. I want to commend Kathleen Field and her department. I lost track at about 20 conditions for this project. Sounds like the developers prepared to meet those. And I would just say that I think this project with its density would add a little diversity to Milton. I'm about 10 years away from wanting to downsize, and I think a smaller lot would be great. So I'm in full support.
Sir, can you state your name and address, please, for the record?
Robert Sizik, 3244 Watson's Bend, Alpharetta, Georgia.
Thank you. Our final comment in support comes from Mike Nielsen.
My name's Mike Nielsen, 115 Cockthaker's Drive. I'm actually a Woodstock address. I do own a business right up the street as well. I'm in support with Mr. Sizik and the plan. You know, I've grown up in this area, raised children in this area, and getting to the next phase in my life where I want to, like, downsize, not have a big piece of property, and I think this is an ideal growth step for Milton. Thank you.
Okay. And next, we will hear from those in opposition to this application.
Our first comment comes from Roger Kubler.
Good evening. My name's Roger Kubler. I live at 560 Devonshire Farms Way in Milton. I want to tell you that I am a Citizens Committee dropout. I began participating in the city-funded mediation effort, and from the first meeting until I finally dropped out, my perception, right or wrong, was that this was going to be a predetermined event. We spent $10,000 on a hired gun, a mediator, to make this happen. It never started from a plane of what are the city's current objectives. It started from a plane of a developer who needed to cram a sufficient number of homes on that property in order to make a profit. It's all about profit. I also admit that I wasn't aware of the Trojan horse that started this whole issue, and that is that Bethany Bend is not a part of Highway 9. How and when that got started, I don't know. But I would urge the council to reject such an obscene increase in density, and it's only going to get worse. Cambridge High School's going to add another 480 students. Your Christian high school is going to add another 200, that's darn near 700 students, and you're going to have an access point, a single access point with no light, and the majority of residents trying to make a left turn. It just flies in the face of what I thought was one of the principles for the founding of the city of Milton, and part of the justification for not wanting to become just another element of North Fulton County. Seems to me it's all about the money, as opposed to supporting what the city of Milton claims is an underlying objective. I urge you to send the developer back to the drawing board with a more reasonable density approach. Thank you.
Our next comment comes from Mary Ann Hayes.
Honorable mayor and city council members, my name is Mary Ann Hayes. I live at 335 Stone Hill Point in the Oakstone Glen subdivision. Our property is not exactly behind the nine acres, but catty-corner to it. I was one of the stakeholders that came to the meeting. I have been to, we have lived in our home for 16 years, and over that 16 years, I have seen many times that land tried to get developed. And I can tell you that my husband and I, we want to see that land developed. We're not opposed to development. We live in a beautiful area, and that land has the potential to be beautiful as well. So I was a stakeholder that went to that meeting, and when they told us that we were going to be meeting together to come up with ideas on what the homeowners and also the developer, we could come up with ideas to develop that land. But the way it went down is that even though we came up with ideas, the developer came in with one plan and one plan only. It wasn't like we said, oh, we would like, we would have said, we would have liked less density, but it was, we can only make money with 28 homes. Actually, they thought they were putting 30 on the paper, but when they added it up, they missed two, and it turned out to be 28. So it was 28, take it or leave it. And it's true, they did try to sweeten the deal by coming up with a buffer and the park, but the way it was presented to us was that these were going to be high-end homes, they were going to be over 3,000 square feet, 3,200 square feet. They were going to be approximately between $400,000 and $450,000 with brick and stone exteriors. They were going to be really, really high-end homes. And our homes, our homes, we value our homes. Our homes are in the market for the low 500s. And now that we see what's going in there, okay, the density is not what we wanted, but now we look at the photos of these homes, they're not beautiful brick homes the way it was presented to us, or stone, or they're not, the area has dropped to 2,800. I did see originally, I thought it said heated area of 2,400, but now from what presented today, 2,800. These are not the homes, these homes will devalue our property. We would like to see this land develop. What we want to see on this property is less dense, less dense homes. We're not saying it has to be one per acre. We realize maybe that's, that's too ideal, not good for this property. But we want to see maybe 10 to 15 homes on this property. We also want to see higher value on this property. We don't want to see this tiny little street that has a potential for fire because a firetruck can't get down there with a narrow road. But we would even consider, we certainly would really like something in the AG1 category, anything that doesn't require a zoning. But if it's not that, we would accept, we would accept a church. We would accept, again, less dense, higher-priced homes. So I, in essence, I'm urging you to vote against this, and we hope that we can find something better to put on this property. And I'm asking anybody in the audience that supports my position, that might be afraid to speak, would they stand up? That's all I'm asking.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next.
Our next comment comes from Richard Knox.
I'm actually a proponent, not an opponent.
Okay. I tell you what, if, let's finish with those in opposition, and then we'll give you an opportunity.
Our next comment comes from Karen Asher-Brauner.
Mine's short and sweet. I'm Karen Asher-Brauner. I live at 13965 Cogburn Road, an adjacent property owner. I was unable to attend the 821 meeting due to my work. At that meeting, the stakeholders were asked to deliver a spontaneous ruling on the proposed development, and I want to just state my opinion that I would wholeheartedly deny any of their proposals, and please do the same.
Okay. Next.
Our next comment comes from Ms. Dot Blair.
My name is Dot Blair. I live at 13965 Cogburn Road, Milton, Georgia. I'm an adjacent property owner. I've decided to speak tonight because I believe the future of Milton is in jeopardy. How can the development of one nine-acre plot on Bethany Bend Road have such an impact on the future of the city of Milton? I believe if this development is approved, it will establish a legal precedent for the future development, which is inconsistent with the citizens' vision of Milton. This development has contended with community opposition from the very beginning. The primary objection that has remained consistent throughout this process has been density. This parcel lies within the boundaries of central Milton, a character area defined in the adopted comprehensive plan. This plan was established by the city of Milton to implement the citizens' vision of their city and define central Milton as an area that is to be reserved in order to protect Milton's rural character and heritage. Specific development guidelines for this area are defined in this document. Residential developments are limited to a density of one house per acre or more. Keep in mind, the density of this development is 28 houses on nine acres. At every single meeting held regarding this development, the citizens screamed, "The density is too high." The outcry was so loud during the Highway 9 visioning study that a special interest group was established by the city to deal with the opposition. The community stakeholders, who tirelessly attended these taxpayer-sponsored meetings and negotiated specific conditions of zoning that have now mysteriously disappeared, did concede that a residential development was the best option for this property, but the cries still rang out, "The density is too high." At the CZIM meeting, the public participation meeting, the community members continued to complain about the density. Even the members of the City of Milton Board of Zoning and the Planning Commission expressed concerns regarding the density. So why is the city even entertaining a development that is so inconsistent with the stated standards for density in this area? It appears the city has developed a new classification for zoning, the land that is adjacent to a school or institutional development. The city is classifying this area as a transitional area, based solely on the fact that it is adjacent to a school. The term transitional area is not currently defined in Milton codes or mentioned in the comprehensive plan.
One minute remaining.
If this development is approved, due to this new classification, it opens the door to similar developments of adjacent properties to existing schools in the city of Milton that are currently zoned AG1. When Fulton County Board of Education is forced to develop their land in the heart of Milton to meet demand, what will stop a developer from using the documents related to this development and to seek approval, to use the documents from this development and get approval as a precedent to establish another transitional area in the heart of To wrap it up, I fear this development, if it's approved by the city, it will lead to future development with similar density patterns that are inconsistent with the vision of Milton. The developers who are in charge of the brigade of bulldozers that are at our doorstep could use the approval of this development to justify more high-density projects on Bethany Bend, as well as in the heart of Milton. Tonight, I ask the council to hear the voices of the citizens of Milton, who are all stakeholders in this decision tonight, and heed the unanimous recommendation of the Planning Commission for denial of this application. Please utilize the tools you have been provided and maintain the Milton, this vision of the city of Milton. Thank you.
Thank you. How many more comment cards do you have, Sidney?
I have seven more that would like to speak and three to read in the record.
Okay. I'm going to go ahead and ask the council if they would allow another, just to add, say, another 10 minutes for public comment. Now, obviously, that goes back to the other side. We'll get that amount added to their time, too. Is that, want to give everybody a chance to speak? Is anybody all right with that? Okay.
Our next public comment comes from Laura Wrencher.
I live at 1060 Birmingham Road, Milton. I'm here tonight to represent Preserve Rural Milton. I want to say that this is an excellent example of the use of conservation-type subdivision design. Almost half the plat remains undeveloped with large naturalized buffers. In fact, these are 75-foot buffers, which are much wider than anything we have through our ag zoning. And I hope the city will be able to adopt this model moving forward. It gives wildlife a place to live, retains the wooded rural view from the streets. This is an excellent style of development for a city who values their rural character. In this area, it makes sense to have a slightly higher-density housing in homes that are a step smaller and a step less expensive. For those who do not want to see this land develop, this model is a good compromise between citizens and developers' needs, with one exception, and that's the density. There are few places in the city where an increase in density is acceptable, this being one of them. However, 28 homes with an average of three homes per acre is just too much. This is more like two or three steps greater density than existing housing in this part of the city, and the result will likely be a price point significantly less as well. This does not fit with a rural, low-density model, does not match with a small-town feel that we aspire to. One step up in density and one step down in cost is reasonable. Given the history of this piece of property and what can happen if we completely turn down the request, I'm asking for an alternative in which you could approve the request with a strict modification, decreasing density to 18 homes, which is two homes per acre. The resulting price point would be one step below the existing subdivisions on acre lots around Father Inn, and this seems much more appropriate for our city and this property's location. Thank you.
Okay. Next.
Next comment comes from Niraj Kumar.
My name is Niraj Kumar. I'm a resident of 595 Oakstone Glen, which is the corner lot, which has the largest boundary with the nine-acre lot. And I'd kind of make the similar sort of argument that I made at the Planning Commission meeting earlier. For that, I would request you to go back to the conclusion page that the staff has presented. Could you please go back to the conclusion page on the, now, while they're doing that, there are a couple of gentlemen who spoke in favor of this proposal. I don't know where they live. They apparently live far away. They talk, they use the term downsizing, right? So this is an area that they want to downsize it to, and this is the area that's right behind my house, right? So it is obviously an area that somebody would want to downsize to, and that's not a very attractive option, is it? The gentleman who spoke first, he talked about the quality of the houses. The whole idea of constructing these $450,000, $450,000 houses for 3,200-plus, brick and all that, as Mary- all that, as Marian said, if these are quality houses, the city and the developers should have put those stipulations in the agreement, that these are going to be brick, this is what's going to be the quality, the granite, and so on and so forth. They chose not to do that. At the Planning Commission meeting, it was 2,400, now it is 2,800 because there was a lot of, a lot of opposition to that. So why didn't they, just saying that these are quality houses doesn't make it so. You have to back it up, right, to ensure that these are in the $400,000 to $500,000 range. I had created a blog I'd shared with some of you. If you go there, you would know that the properties of this kind, they don't sell for that kind of money, unless you specifically ensure that they do stand that kind of price in the market. Anyhow, to go back to this, if you go to the very last page, this, the one where the title was Standards of Review. So if you go down towards the end of the paragraph, it says that there is a King's Rich Christian School and, of course, the high school, and these large institutional uses affect the future use and development of the subject property, and this provides an appropriate transition from the south. Now, I have done a fair amount of study on, on the property prices around Milton High School and the northwestern middle high school, middle school, and there is no indication that there is any transition needed, there is any transition existing, and there has been any effect of those schools to their adjoining property. Those properties continue to sell and go up in price, from 400,000 to 550,000, and even a million, right across that road, I think it's Birmingham Road, right across Milton High School. So there is no, no reason for you to consider the concept of a transition zone. This is just put here, you know, along with the developer, by the staff, just to rationalize why such a high-density development is, is feasible. It should be, should be considered. So, I mean, all in all, I was one of those two people out of 10 who were opposed to it, right in the beginning. And as of today, most of those people who were okay with it are not okay with it now because the conditions and the spirit in which we finally conceded, we really conceded to it because we were tired after attending 14, 15 meetings, we finally kind of gave up and we settled for something, but what we settled for is not what, what came forth. Marian, who spoke before me, she was one of those person who agreed to it, and you can see her viewpoint today. Okay? So therein, I think you should refuse it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Next comment comes from E.B. Peebles.
Peebles, 725 Bethany Green Court, Milton, Georgia. I'll be brief. I don't know that there'll be time for rebuttal, but others want to speak. One thing that hasn't been mentioned is sewer, which I'm supposing you'll have to run, obviously against the existing plan. Land values certainly are a concern. The fact that one of the people in support lives in Woodstock, hey, we probably could have gotten a few friends from in town to come up and speak against if that was going to do any good. I'm curious why the city felt the need to retain southeast negotiators when clearly the comprehensive land use plan precludes this type of development. I'm not sure why you felt the need to hire them. Again, I speak for most of my neighborhood who is unable to be here tonight, 42 homes, only one of which I think to be in favor, everybody else I know to be against, so please consider that as you make your decision.
Thank you.
Our next public comment card does not have an indication of position. That's Mr. Kurt Donner. Would you like to speak in support or opposition, sir?
Well, good evening, everybody. My name is Kurt Donner. I live at 15475 Alphawitz Drive. 10 years ago, and I'm going to actually be fairly brief, 10 years ago, my wife and I came across an AJC article about Milton, and it was a compelling article about the equestrian, the rural development, and the spirit of that. Within the last year, my wife and I finally moved out to Milton, have enjoyed tremendously the environment that you guys have actually created over the last 10 years and before that. So I'm actually, I represent the new blood within Milton, and I, at this present density, I don't feel it's within the spirit of what brought me out to the suburbs from downtown. Thank you.
Mr. David Damiani, would you like to speak in support or opposition?
Good evening. My name's David Damiani. I live at 935 Post Oak Close, Milton. Like the gentleman who just spoke, I'm new to Milton as well. I've been out here just over two years for primarily the same reasons that he came out, like the lifestyle, like the rural feel of Milton. And I've been following this issue passively for probably eight, nine months now via the updates that I got, an email from the gentleman who sends us out. And tonight's the first meeting I've attended, and what I've seen and heard here from the staff and the folks who are speaking, something doesn't feel right here. We're talking about a plan that is being proposed, it's not in consistency with the 30-year master plan, it's being done prior to the Highway 9 study, whenever that's supposed to be completed.
One minute remaining.
And it's not economically viable. If I heard correctly, I think that over the next 20 years, it's supposed to lose $35,000. The density issue, I mean, I can't say anything more about that. I applaud all the people who've got up here and spoken to that effect this evening, but 28 homes on that small tract, yes, it makes sense from, well, no one else will buy it. And it sounds like, well, it's economically profitable for the developer, but it is not, in my opinion, keeping with what this community was designed to be. Thank you.
Mr. Joe Shipert, would you like to speak in opposition?
Opposition. Good afternoon, good evening, everybody. Joe Shipert, 545 Oakstone Glen, next, right next door. I just want to speak about the process. There's been a lot of discussion about who agreed to what in the process, and also, it was a rigorous process. I also have to say, the agreement is invalid based on dollars. We were told the units would be $350,000 at the November 20 meeting. Previously, it had been 450K. I know there's lots of detailed specs, setbacks, 10 feet, 14 feet. Bottom line to a homeowner, it's what's it going to do to my property value? We agreed to it when we thought these were going to be high-end homes. They're not going to be.
Time is out.
How many more comments do you have?
I have three to read in the record, and that's all, sir, in opposition.
Council, give us three minutes. You was all right with that? Allow total of 13 minutes to both sides?
Mr. George M. Elkins would like to be read into the record. He's at 2130 Double Creek Lane, Milton, Georgia, 3,004. No building high-density and extending sewer. Keep all stream buffers and do not give variances for less than one acre per home. Three units per acre is against all we stood for when we established Milton. Next, Ms. Rachel Elkins, 2130 Double Creek Lane, Milton, Georgia. Single-family residences should remain at one acre per home. Do not extend sewer. Maintain all stream buffers. And lastly, Dawn Cushing at 3355 Plantation Trace, Milton, Georgia, 3,004. Oppose RC 1316, VC 1306 rezoning. This is already a congested area and is zoned non-sour. This is against our current plan to maintain the spirit of what attracted all of us who live in Milton. We do not want cluster housing. Let us maintain our variances that were put in place. I do have one card that the public commenter said he would speak if time permitted, and that's Dion Sladev.
Dion Sladev, 530 Oakstone Glen, and I'm going to be very short because I realize we're running out of time significantly here, so I just wanted to state my opposition to the proposed plan because of the high density. What we have on the table is a good effort, and I truly appreciate the city's and the developers' efforts in coming to a reasonable resolution here. Unfortunately, the final result of this product between certain neighbors of ours and the city and the negotiators, we don't feel that this is a viable product, and I hope that we can come up with a solution that has much lower density and...
30 seconds left.
Much higher space between the homes. I would think, I think there was a comment earlier about two homes per acre and 20 feet is probably a good distance between the homes. I was looking at the Crab Apple subdivision that was mentioned a few times in the discussions, and I do believe that those homes are at least 20 feet apart. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, is that all the public comment cards that you have?
For opposition, and then we did have one in support, Mr. Richard Knox.
My name is Richard Knox. I'm at 2170 Double Creek Lane, Milton. I ride by this property every day, and it was very disheartening when both schools were allowed to be built there, but now that traffic is there, I've come to realize it's really not as bad as I expected it to be. We've got a piece of property up north of Cambridge right now that is undeveloped. At some point, it's going to be developed, and based on what I've seen, just in looking at the proposal, is that this gives us an opportunity to build something in our community where the density may be a little higher than we'd like, but it's aesthetically pleasing to the environment. So from that perspective, even though I don't live, I'm not adjacent to it, but I ride by it twice a day, I'm very much in support of this, so.
Okay, now, we do have, you see...
We have some time for some rebuttal if the...
The applicant has, there's time for rebuttal if the applicant would like to use up.
We've got 17 minutes and 16 seconds left.
We don't, hopefully won't take that much time. Again, I have been the applicant from day one on this piece of property. When I say day one, from the times of the daycare center. We, it was an applicant, application for a church that predated our application. When we came to the community with an assisted living facility for the corner, along with similar housing to be as a joint development, community did not like the size, the square footage, or just the use in general for the assisted living, although it seemed to be something that could fit in with the community. We withdrew the zoning application at that time. That's when the visioning process and then the mediation began. We were asked to participate in that. As it relates to, we did not come with this plan from day one. We basically, the mediator came with a blank piece of paper and asked for ideas and information and thoughts from the community. The first meetings, we weren't even in attendance. They were floated out to potential office, office condo, bank sites, daycare centers, doctor offices, dentist offices, either on the corner, on the entire site, or up closer to nine. Through that process, the community said, no, we want residential. We don't want to see any office institutional-type use or any other kind of higher commercial-type use. We would rather limit it to residential. At that time, we started trying to address how the property interfaced with those most impacted. That's where the design came from. At one time, we had an entrance coming off of Cogburn for traffic flow. They said, we don't want to see anything coming off Cogburn. We limited, did away with that access, created a green space there. We're not required to have any buffer, residential to residential, per code. We created a 75-foot buffer to basically, again, limit what the homeowners would be seeing, what they would be interfacing with. We agreed to come in and plant inside that buffer at a major expense. Security fence was requested as one of the items they would like to see, just to keep any pedestrian access between the two parcels. That was negotiated with the community. The type of fence was negotiated, the plannings that were agreed to, the type of evergreens to create a true buffer. We have a copy of that buffer now. The homes have always been the homes. We have never shown anything other than these pictures. This is an existing development, existing homes with the same builder we've been with, to develop with on this site from day one, which is Acadia Homes. It has always been this product. It's a product that's been approved architecturally by Design Review Board in the city of Milton. It exists in Crab Apple. We have given comparable sales. We have always said that these houses will be from the very high 300s to the mid 400s, okay? And we still expect that, especially with all the commitments and conditions that we have agreed to on this piece of property. We've got, obviously, agreed to the intermodal access, sidewalk, along, the fencing, and again, this is a Crab Apple look. Crab Apple, as a architectural vernacular, is basically a mix of materials, which is, you know, siding, cedar shake, brick, stone, and a mixture to create a variation of product. And we think it'll be a beautiful streetscape and will truly address an entry point into, as you enter into the city of Milton, along this corridor here. Again, this plan was worked out with the homeowners, with the stakeholders. We agreed to all of these various conditions in order to make it acceptable. And again, as it was stated, and as Michael Elliott said, at those meetings, we had approximately 15 people at those meetings, of which 12 could be seen as non-property owner stakeholders and non-developers, and out of those 12, two expressed their opposition at the end of the last meeting. We then went into the technical meeting where storm buffer, I mean, storm water was addressed. Part of the changes in the design was because of Mr. Kumar wanted us to move the pond as much away from him as we could. We relocated and moved the pond and moved it closer to Highway 9 so that it would be a minimal impact. As it relates to the roads, we have to meet fire code, we have to meet standards provided by the fire department to be able to fight fires on either side of this property. We have agreed to do that. We have provided guest parking. Out of the Planning Commission, one of the things was, what are these houses going to look like from the rear? Although, no houses will be fronting the road. Took pictures of the existing houses in Crab Apple, just to demonstrate the architectures on four sides, because this was a planning commission concern. Again, the design of this development is for every house to front Bethany Road and for no garages to be seen from the road. Everything's a rear entry, no driveways to impact Bethany Road. It's a very attractive development. And again, we have spent this time, but what we have shown from day one has never changed. Thank you.
Okay. Is there anyone else?
If I may complete our presentation, the product exists today in the city in Crab Apple Station. That is the product you see. It exists there denser. What I would note is that the complaints in general tonight circle around density, but when you consider the real hard case, which is what effect does doing these homes have on people in the neighborhood, there are no more than five homes in the abutting subdivision that back up to this, one that's unrelated. The rest of it is far away. There's an undisturbed buffer. All those things are there. I haven't heard a broker, an appraiser, a real estate agent say, selling these houses is going to lower the prices of the peoples in the, in the area surrounding this. I don't think that's true. I don't think anyone has said, well, I'm... I don't think anyone has said, well, I might maybe see a rooftop from somewhere if you build this. I don't think that's true. Traffic's an insignificant argument unless they quit building homes in Cherokee and Forsyth County and South Gwinnett. It's there, and it continues to increase. Trying to alleviate it with some right lane turns, some other stuff that's beneficial. So, when I get down to the real question, what real harm does it cause whether we build nine houses or 28 houses, I don't get an answer. And I think that's the important question. There are always concerns with development that comes in. But when you look at this piece of property, it's handicapped, it's unique. It didn't ask for the schools. Fulton County puts a school where it wants to be. The Kings Ridge School was approved. It's not even your city, but it's there. This is where they landed, and they're trying to do a quality job based on a great deal of negotiation. We would appreciate your kind consideration, and if you have any questions remaining, we'd love to answer them. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any other comments cards or anybody else speaking? No, then we'll go ahead and I'll close the public hearing and open up for questions to counsel, to our staff or the applicant. One thing, I want to make a statement. You know, I've heard a couple of times comments about this process and it being decided from the beginning and all that, and being in on the discussions that I was in that and watched that, I do not see that at all. I mean, obviously, you've got one side that the developer or property owner wouldn't want to put as many homes or whatever buildings on there, and, you know, all the way down to next to nothing. So, I just want to make that statement. I don't think this was started out at all. I want to applaud our staff and the citizens and the developers and the people that put the time in together to try to come up with something that, you know, worked for both. Obviously, we're not at that point where everybody was happy with this, but that, my point is, I want to say that this, I want to commend our staff for going through this process, and I don't think that it was, you know, a couple of comments that it was decided beforehand or not. I sincerely don't believe that, so. Anyways, we'll open up. Anybody have a question? Karen?
And I'm not sure who to best this question to, but I have heard that this is different from what was voted on, I guess, 10 to 2 in the mediation hearings that we had. And someone other than, I have heard that the square footage has changed. I've heard the price point has changed. Are those the main differences that people are feeling like that are different from what was approved? Because, I mean, the whole purpose of the, of going through the planning process was to come up with a plan for the area, and it sounded like we went through a valid process, and I'm just trying to figure out how, figure out how this plan is different from what was agreed to through that process.
I guess maybe it's appropriate to let Kathy address the answer to that question. I can address the part that deals with the house price question, and that's just not something that the city can control as a condition of zoning. Whether it believed that that's possible or not, that's not something the city attorney is going to advocate that we do. It's not something I can advocate that we do. So, to the extent that that was something that was agreed upon, that's just not something that we can do moving forward.
Well, that's a market-driven.
I guess in that regard too, I know in lights of Karen's question, I've got a list of questions about that process that I might just go ahead and ask and maybe get answers.
Are these the same as what Karen had asked too? Or Karen, you want, Karen, you've got the floor card. Do you want to let Kathy answer your questions and then have Matt, or do you want to?
Well, you just want to ask, answer one question at a time? Go ahead and you start asking questions next, or?
Sure. Why don't I respond to yours?
Yeah, why don't you go ahead and respond to hers?
There was some discussion about size, and maybe this is a question for Cur, an answer for Curtis as well, a question for him to answer. There was some discussion about the 3,000 square foot range, and I seem to recall that it was sort of going to be an average, that some were going to be maybe a little under, but then there would be others over the 3,000, so it would average out to 3,000. I'm not sure we ever said that the minimum would be 3,000, but I, with your permission, maybe Curtis could respond to that as well, in terms of the discussion that we had and what you had stated.
If you have a copy of the technical meeting, and Kathy is quoted in there as saying that we would discuss from 28 to 3,200 square feet, and it's in the city-sponsored technical meeting of November 21st, or whatever the date was on that technical meeting, but it's in your actual report there, and that's always been the plan. It was from 28 to 3,200. 28 is a minimum, maximum of 3,200, and the price range is always from very high 3s to the mid 400s.
All right, Matt, you want to?
There was a, obviously, from a covenant perspective, rental properties was a concern, and you know more than 10% of the properties could be rented. Just explain that, you know, as far as conditions could be-
Yes, that was an issue that came up. We discussed that, and from a city perspective, we did not feel that we could require that, but that was an issue that should go into the covenants of the homeowners association. And again, with your permission, maybe Curtis can respond to that, because it really, rather than being a city issue, it really needs to be a HOA issue, I believe.
As the city requested, we will do a mandatory HOA that will maintain all the common spaces and that kind of thing. Inside the HOA, these are all for sale homes. There's no houses to be offered to the public for rent. However, we will, as things happen, people move, things happen, we would put in there that at no time more than 10% of the total homes constructed could be rented per the HOA agreement. So, if there are two houses rented in the subdivision, somebody wants to put their house on the, to rent, then they would have to come and get permission from the HOA to be able to get when they could not exceed 10%.
At what point would we see that that has taken effect?
Well, that would go into our HOA documents. It would run with the land, as all HOA would precede the lender, the construction loans, everything, because it would be the covenant that runs with the land. And we have done this on several subdivisions before. It's something that's come up because of the market having gone through the big meltdown, that people want to make sure that if it does get into tough times, that it's not going to turn into a, quote, rental project.
You guys may just want to stand there. Question about grading in the park area, obviously, I assume as construction is taking place, that we may have to grade in the park area or those undisturbed buffers areas. Explain that process.
Yes, well, if you saw the original conceptual plan, defined a 75-foot undisturbed buffer. As we got more into the engineering of that, we realized that those homes that are in the back part of the area, when they were, when the concrete pad was being constructed, that there would have to be some incursion into that buffer in order to construct the basement area. But what we did is that we mandated that they be replanted with the approval and oversight of the arborist in order to ameliorate that issue.
How long would the incursion be in effect during the construction process?
Yeah, well, maybe that's another, with your permission, a Curtis question. Curtis, could you respond to how long it takes to clean that up?
Basically, it's very, part of the grading in there is if we have to do anything in order to put the power pole in place to serve the adjoining property, and at the edges to be able to, just to fit the houses in so they will drain properly. That's, obviously, hydrology drives a lot of that. Once the grading's in place, then it will be, go back, it will be replanted or vegetated. And then, again, a lot of this area is deciduous trees and needs additional actual evergreens in order to create the buffer that the community wants. So, it's actually, a lot of what we're doing in there is actually to help create the buffer that they've requested.
And that, that-
Basically, it's a probably 120-day process from the time, yes.
I guess there were some questions about the runoff on the stormwater and why we made the decision to relocate it as we did. Can it be sufficed to relocate it as we did? Obviously, we did that for Mr., it was done for Mr. Kumar.
That's a current question.
Can you repeat the question?
I'm going to make sure I got this right here. Engineering to redirect stormwater runoff from the western area, including the park area, to the stormwater pond on the northeast side of the development site. Not necessarily a question, but I think it was regarding, how could that work if you redirect the stormwater away from Mr. Kumar's home, if that was where it was supposed to be? Does that make sense? Oh, no, I'm thinking western side. There's a western side on the park.
The western side would be the Cogburn roadside?
Yeah, western side. So, engineering to redirect stormwater runoff from the western area, including the park area. Is there a way to, is that, is water on the western side going to make it to the eastern side?
The piping is not shown on the grading plan that you have probably seen, but the grading that was shown would support piping that back towards the detention facility. So, the parkland and those areas that are not disturbed, they're going to obviously drain where they currently drain, but the developed area looked like it was going to a low point in the parking lot, which then have the ability to be piped back to that stormwater facility on the eastern side of the site.
So, does it suffice to say that maybe the further western house will have water drained towards the eastern side?
If I followed that correctly, yes. It'll be required to meet the stormwater requirements for both water quality and quantity for all those areas that are disturbed.
And I, and just, this next one's for Kathy. We're specifically allowing TDR transfers here, so obviously, no developer can continue to build out, buy TDRs or anything. Is that right?
One of the conditions of zoning is that no TDRs be allowed, that it not be ascending or receiving area. That is what stakeholders agree to.
Okay. I'm having a permanent conservation easement applied to the 130-foot wide pass of Greenway Park that will have deed restrictions preventing future sewer easements through the property. So, obviously, if they were to connect a sewer, no one else could connect a sewer through that? Is that what we said?
That's right. That's right. And that was, the creation of that 130-wide park was to, was specifically to stop the sewer and then putting a deed restriction in to make sure that it would not go through.
So, there was a connection from that standpoint? If you didn't have the park, someone else could connect into that? Is that the answer?
That was the concern, and that was one of the reasons to put that park in there with the deed restriction.
Obviously, explain again the pricing. We can't control the pricing according to the Fair Housing Act in the state of Georgia. Is that right? As a lawyer?
I would be extremely uncomfortable adding as a condition of zoning that we begin to establish price points for private development to do. The best you can do is to add conditions that perhaps affect some of the characteristics of the subdivision, and you do that by way of perhaps the building materials and things of that nature, but once you start identifying price points, I believe you're in a legal, problematic area.
And I know in New York, they have rent control and things like that, but in Georgia, they don't allow for that. Is that right?
Don't answer that, Ken.
On that note, we could require then a certain percentage of the homes be brick. We could require things like granite countertops, and so, I mean, we could require things that would, without requiring, without setting a price limit, that would lend themselves to a more expensive home?
Very common.
If I might add to that, one of the zoning requirements is that all these homes will, must be reviewed by the city architect for design. And we have found historically with our other reviews that we've added bells and whistles to an extent that we have added a certain premium onto those homes, so.
We're talking about, I see here approximately 3,000 square feet. We mentioned that already, so, and that's, that is just the average of what we're talking about. Is there a minimum that can be set?
2,800.
2,800 is set on the minimum?
Yes.
Okay. I'm going to take a break on that, and if there's more, I'll find it.
Bill?
Ken, one of the requests is to reduce the side sets in the, from seven feet to five That obviously, obviously is not consistent throughout the whole development. It appears that it's just along Bethany Road from Unit 1 to 15, then probably from 19 up What was your, say again, what your recommendation was for addressing that variance?
We felt that going from 14 to 10 between those homes was nothing that was, I mean, it was, it met the building code, and we really felt that it was not harmful to the general design of that site as you fronted along Bethany Bend.
Well, then, up on the top end of the development here, units 024 through 28, separation goes up to, oh, 20 feet in some cases. 17 and 18, there's about 20 feet. What was your department's opinion of the variation in the separation of these units as far as from an architectural or aesthetic standpoint?
Well, I think the, as, when the site plan was originally developed, the idea was is to place as many of them up to Bethany Bend as possible in order to not only create a streetscape, but to move them forward from the homes to the rear. And so, the idea was, to the extent that we could do that, we did it. And then, there were, obviously, it was impossible to fit all 28 along the frontage, so therefore, some were set in that second row behind. And we had different configurations. Before we had created that 130-wide park, some of them were actually in that area, so they fronted on Cogburn Road. So, we went through several iterations, but the intent was always to pull them forward away from the subdivision to the north. That was sort of, was always in the back of our mind.
One other point, something that jumps out at me here too, is on the west end of the roadway, you have kind of a T-intersection, somewhat of a hammerhead intersection. On the east end of that same roadway, it's just, just squared off. What's, what's the fire marshal's opinion of a dead-end road like that behind the string of houses? There's 12, 12 units.
We did have the plans reviewed by the fire marshal, and we did incorporate his input into those plans.
So, did he specifically address that end of the road?
Yes. Robin, can you add any more to that? But as far as I'm aware, yes.
After speaking to the fire marshal, he saw that the applicant had made sure that that was okay on the eastern end, and the fire marshal indicated that that length was okay. I think a lot of reason is that there's also some accessibility from the Bethany Bend side as well, in the sense that if there was a fire, that there would be access from the Bethany Bend side.
Makes sense.
That's a good question. Just to confirm, what would the setback in buffer be if this were to stay AG1 and there were just one home per acre? What would the setback from the property line be?
The setback in the front would be 60 feet, and the rear would be 50 feet, and there would be no requirement for a buffer, just a setback.
That's from the, from the house itself?
From the, from the rear property line, there would be no, there would be no buffer- From the, from the rear property line, there would be no, there would be no buffer requirement, but it's a rear setback of fifty feet, and then the side setbacks to twenty-five.
And I know I've heard, you know, comments about letting the schools in, and obviously, you know, the two schools that are there are, there's, you know, that was not a decision that the city or the citizens made. They're there, which has, you know, has changed the area. Does any of our staff, do you know what the, the density and the zoning was for the property of the sixty-some acres the school was on?
Yes, before the school came in, that property had been rezoned to 2.98 units per acre.
About the same. Okay. And I guess my point with the, talking about the buffer and the thing is, you know, if I lived behind there, I mean, you know, personally, I live on a piece of property that I bought, and I couldn't see anything when I first bought it, and with the AG1 zoning, now all I do is look at the back of houses. You know, I think there's more protection for the neighborhood behind, for Oakstone Glen, with this, you know, seventy-five-foot buffer, undisturbed and, and the replanted, than, you know, if there were just nine homes that all sat back there. So, you know, I do think that's an improvement there, as well as the buffer with the park and, you know, look a whole lot nicer along Bethany with the houses facing there, so anyways.
Bill?
Maybe further to that, to your point there, what we've been looking at up here for the last several minutes is the, the distance between the homes on Oakstone Point and the distance from them to the backsides of what's proposed here. And just going down through the one, two, three, four, five, six homes, starting with Asher Brenner's, looks like you have about 180 feet of separation from Mr. Haslett's house, 230 feet from his house to the nearest unit. Mr. Fredlin's house, you have 205 feet. Mr. Per, Per Maswaran, or Mr. Nair, you've got 305 feet. Mr. Dewberry's place, 180 feet. And from Mr. Kumar's house, there's about 155 feet between his house and the nearest unit there. So, I guess to, to the mayor's point here, probably have a lot more separation here than if you were to just develop on one-acre lots with the thirty-foot buffer behind them.
Kathy, was there any discussion at all in this process of coming to something maybe in between? I've heard a couple of homeowners say they'd like to see residential on-spot, they don't want to see institutional, but they don't want to see twenty-eight units and the units this close together. Was there discussion at all about a compromise somewhere in between, a little bit different? And I know we're not, in that case, you wouldn't have all the buffers and things we've been talking about, but was there any discussion?
Well, I, I think this, the discussion started off in terms of what type of use did they prefer? And the developer showed a mix, and I think you mentioned this, where there was a mix of just, you know, of office and residential, some all office and some all residential. And they came to the conclusion that they wanted all residential. Then the discussion was, well, what are those issues that you want addressed and be made part of the plan? And we vetted those. And then based on all of those issues, that, you know, the buffer issues and the sewer issue and the egress issue and all that, and the fact that they wanted residential, when the next meeting came, the developer came in with a proposed residential use. And he had mentioned that it was probably gonna be around thirty units, and when he came in, it was twenty-eight. And he really felt that, he responded to all of the stakeholders' issues that they wanted addressed, and that he had twenty-eight. And that's sort of where that stopped. It didn't, we, we looked at that plan with the twenty-eight on it, and with the buffers and the single egress and all the other issues, and that's, that's really where the discussion stopped. We didn't, we, we didn't go to a lower density, because the argument was made by the developer that he would need that density in order to respond to all of the buffers and the park and the fencing and the plantings and whatever. So, so that's how it sort of evolved.
Okay. And again, I'm coming to the table a little bit late. I wasn't here for all the meetings. I've had calls and talked to eight of the neighbors, a number of them that actually had joined this property. And the concern that I consistently hear is, we were only offered twenty-eight, we really want something, like Mary Ann Hayes spoke, something in between that. And that's why I asked the question, was it even a consideration? Was it even given due diligence or discussion, or was it, this is, this is the, the offer that's before?
Well, the, Dr. Elliott, who was the facilitator, did, you know, go around the room and say, here's the plan on the table, or do you agree with this or not? And there was a majority who agreed with it. And so, at that point, it became a viable plan, and that's what we're for.
Joe?
So, yeah, I actually have some questions for Mr. Roe later. First of all, I wanna compliment you on your introduction there, because I'd be in agreement with you, the property in question is gonna be developed. Whether or not it would support one-acre homes or something smaller or more dense was the real question. And so, so I appreciate the fact you pointed all that out with some clarity. At your conclusion, you talked about the questions people aren't asking, or the issues that they're not raising, and you said, you know, nine or twenty-eight, you know, nobody's asked us about that. And so, the follow-up question I'd have to you on that is, is there a difference between twenty-eight and twenty, or twenty-eight and twenty-five? How did your client get to the specific point of twenty-eight is the magic number? I know there's a lot of marketing data, there's a lot of formulas that you could use to try to figure out, you know, how this all pans out, but why twenty-eight?
That's a very fair question. It really, in some ways, backs itself in. This group identified the most important concerns. And when they identified those concerns, the rear buffer, the park buffer, and getting this development as far as possible from the existing homes were the keys. And when we take the homes and shift them around, move them away from a very viable and usable piece of property, and get it set up where it, A, looks good, B, is marketable, and C, is reasonable, Mr. Hicks came to the twenty-eight units. That's what it took, because he gave up substantial property in the rear that's developable property and could have been used at one acre. And the park down there moved the whole, all of that away from the intersection and gave us an acre that won't be developed and will block sewer. Those were the trade-offs that did that.
Okay. In my way, my simple way of thinking, you know, the whole supply and demand thing coming into play, the more homes that you try to fit on this space, really the less you can ask for a home like that. The fewer homes that are there, potentially, the more you can ask. So, there's a relationship between the number of units that are on this property and the amount that you can ask or charge for each unit. And I don't know that if it's a constant. In other words, the lower number you get, you know, the more you ask for the home, and everything sort of remains an equal or a constant. I guess the question that I would have is, if we knock that number down from twenty-eight to twenty-four, or from twenty-eight to twenty, does the whole thing get messed up? Is, are the economics now out of whack? Does it cause you, your client, issues?
Yes, it would cause my client to walk off from the property. But the real answer is, what controls the price? And what controls the quality of development is what the builder puts on the ground. And the, the product that people are looking for exists right now in Crab Apple. People don't want a big yard anymore. They don't want to deal with it, they want to go away on the weekends. What they're looking for is twenty-eight, thirty-two-hundred square foot of really nice house, and as little lawn as they have to contend with. So, to a buyer, does it make it more valuable if there's twenty or twenty-four than twenty-eight? I don't think it has nearly as much effect as, what am I getting for my money? I think that's the key. I wanna see the brass kick plates, I wanna see the granite countertops, I wanna see nine- and ten-foot ceilings, I wanna see this, I wanna see that, I want the hardwood floors. Those are the keys in today's market. Now, ten years from now, maybe an entirely different thing. But having a wife that cares about those things, I understand what, what's important to a woman, and that's usually the person that makes the decision on who's gonna buy the house. And it is what you put on the ground, much more poses to how far apart it is in this market.
I got a, just a quick question, and then a little more from discussion time. Where would you propose hooking into sewer?
Let me let Mr. Hicks answer that, he's just more technical than I am. I know it'll go down to the school site, let me, let him explain it.
Is that where, is it at the school? Let me kind of answer my question.
It's in, it's at the school at Cambridge, and it's also down the creek that runs between Cambridge and the Publix Chopping Center, and it comes up towards Highway Nine where the tire store is there. We've done it, we're doing a routing right now, but it will probably, the route will run between the school and the Publix and tie into a manhole in the creek down there off, off the site. So, it will drain to the east, and that's part of the reason we're saying we won't, we won't go down Bethany, because everything flows east going to get to that low point.
Bill?
Mr. Hicks. Relating to the side sets, if we maintain a seven-foot side set, or even something greater than that, a ten-foot side set, and that would apply to units one through sixteen along the right-of-way, what, what effect, what would be the net effect of reducing the number of units there? Have you calculated that?
We have looked. If, if the variance was not granted, it would result in the loss of a unit. We would be from twenty-eight down to twenty-seven. And again, as it relates to density price point, keep in mind that some of the same thing that people brought up about the traffic along Bethany Road, and the fact that we push these houses as close to Bethany Road as we can get them, you start getting a resistance to price point, you know, when you get to $500,000 price range. When you get to that price range, people have a lot of places to go not to necessarily live on top of Bethany Road, so it's, it's a balance. We, again, pushed everything in. So, part of the reason that we asked for the variance is because it's like an accordion, and they've asked us to push it this way and to push it that way. We, if we are not granting the variance, we're at twenty-seven, and we have come to the conclusion that we could live with that number. It is a hardship. Again, what drives the density, and what we actually wanted to be thirty-two units, we removed houses outside, that were inside the buffer to keep it consistent. We moved houses away from the park area to, to create that, and then we agreed to, and I didn't go through the landscape plan, but it's a tremendous landscape plan, we agreed to all the conditions there. Adds tremendous cost, and it, it will relate to the price point of the house, because we're having to do all of those, basically, condition improvements to the property. So, anything below the twenty-seven, anything greater than what's allowed under the code will probably produce a hardship that will make us not be able to move forward with the project, and/or at least seek some kind of relief against the conditions we've already agreed to.
Can you address, in that undisturbed buffer, you're going to augment the plannings where it's sparsely planted? What, what's the plan for?
We have an actual landscape design that was shared with the stakeholders, I can show it to you, but it's, it's a detailed plan with a list of plant materials, caliper of trees, gallons of shrubs, where they would be. We've identified all of the specimen trees to make sure that we don't interfere with the understory of those trees, so that we don't get into the root section with our plannings there. It's really to supplement, you know, the, the trees that are there and to go underneath. And it's a detailed plan that has been shared with the community, that's a full design, landscape design plan. And it was submitted to the city.
Who's your landscape architect?
It's planners and engineers, they have an own-house landscape architect, and they actually met with the arborist on-site to, to review the property, to identify the specimens, and to be sure that they were in agreement.
Mr. Hicks, to your point, where if you had to reduce the number of units, you'd have to renegotiate some of the variances that you've already agreed to, like the setbacks, would you even be willing, if, what I've heard from the people that I've talked to is, I think, including the people that have bought that property, the people that are most impacted, what I heard is, we would be interested, interested to talk and give up some of that, renegotiate so we could get the lower density. Is that even something you're even open to at this point?
Again, we are open to doing away with the side yard and going to twenty-seven. I really would not want to commit anything below that. We've run economics based on that model, grade plans, landscaping, because as you go down that path, and then you say, okay, we'll live with something less than twenty-seven, and then we'll start going back to the conditions, then we're back to the same place. And really, what we have is, we are willing to do away with or not get the variance approval and live with the permitted side yard setback in the twenty-seven lots, but we don't want to commit to anything less than that. We don't think we can.
Okay, and I just, you know, like Karen was going to, you know, when you look at this development and you look at the affected neighbors and property owners, you know, this is actually better for them. I mean, a huge buffer, undisturbed and planted. As Bill said, the, the distances between the homes, if it were just, like you said, if it were nine homes, they would see, the neighbors would see a whole lot more. You know, when I hear people talk about square footage and afraid that they're, the, they want the homes to be larger, thinking that that will drive the value up, I think it's, it's the opposite. I think that's detrimental. The smaller, there's so many people now that are looking for a nice, very quality, smaller home to downsize in. You know, that could be this versus, you make the houses bigger, it's gonna attract kids, families, there's gonna be more traffic, there's gonna be noise and whatnot. So, you know, I have to say, and honestly, you know, the, the best thing and the worst thing you can do is buy a house with woods behind it. And it's great, as long as you get the free look, but at some point, something's gonna happen, and I, you know, whether folks like it or not, I do think you're, the plan is giving the best relief from actual impact in the, the neighborhood properties, as well as the community with the, the green space and the park and whatnot. So, you know, I think you've done a good job to make the best of a not-so-good situation all around.
Karen?
Kathy, the property that Cambridge is sitting on now, what did you say the density of that was?
When it was, pre the school, it had been rezoned to 2.98 units per acre.
So, that's roughly the twenty-seven homes would be at 2.98, so that would be a consistent...
Yeah, they're at 3.04 to be exact.
Was, for twenty-eight homes?
I'm sorry, with the twenty-seven, yes, you're right, the twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven homes would be 2.97, so that would be a, something. Do you know what kind of conditions and all were on that particular zoning?
Ah, Robin, do you, institutional memory here?
It was done in Fulton County prior to us becoming a city, but I wasn't sure what conditions were attached to it.
It was a CUP, but I'd have to find the case to give you. It was a community unit plan, but...
Because it was gonna be a good many homes over there. I just wasn't sure what their square footage was, what their side yard setbacks were, and would you be willing to, to ensure that at least half the houses would be brick, three sides of brick? Mr. Hicks?
Again, this is a architectural issue that, again, when you look at, and again, this is the Crab Apple Station, Crab Apple Crossing, when you look at that area, there's a certain look, if you all have heard the vernacular Crab Apple Cottage, and that actually, before there was the City of Milton, there was the vernacular of, we would like to build a Crab Apple Cottage, it was something that Stephen Fuller took, took into Dunwoody and other places. And it's basically a mix of materials. We'll have, at least 25% will be brick, but there will be siding homes as, as a part of the look of Milton. There will be some cedar shake homes, there'll be some painted brick, and there'll be, you know, what we call hardy plank, you know, cement siding homes, but it's a, it really gives a much better look architecturally to create a streetscape that is not uniform. So many times, really, when you get a production builder and they go and say, yeah, we'll do all brick... So many times, really, when you get a production builder and they go and say, yeah, we'll do all brick and boom, it looks, everyone looks the same. This is really to create the look that has been embraced in the heart of Crab Apple, but really throughout the City of Milton. It's that some of a farm look, some of a, you know, turn of the century look, traditional look. But no, it's, you know, we would prefer not to, at least not to say, you know, 50%. We could certainly say 25% because again, you'd like to see that variation because it really creates a better palette of, of materials.
I think too, I think siding gets a bad rap, you know, the old days of vinyl siding or whatever. But these hardy plank homes.
Your house siding, my house siding.
I mean, I don't think it has a negative connotation.
But I think it's nice to have some differences. You don't want all the houses being siding. You wouldn't want all the houses being brick because it just would not fit in. But it would be nice to ensure that you had a, a certain percentage of each of them, so.
And again, going back to the price point, you know, you mentioned Crab Apple. The townhomes in Crab Apple now have gotten to the point where they're 400,000 or up and that's not even these homes. So I would think these would, the market would pay more than that.
All right. I got three questions. And just from my history as well, this was first going to be a daycare, then a church, then a senior center. Is that right? I mean, what was the?
It was assisted living was what our original, we had an operator that had a site in Roswell. They wanted to do a second location in the City of Milton. We actually met with staff prior to filing the application. Although there are assisted livings around Milton, there's not any in the city actually. It was going to be memory care, all contained, but because of the size of the building and the number of units and the fact that, you know, it is 24-hour care, so there are shift changes. The community said it's not an acceptable use that they wanted to embrace. But that's what the original application was, was to be an assisted living or, you know, on the corner with the 75-foot buffers and all that kind of thing. That's kind of where that kind of evolved from. But they determined that that was not a use that they wanted to see there.
Carter wrote a question for you as well. And I guess we have a comprehensive transportation plan proposed, I think it's intersection improvement PL 0012625 for Bethany Bend and Highway nine. I guess the question is if, you know, if that plan works and the, the road may head north a little bit, will that cut into any of the buffers or any of the planning that, that they had put in place?
Well, we're just now starting to look at those concept plans and one of the plans has a split intersection at Bethany Bend and Highway nine. It's the split intersection potential that has a little bit of impact on that southeast corner of the property. How much is just in the concept plan right now? It wouldn't affect any of the buildings, but would affect some of the front setbacks along that very corner where the Stormwater Facility is, that last unit in that particular area. Right now, if you looked at the way the plan is coming together for that split intersection, it would probably place the right-of-way line in Bethany Bend about 38 feet north of where it is on that very corner of the property.
So essentially, you're not pushing everything further north and cutting into the 75-foot buffer on the, on the plan?
No, and typically the way, the way we do those reservations is, we do the reservation, but the setbacks are still measured from the existing right-of-way. As long as the future buildings aren't within that future right-of-way, then you just end up with a much, much closer building if the future project ever goes through.
Bill? Just a comment, a point. I was sitting here in 2008 when the Mormon Church tried to develop this property. And the outcry was so fierce that they chose to withdraw their application. Probably one of the least impacted type of development for that property. And kind of disturbed me at the time and kind of made me wonder, you know, what can go in here? I would hope that there's enough consensus out there in the stakeholders that were involved in this exercise that we're pretty close to some consensus. If it's not a church, if it's not an assisted care facility, if it's not cluster, what I'd call cluster homes, what is it, what's next? Offices? Or do you, does it revert to pure AG1 and you fence it off and put cows back in there?
Anybody else? Bert?
This area on the western side that we refer to as a park, what is it really? I mean, is it just going to be the woods that are there now? Is it going to be accessible by just the residences or the public or what?
We had planned actually to, on the very pin corner, to create some type of a community park where it would be landscaped on the corner there and then leaving the balance of it undisturbed going up Cogburn because that seemed to be what the community wanted, was to keep it kind of most in the natural. But we had, in that triangular area that partially touches Bethany and then a certain area going up Cogburn, we would see that being a kind of a corner pocket park that would be accessible to the community and to, and to the neighbors. It's really, it would be more ornamental, really, if you think about it, you know, who's actually going to sit in it? But we would try to landscape it and maybe put some benches and gazebo just to kind of create a little focus point on the corner. We have not fully addressed that. And again, there's been some difference of opinion of whether just to keep it totally. But our plan would be to kind of landscape it behind the sidewalk and fencing and create it to be kind of a little, you know, pocket park like you would, you know, in, in some other developments. So it had a little bit of a community focus and feel. That's, that's the plan.
Joe?
Yeah, I was, this is more of a statement back to Bill than it is a question to anybody else. But I think that we've heard a lot from the people that are for this and the people that are against it. And there's a couple of things that actually I think everybody's agreeing on and that's that, you know, residential is the right solution for this piece of property. I think the only question that we've got that we're trying to resolve is the density issue. Coming into this meeting tonight, I was thinking that 28 wasn't the right number. I was thinking that it needed to be something lower than that. But I'm actually starting to get convinced that there's a lot of work, a lot of homework that's been done on the number itself. And, you know, whether it's 27 or 28, I don't think it's much below, below that, that area. And so if the preference is to have residential in this space, which again is, is what I think I've heard tonight, then I think that this is a, this is a viable option for that. I think that the setbacks or the buffer area that's between the development and the homeowners and the adjacent subdivision is, is substantial. And like you said, Joe, it's, it's a better deal than they would get for just AG1 development, so.
But I agree with Bill in that I think the five-foot setback is, is a little narrow. I really think that there's no need for a variance for that. I think the seven-foot setback ought to, ought to be able to make that work.
Anybody else? Rick?
I guess I'm, I'm still going back to the conversations that I've had with people and trying to weigh it. We did meet with the developer. He asked for some time and I, I've seen the product that's over at Crab Apple. I think it, it is an attractive product. I guess I'm still grappling with the density. That's, because that's what I've heard from people is going that tight, that many homes in one place. That's, I guess, the thing that I'm still a little bit, I guess, not comfortable with. I understand some of the economics, but I'm wondering if there's, if there is something that's in between those, that's closer to really what the neighbor. And I understand Mr. Hicks saying we don't want to go back to the drawing board and start over. And if, Mr. Hicks, if I could ask you, so you're saying if we go to a bottom line, your final point is 27 or nothing. Is that what you're saying?
At this time, if you're asking me what I can live with, 27 based on the, the commitments we've made, the expense to develop the site, the amount of money that's invested or going to be invested in fencing, landscaping and all of those things. And again, it appears a lot more dense than it is because we're squeezed in from two sides. But yes, 27 is where we need to land or we would rather not move forward with the project.
And I know the density number is a, is a hot topic, but the reality is you go, it's a math equation. It's a business decision. If you do less lots, there not going to be money to have as big a buffers and landscape and park, you know, park area put aside. So sometimes you, you get the number down and then the neighbors are going to see a whole lot more and it's really going to affect them more negatively. So that's my perspective on that.
I guess I, I just want to talk about the elephant in the room that no one's really mentioned. There's an entity that we've never really discussed here and that's the bank, you know, as far as this goes. I mean, the developer has gone through a lot. We know the economics of the situation. We know the houses. We know the density. My, my biggest concern is if, if we lose control over what we've done, you know, and which has happened before to us in the past and has happened to municipalities all over the place. And that can happen if the bank takes over or you have shareholders that don't live here, live in California, New York, Illinois, I don't know. Didn't go to the CZIN meetings, didn't go to the visioning meetings, hadn't really talked to any of the neighbors here. You know, if they feel that they can sell to another governmental agency outside of us, whether Fulton County Board of Education, Cambridge High School reaches capacity next year, it'd be a lot easier to buy that land for them. And they can do what they want with it and we have no control over it. No one really has given me an answer to the fact that we have that staring at us in the face, which is Cambridge High School, great school, but still that wasn't what the community had envisioned at the time. You know, I, I look at it, if it was AG1, you know, granted, they can put a road off Cogburn, road off Bethany Bend and, and build a lot of homes there. The pond would still be, I guess, where it is. I don't know if that would change. You know, the, the quality of the products there is out of our control because they had that property right. I think in this case, with what we've done from a visioning process, wasn't easy, wasn't pretty. It's like making sausage. But I, I worry about what happens if it doesn't pass. What happens then? And if that's the case, you know, and, and the, and that, that goes through and we lose that control, you know, I worry about three years, we get something that no one wants, which has happened before. You got Kings Ridge across the street, Alpharetta property now, tax, tax money going Alpharetta, we're responsible for the traffic. Cambridge High School, Fulton County Board of Education, lose that land, we're responsible for the traffic. You know, I, I look at it now, this is an opportunity from a transitional perspective to perhaps stop that and then maintain whatever control that we might. I just worry about what happens if it doesn't. And that's, that's why I think that we have to look at it.
Good. Anything else or we'll open up for motion?
Before you go, I think there's a question as to what the, some of the setbacks were on the, on the rezone parcel of Fulton County. Robin's returned. If I can just give you a quick summation of that. If that project had moved forward, it would have required a front setback of 10 feet, a side yard separation of seven and a half feet, rear setback of 10 feet, heated square, heated floor area 2,200 square feet, a 50-foot buffer along AG1 and a lot size of 7,150 square feet. It was conditioned for 187 homes, just to give you some idea of what that was rezoned for by Fulton County.
I had had a question a little bit earlier. Did we find out how many, how many homes were actually represented in the stakeholder group?
I have that listed.
Okay.
Can I send them all and then you just?
Sure.
You want to pass those down, Rick?
Sure.
Anybody have anything else? And I, you know, I just want to make a statement. It's kind of the white elephant in the room too is that, well, I, I think that every stakeholder has the same value there. Everybody that's affected, but quite honestly, the biggest stakeholder out there is the property owner. And they're the ones that are, you know, have the legal right to, to do something with their land that's economically viable. And again, I'm just going back. I know everybody's concerned about the density, but the reality is stakeholders, you know, besides the property owner and the neighbor, the neighborhood, the Oakstone Glen behind it and the affected property owners, which I agree are important stakeholders, I believe are getting a better deal with this plan as far as what they're actually going to look at and be able to see. And with the park area and the wooded along Cogburn Road, and I've driven several times around here through the neighborhood and looked, by the time you drive around to the neighborhood, this new development would not really be, I don't think people would associate the two, like it's, it's far enough away. So again, I'm just saying, I think this is a win-win for both sides. I know some folks may not agree, but just leave it at that. Anybody else have anything else or do I have a motion? You're the one who wants. Let's figure out how to craft this. All right, Bill?
I'll make a motion to approve RZ 13-16 slash North, without VC 1306. Northeast corner of Bethany Bend and Cogburn Road by Arrowhead Real Estate Partners LLC to rezone from AG1 Agricultural to new neighborhood unit plan to develop 27 single-family homes at a density of 2.86, 2.97 units per acre. Two with a seven-foot side setback, 2,800 square foot minimum heated living area with a 3,000 square foot average heated living area. 25% of the units to be three sides brick.
Conditions is stated by staff in the report?
And the conditions, other conditions stated by.
Can I make clarification?
Yeah.
Are you going to deny this?
I think the 2,800 to 32, you know, was the range. I don't think that, you know, in the discussions that we heard, it was a 3,000 average. It was 2,800 to 3,200 to 2,800 being the minimum.
Okay.
Bill, the other question I would ask, do we really want to get into explaining or deciding what materials were going to be used? I thought the conversation popped out at let the builder build something, a product that's going to sell as opposed to try to dictate what's going to sell. But I mean, it's your motion. You do what you want.
Well, I think, Mr. Hicks, and correct me if I'm wrong, agreed to 25% of units to be three sides brick. Is that correct, sir?
Well, basically, it's a mixture of materials. It'd be at least 25% would have brick fronts and they may have cedar shake and other sides around them. But we agreed just to be, to be brick fronts with, and again, the Crab Apple product that's been approved by the staff, it has some siding and some cedar shake as a combination of elements wrapping the house.
Question?
You could do a 25% heart separate, you know, it could be a brick or stone.
And Bill, Bill, are you going to suggest that we deny the variance of the width between the homes, reduce it?
I'd address that.
That's in there with the seven?
Yes. So we're going back to clarify 25% of the units to have brick fronts?
Correct. Brick elevations, yes. Front elevation.
Brick elevations. Front elevations. And have you captured that?
Do you want to restate it, Bill? Let's, let's clean it up and.
Yeah, give me, give me 60 seconds to kind of summarize the thoughts of what I think you just did, and I'll try to read back what I think we captured that would make it, that would capture your motion. And I'll start that, and then I'll have Ken maybe explain how you can get rid of, if you want to, the variants. I think what I heard you say was to approve RZ13-16, the staff's recommended conditions, amending condition 1B to change the number 28 to number 27, and to change 3.08 to 2.97. Further amending 3H to change five feet to seven feet. Further amending 3E by adding that the average square footage would be a minimum of 3,000 square feet, and changing 3L to include after assistance from the city architect with a minimum of seven homes having brick elevations. I'll turn it over to the city attorney as to how you could structure doing away with the variants.
Excuse me. Could you clarify the 3,000 square foot number? I believe you said 3,000 square foot average?
I think that's what I heard you say.
2,800 square foot minimum with 3,000 square foot average?
Correct. Twenty, yes, to keep it as it was, but add to it that, add to the 2,800 square feet minimum, that an average would be 3,000.
Kathy, do you want to just clarify that? Because I know there was some conversation. And I think you said 2,800 minimum. And again, I'm.
Yes. Our, our condition was 2,800 minimum. The technical report that Curtis quoted me saying, which is contained in there, says that it would be an average of 3,000 because there'd be a minimum of 28 and, and up to 3,200. If I might also, in terms of the, the brick, I, I think that what needs to be captured is, is front brick elevation. And then, or alternatively, as the city architect sitting behind me has suggested, is that, or we just put in there something along the lines of mandated 360 architecture, so that all sides are designed and captured, so there's no backside or whatever. So, so that's another alternative, just to put into the mix.
So I guess I just need to hear you articulate what you're intending to do, and then we'll put the words around.
I'd agree with Kathy's last explanation and definition of the use of brick.
Okay. So let me, let me take one more stab at this then. So I believe the motion would be to approve RZ13-16 and deny VC13-06 with the following amended conditions: to amend condition 1B to change the number 28 to 27, and to change 3.08 to 2.97. Further amending condition 3H to change the number 5 to the number 7. Further changing condition 3E by adding after the minimum heated floor area per units of 2,800 square feet to include a minimum average of 3,000 square feet, and amending 3L to indicate that, after the words with the assistance from the city architect, to have a minimum of seven homes have front brick elevations.
And 360-degree architecture.
And 360-degree architecture.
Which, to clarify, I think means all sides would be equal.
It would require architectural review.
Is that your motion?
That is my motion.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion as read into the record from Councilmember Lusk and a second by Councilmember Coons. Is there any discussion?
I just got one thing to say. Four or five years ago, we passed a sewer map, and this lot wasn't included on it. And I supported that map. And in the past, when we've had others that have come forward, I haven't supported those. And for that reason, I won't support this one either. I do think it's a little too dense. I don't think I've heard from the neighbors arguing that they can see the, the rooftops or any of that kind of stuff. So that's why I'm not going to support it.
Okay. Any other discussion? All right. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It's five, we're trying to. Will the city clerk please call the next item?
Our next item is consideration of U1303, U1307-13440, Cogburn Road by St. Francis Day School, Inc., for a use permit, Section 64-1831, to increase the area of the school and the total square footage from 92,616 square feet to 109,116 square feet. That includes a practice gym and two maintenance buildings. A two-part concurrent variance for the following: One, buildings shall be set back more than 30 feet from the edge of the required landscape strip or easements, Section 64-1145-3B. Two, buildings shall not be oriented to a public street, Section 64-1145-2A. This is Agenda Item Number 13-287. First presentation was heard at the December 2nd, 2013 Regular Council Meeting. Ms. Kathy Field.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. You have before you an aerial showing the site plan that we're considering this evening. This is the revised site plan submitted on November 19th with the parking adjustments included. Subject site contains 41.797 acres. It was originally approved for a use permit for a private school in 1997 for a maximum of 600 students. It was approved for a use permit for recreational fields in 2002. Recently, the school acquired a single-family residence on the southern end of the subject site adjacent to Cogburn Road. The applicant is requesting to increase the acreage of the school and the total square footage from 92,616 square feet to 109,116 square feet to include a practice gym and two maintenance buildings. The request does not include any additional students. The planning commission removed, reviewed this application on November 20th, and they recommended approval conditional as recommended by staff. Site plan analysis based on the revised site plan submitted on November 18th, staff offers the following analysis. Under the use permit standards for a school, private or special, the applicant meets all the required standards. Under the Northwest Fulton Overlay District, they're requesting two concurrent variances. VC1307 Part 1, that building shall be set back no more than 30 feet from the edge of the required landscape strip or easements. The proposed new buildings are accessory buildings to be used for storage locker rooms and a practice gym, and therefore should not be required to be set back no more than 30 feet from the edge of the required landscape strip or easement. It is staff's opinion that the Northwest Fulton Overlay's intent was not to require these ancillary buildings to a primary use such as a private school to be placed less than 30 feet from the edge of the landscape strip or easement. This placement would inadvertently give prominence to these ancillary buildings. By granting this variance, it would not offend the spirit or intent of the zoning ordinance. Secondly, based on the fact that this requirement, if strictly applied, would create an unnecessary hardship because of an extraordinary situation not caused by the applicant. Thirdly, relief, if granted, would not cause a substantial detriment to the public good and surrounding properties. Lastly, the public safety, health and welfare are secured and substantial justice is done. Therefore, staff recommends approval conditional of VC13-07 Part 1. In terms of VC1307 Part 2, that building shall not be oriented to a public street. The proposed new buildings are accessory buildings to be used for storage locker rooms and practice gym, and therefore should not be required to be oriented to a public street. It is staff's opinion that the Northwest Fulton Overlay's intent was not to require these ancillary buildings to a primary use such as a private school to be oriented to a private, to a public street, giving prominence to these ancillary buildings. By granting this variance, it would not offend the spirit or intent of the zoning ordinance. Secondly, based on the fact that this requirement is strictly applied, would create an unnecessary hardship. Thirdly, relief, if granted, would not cause a substantial detriment to the public good. Therefore, staff recommends approval conditional of VC1307 Part 2. Public involvement. In terms of CZIM meeting, which was held on September 24th, the applicant was present. One resident also attended, a property owner to the south of the subject site. The original plan indicated a storage building adjacent to this resident's property. Since that time, the revised site plan has relocated the building away from his property. The Design Review Board gave this, this application a courtesy review on October the 1st, and the following comments were made. The DRB considers the school to be a good neighbor. The proposed additions would not produce a significant change. Public participation report, the applicant met the requirements of the public participation plan. The applicant did speak to Mr. Edward Bachman on September 30th, in which he expressed his concern regarding the location of the garages. In response, revised site plan was submitted to relocate the garages away from Mr. Bachman's home. Use permit considerations, whether the proposed use is consistent with the land use or economic development plans adopted by the mayor and city council. City of Milton's 2030 Comprehensive Plan recommends the subject site as agriculture question and estate residential. Private schools are in appropriate use within this category. In terms of parking spaces, the required number of parking spaces, based on the number of classrooms, is 360. The plan shows 363. The revised site plan submitted on November 19th updates the existing and proposed parking to reflect this required 363 parking speech, spaces, which meets the minimum requirement of 360. Conclusion, the proposed expansion for the private school is consistent with the City of Milton's future land use, plan map and surrounding uses. The requested two-part concurrent variance does not offend the spirit or intent of the zoning ordinance. Therefore, staff recommends approval conditional of U13-03 and VC13-07. Recommended conditions, if this petition is approved by the mayor and city council, it should be approved for a use permit for a private school, subject to the owner's agreement to the following enumerated conditions. One, to the owner's agreement to restrict the use of subject property as follows. A, restrict the use of the subject property to a private high school with 41 classrooms and 19,955 square foot gymnasium, and accessory uses at an overall density of 2,370.9 gross square feet per acre, zoned, or a total gross floor area of 108,580 square feet, whichever is less. B, restrict the number of students to 600. Grade should be limited 9 through 12. Limit the height of all buildings to two stories or 40 feet, whichever is less. To the owner's agreement to abide by the following, to the revised site plan received by the community development department, said plan is conceptual only and must meet or exceed the requirements of the zoning ordinance, all other applicable city ordinances, and these conditions provide should the approval of a land disturbance permit. To the owner's agreement to the following site development considerations, no more than one exit entrance on Cogburn Road, B, to allow the location of a softball field and its accessory structures, and baseball field and its accessory structures in the front yard, C, to allow proposed buildings numbered 1, 2, and 3 on the revised site plan submitted November 19th to be set back more than 30 feet from the edge of the required landscape strip or easements, D, to allow proposed buildings numbered 1, 2, and 3 on the revised site plan submitted on November 19th not to be oriented to a public street. To the owner's agreement to abide by the following requirements, dedication improvements, A, dedicated no cost to City of Milton prior to the approval of business license, land disturbance permit subdivision, flat or certificate of occupancy, whichever comes first, sufficient land is necessary to provide the following: provide 20-foot permanent construction, maintenance and access easement to the City of Milton adjacent to Cogburn Road right-of-way along the entire property frontage for future multi-use trail. And that is my report, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Is there any direct questions before we hear from those speaking on this? Okay. Any questions for Kathy right now, or if not, I'll open it up to, for those in support of this application.
We have one public comment in support. That is from Mr. Drew Buchalato.
I'm Drew Buchalato. I'm the headmaster at St. Francis. I reside at 4590 Northside Drive, Atlanta. Basically, what we've tried to do with this site plan revision is locate these buildings so they'd be as inobtrusive as possible. I think the nearest distance from the practice gymnasium to Cogburn Road would be 185 feet. There's a natural depression that we're looking at, so we're trying to tuck that gymnasium as deep as possible in that depression once again, so it really can't be viewed by the neighbors or even people driving down Cogburn Road. So we appreciate participating in this process, and I would just save any additional time for any questions.
Okay. So do we have any other public comments?
We do not have any more, sir.
Do we have any, an opposition?
None in opposition, sir.
Okay. I'll close this hearing and open up for questions, staff or the applicant in the council. Anybody have anything? Okay. Hearing none. Anybody that wants to make a motion?
Sir Mayor, I'd make a motion to approve the agenda item number 13-287 as read.
One second.
Okay, I've got a motion for approval from Councilmember Morick and a second from Councilmember Hewitt. Any discussion? Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passed unanimous.
I thank you all very much. Ms. McDonald, thank you for all your help.
Thank you very much. I'm going to ask if we could take a five-minute break for a restroom break.
Also, let the council know with the hour getting late and recognize that she probably haven't eaten tonight. We ordered some food, so I probably don't want to slow the meeting down and do that. But if y'all are hungry and want to step out one at a time as we continue with the meeting, there'll be food in the break room.
All right. Do we need a vote on that?
Five minutes?
Yeah.
Apologize. We need a restroom break. Would you guys could take one if needed?
Take one if needed.
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 Based on the applicant's revised site plan submitted to the Community Development Department on September 26th, staff offers the following considerations. In the applicant's revised letter of intent received by the Community Development Department on October 11th that states the applicant proposes to host events in the range of 100 to 200 people at most. The applicant proposes that the events will cease artificial noise at 10:00 PM. The intent is to provide a facility for these events and showcase what is uniquely the City of Milton while preserving green space and rural agricultural areas. The existing house outbuildings, patios, drive, et cetera will provide for the proposed use. Parking including handicap will be handled on existing pavement, grassed areas and will meet the ratios provided by ordinance. The applicant states that he may construct a pavilion in the future if the need should arise. The driveway at 13895 Hopewell Road will be utilized for entrance only and the exiting of vehicles will be at the applicant's property located at 13835 Hopewell Road to the south. This is based on the small size of the entrance and lack of site distance at the subject site. VC 13-04 Part 1, to delete the eight-foot-high opaque fence along the south property line. The subject site's driveway abuts the single-family residence to the south. This driveway will be utilized for the ingress for the subject site which will impact the adjacent property negatively. Therefore, staff recommends denial of VC 13-04 Part 1. VC 13-04 Part 3, to delete the three-year period requirement. The applicant is requesting that the requirement limiting the use permit to a three-year period from the date of the city council's approval be deleted. It is staff's opinion that this time limitation is provided to allow each event or event facility to be evaluated by the mayor and city council on its impact on adjacent and nearby properties. The applicant may choose to reapply for the same use permit at the time the use permit expires. Therefore, staff recommends denial of VC 13-04 Part 3. VC 13-04 Part 4, to allow access from a local street. It is staff's opinion that a proposed use such as an event facility should not be accessed from a local street. Based on these circumstances, it is staff's opinion that granting this variance would not offend the spirit or intent of the zoning ordinance. Secondly, based on the fact that this requirement is strictly applied would create an unnecessary hardship because of extraordinary situation not caused by the applicant. Thirdly, relief of granted would not cause a substantial detriment to the public good. Lastly, the public safety, health, and welfare are secured of substantial justice is done. Therefore, staff recommends approval conditional of VC 13-04 Part 1. Northwest Fulton Overlay District. Although there are no new structures being proposed, based on the fact that the current uses a single-family residence and the request is a non-residential use, the application comes under the purview of the Northwest Overlay District. The applicant is requesting the following concurrent variants. VC 13-04 Part 2, to delete the 75-foot undisturbed buffer and 10-foot improvement setback along all property lines. The applicant states in the revised letter of intent that the configuration of the venue property will allow for at least a 100-foot buffer setback for surrounding properties, except for the access drive affecting the property located at 13855 Hopewell Road. In addition, applicant states that the intent is to preserve green space and rural agricultural areas. Except for the property at 13855 Hopewell Road, all the adjoining properties are owned by the applicant. In addition, the distance between the subject site and property is owned by others ranges from 230 feet to 330 feet. Staff recommends an equestrian-style fence five feet in high be constructed along the east property line labeled with a distance of 454.33 feet and a planted screen not to exceed five feet in high interior to the fence. Plant materials and planting plans shall be approved by the city arborists. This condition will be included in the recommended conditions and will provide protection for nearby properties and define the area in which people can circulate in the site defined as the event facility. Based on these circumstances, it is staff's opinion that the granting of this variance would not offend the spirit or intent of the zoning ordinance. Secondly, based on the fact that this requirement is strictly applied would create an unnecessary hardship. And thirdly, relief of granted would not cause a substantial detriment to the public but good. Therefore, staff recommends approval conditional of VC 13-04 Part 2. Fire marshal. The event facility will be required to be sprinkled and provide handicapped accessibility. The ingress and egress is sufficient for emergency vehicles to provide services to the site. Public involvements. Community zoning information meeting. On September 24th, the applicant was present at the CZIM meeting held at City Hall. Sixteen people signed the sign-in sheet. Attendees expressed concerns about the number of people attending events, the potential impact of noise and light, how many events will be scheduled, and the possibility of outside event structures. The City of Milton Design Review Board conducted a courtesy review on October 1st and the following comment was made at the meeting. They were concerned that the approval of this use will open the door for other uses that may inconvenience the neighbors. Public participation planner report. The meeting was held on October 9th. There were four people in attendance. The concerns expressed were numbers of attendees, hours of operation, noise, types of events. The applicant stated that they would allow weddings, anniversaries, and would end by 11:00 PM. Use permit considerations. Whether the proposed use is consistent with the land use or economic development plans adopted by the mayor and council. The proposed development is located in the agricultural equestrian state residential land use category in the City of Milton 2030 comp plan. The proposed use permit is permitted in AG1 agricultural districts, which is an acceptable zoning district for the AE land use category. In addition, the following plan policy is consistent with the proposed use. We will support programs that retain, expand, and create businesses that provide a good fit for our community's economy in terms of job skills required and links to existing businesses and locate them appropriately within the city. Compatibility with land uses and zoning districts in the vicinity of the property for which the use permit is proposed. The subject site is adjacent to a minor arterial to the west and agriculturally zoned property owned by the applicant to the north and east. If the required eight-foot opaque fence is constructed adjacent to the driveway, to the entrance driveway, it would provide screening to the only single-family residence adjacent to the site. The applicant has asked in the letter of intent to have a maximum of 200 guests, but states that the typical event would have 100 guests. Staff will condition the maximum of 100 guests. It is staff's opinion that the event facility is compatible with adjacent and nearby properties if it is approved with the recommended conditions. Location number of off-street parking spaces. The chart, based on the capacity that's proposed, requires, shows a requirement of 74 parking spaces. The number of spaces provided will be either 88 or 106. And it should be noted, the applicant submitted two parking plan options on November 20th. It appears that Plan A indicates a total of 88 parking spaces, including handicapped. Plan B indicates a total of 106 parking spaces. Protective screening. The applicant has requested a concurrent variance to delete the 75-foot undisturbed buffer and 10-foot improvement setback as discussed above. Staff is of the opinion that there is adequate protection in the distance from adjacent property owners with the exception of the residence directly to the south along the entrance driveway. In addition, staff has included a condition to require a five-foot equestrian-style fence for landscaping interior to the fence to provide additional screening. Staff has recommended denial of the deletion of the eight-foot-high opaque fence to provide the necessary screening for the property to the south. Ingress and egress to the property. One driveway does not meet site distance for full access. Therefore, staff's requiring one-way circulation. Neither meets the width for one-way circulation and must be widened to meet the required width. In conclusion, if approved with the recommended conditions, the proposed special event facility is consistent with the City of Milton's 2030 future land use plan and policies. Therefore, staff recommends U 13-02 be approved conditional. And regarding the concurrent variances, staff recommends approval conditional of VC 13-04 Parts 2 and 4 and denial of VC 13-04 Parts 1 and 3. And we've included, as part of our report, the letter of support from the adjacent property owner to the south who is requesting that the opaque fence that we have required be Recommended conditions. If this petition is approved by the mayor and city council, it should be approved for a use permit for festivals or events, outdoor, indoor, conditional, subject to the owner's agreement to the following enumerated conditions. Where these conditions conflict with the stipulations and offerings contained in the letter of intent, these conditions shall supersede unless specifically stipulated by mayor and council. 1. To the owner's agreement to restrict the use of subject property as follows. The existing single-family house and property within the 4.697 acre site utilized for events. B. The existing barn, outbuildings, poolhouse, garage shall not be expanded in size as depicted on the revised site plan received by the Community Development Department on September 26th. The number of guests shall not exceed 100 people for a single event. To the owner's agreement to abide by the following, to the revised site plan received by the Community Development Department. Said site plan is conceptual only and must meet or exceed the requirements of the zoning ordinance, all other applicable city ordinances, and these conditions prior to the approval of a land disturbance permit. 3. To the owner's agreement to the following site development considerations. A. To delete 75-foot undisturbed buffer and 10-foot improvement setback along all property lines. To provide a five-foot-high equestrian-style fence along the east property line labeled 454.33 feet and a planted screen not to exceed five feet in high interior to the fence. Plant material, planting plan shall be approved by city arborists. Permitted curb cut access shall not be from a local street. D. Artificial sound emitting from the facility shall cease at 10:00 PM. To the owner's agreement to abide by the following requirements, dedicate and improvements. Access to the site shall be subject to the approval of Milton Department of Public Works and at a minimum shall include the following. 1. Driveway located at 13895 Hopewell Road shall be entrance only and driveway located at 13835 Hopewell Road shall be exit only. Driveways shall meet minimum width requirements. Driveways modification shall include any required right-of-way reservation for future intersection improvement project at Hopewell Road and Bethany Bend. And that is my presentation.
Could you clarify the point that was brought up there with no curb cut permitted on a local street?
The requirement is that that road is not a local street, it's a arterial street. And so, it, Robin, maybe you can explain a little better. It needs to be modified.
It's a mystery to us why that was a regulation or a development standard and speaking to the staff at Fulton County. Originally, this permit was used for the Renaissance Festival in South Fulton and we think it was just a typo in their regulations and we adopted it. So, we'll go back and, you know, do a text amendment to fix it. It just absolutely makes no sense. But technically, it was in the ordinance, so therefore, there was a variance required.
So, what bearing does it have on the issue of the road, the ingress and the egress route?
Well, it says that it has to be from a local street, i.e. a subdivision street, which does not really make a lot of sense.
Because it's on a arterial street. It's not a locally designated street.
If you look at all the other use permits, they would, they say shall not be derived from a local street. It's like it forgot some of the requirement. Does that make sense?
It really doesn't make sense to us either and that's why, you know, we really need to go back and modify that requirement, number one, and secondly, that's why we're supporting this variance request.
Is there any other specific question before we go on?
Just a quick question. As far as traffic flow, is it that the one-way direction is because of the safety of when you were to exit on the road if they were to go back out the same driveway they came in?
Yes, the width of the driveway is one issue and the other is that the site distance. And Carter and Sarah are here, but I think that's the gist of, yes. Carter's telling me, yes. So, that was the issue.
So, it's a safety issue is why you're saying direct out to the other point.
Yeah, so it's a one-way circulation pattern, in one and out the other.
We'll certainly have to come back to questions as soon as we, but we'll have the hearing and public comment unless you got a specific question. Okay. First, we'll hear from those in support of this application.
Our first public comments from Mr. Scott Reese.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I'm Scott Reese with Bromwell Reese and Associates doing business at 13685 Highway 9, Milton, Georgia 3004. I'm here tonight representing Jeff and Sally Runner and their application to obtain a use permit for their property located at 13895 Hopewell Road. They own a total of 30 acres there. We're proposing the use permit area as approximately 4.69 acres included inside this 30 acres. We're applying under the festivals and events, indoor, outdoor. It is a round peg in a square hole, but there is not a specific ordinance that meets what we're seeking. As Robin and Kathleen alluded to, this is a Milton adoption of a Fulton County use permit and we're stuck with all the parameters within that permit. Because of that, we're having to ask for four variances to comply. Number one, the eight-foot opaque fence, we feel like there's sufficient screening, natural screening there. The neighbor to the south has requested the deletion of the fence. Kind of feel like it's a solution looking for a problem. We don't want it, she doesn't want it. Number two, the 75-foot undisturbed buffer, planted buffer for the Northwest Overlay. We specifically tried to create the parameters of the special use permit to allow a buffer of Mr. Runner's property and to preserve the equestrian field, the horse farm. The whole intent is to, for the use permit or for the area to be, you know, we're going to have a wedding or an anniversary in the middle of a horse farm, not inside a planted buffer. So, we're asking for the deletion of that. We don't feel like that it's necessary and we're providing adequate separation from adjoining properties. Number three, and this is, I guess, the deal killer, the three-year renewal. Once again, we're back to the adoption of a Fulton County ordinance that was created, in my understanding, specifically for the Renaissance Festival. For an event that runs not to exceed 180 days in length. We're not looking for an event of that magnitude or that style. The improvements that Mr. Runner would have to make to the facility, the building, the handicap access, the sprinkling, it precludes doing this with the thought that if he's done everything right in three years, this use is taken away. We feel like there should be a way to create conditions that would control the property, that he will do, you know, what he says he does, and if he doesn't, then there should be a way to shut him down. If he's doing everything correct, he should be to go on and operate as every other use permit is mandated within the city. Finally, number four, as we've gone over, as Robin and I described, we think it's just a typo. There's no reason, you know, for it to be off of a local street. That's what we try to, we try to keep everything off of local streets. So, that's the gist of that. Trying to keep brevity in, on the recommended conditions, we would like to delete 1B. We would like the number of guests to not exceed 200 people. We would like to delete 3B. And 4, double I. We've met with Carter and Sarah. I think we've addressed all the traffic issues. I'm sure they'll be ready to answer any questions where the consensus was if we widen the entrance at the entrance drive, that would take care of everything on that. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Runner because he can more greatly express what his plans are instead of me trying to express those. Thank you.
Next comment is from Mr. Jeff Runner.
I have a presentation, I guess. How do you work this thing, Robin? Okay, we're here to talk about Yellow House Farm. We're going to call it Yellow House Farm at Milton. It'll be an events venue where Southern elegance meet rustic charm. I think most of you have been out there, so you've seen the place. But before we get started, I wanted to address a couple of lingering issues and that's in relation to the barn that we built several years ago. We sat with Fulton County numerous times, went over the plans. Fulton County knew what we were doing. Fulton County knew why we were doing it, what we were planning to do with it. We got all the building permits that we were required to get. Everything about the barn in Fulton County is legal and Fulton County has issued a letter and, you know, most of these government agencies, they always reference ordinances. They are very specific and very explicit about what we're allowed to do in that barn and in stating that everything that we are doing is all legal and up to standard. In spite of numerous sheriff, code enforcement, and building inspector visits, more than 50 in less than a year, there was never anything found that was not in compliance. We were never cited for anything. There was never an issue. Now, that's enough said about the barn, but let's move on to what we want to do. We're looking for a way to keep this property as it is. The property is very expensive to maintain. It's not that we can't afford it, but we're getting older as we, at our demise, you know, we're looking for a way for our kids to be able to keep it and do what we're doing. Taxes, insurance, and maintenance exceed $6,000 to $10,000 a month. Our plans are to use the house, the guest house, the RV barn, and approximately five acres as the events venue. We're going to renew the covenant for the qualifying barn arena and approximately 25 acres that remain and continue its agricultural and equestrian use. We'll deed the rest of the property to either a family trust or a family corporation to ensure its continued existence after our demise. Uh-oh, did I do something wrong? The facilities, it's approximately five acres. It's nestled in the heart of the 30-acre estate. The house is 175 years old and I'll go through this quickly because I know you've all been out there. So, it's over 10,000 square feet. It has eight bedrooms and some parlors. We have carpet, parking to accommodate over 100 vehicles. We have indoor meeting and ceremony areas that can accommodate groups as large as 200 people. The fire marshal says we can have up to 465 in there. The outdoor decks in the ceremony area will accommodate groups of the 400 people. We want to be more of an elegant, quiet, intimate events facility. We don't want to do adolescent parties. Our target group size is less than 125, but we'll allow up to 200. You only invent that someone plans a wedding and realize, oh, they forgot great Aunt Sally and it's created all sorts of a fuss in the family. If we were asked to host an event of more than 200 people, we want to come in and talk to the city and see if we need a special permit or anything in the event that something like that comes up. Back on that, I want to remind everyone, this is our house. We built, this is our dream, so we don't want to do anything that's going to really tear it up. And so, we want to keep it down to, you know, a low number of people. We're going to do basically two groups. Now, we're going to, we want to be open to all types of events, but we're going to focus on two areas. Family memorable events, weddings, bridal showers, anniversary parties, baby showers, engagement parties, things of that nature, and then charitable events primarily in the children's area. We'll do fundraisers and awareness parties. We'll operate from 8 to 11 Saturday, Monday through Saturday, 8 to 10 on Sunday. Although, we don't know anything about this business, but we feel like most of the events will be on Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. We'll have valet parking for larger or directed parking for large groups and then smaller parties will be self-parked. Live bands, most of the live bands will be restricted to being inside the house. Anything that's outside will obviously have to abide by the City of Milton's noise ordinance and we have onsite monitoring equipment to ensure that that happens. And then we'll use the Milton Off-Duty Police will be hired as security for larger group And as far as future expansion, we have nothing planned. The only thing that's a possibility is somewhere in the future, we have an outside area where they're having the ceremonies and we might want to put a 40-by-60 foot covering over that or something along in that nature in case, you know, for inclement weather.
One minute remaining.
Okay, this is a prop, this is an aerial view of the house. Our house faces the subdivision, so everything we're doing is in the back, which is on the roadside of the house. All the weddings will be on the left side of this picture or will be inside the house. Here's a picture of the sunroom showing for one of the weddings that we had, that was, we set up for, give you kind of an idea. Here's just where we were set up for the reception in the family room. This is a little bridal shower we had for my daughter-in-law. This shows the outside wedding area set up facing it. And again, this is all away from the subdivision. The gazebo where we would have the outside band coming, you know, coming off the deck. It fits with Milton's development plan. The types of businesses that we are going to be supporting or that will be helping us will be, you know, obviously partying event, equipment rentals, restaurants and caterers, floors, photographers, hotels, travel agencies, security and valet parking.
10 minutes has elapsed.
Cleaning services, laundry, dry cleaning, landscaping, and DJs and taxis.
Hold on one second, Mr. Runner. Since the applicant's in the middle of his presentation as a council, be willing to add a few minutes.
Sure.
Five minutes and obviously we'll add that to the opposing side too.
Thanks, sir. And we're getting close to wrapping this up, but other places in Milton that hold events are schools, parks, churches, subdivision clubhouses, private residence, and other horse barns. Just about every horse barn has events of some type. They all make noise, they all create traffic. The only ones that create a problem unfortunately are the schools and the parks because they do not have to comply with the local ordinances. Everybody else does and since they have to comply, they rarely create a problem. We will abide by all of Milton's ordinances, noise will be monitored onsite. There's also a watchdog that wields a bigger club than any of the neighbors or the city, quite frankly, and that's the horses at the horse barn. If we do something that disturbs the horses, the horse owners remove them from our property and, you know, that's what this is about is an equestrian facility. So, we aren't going to do anything that's going to disturb or take away from the horses. I'll save this part for later. That's all I have at this point.
Okay. Do we have any other comments?
Yes, sir. We have five more. Five more.
But for...
In support, yes. We have 12 in opposition, five in support.
Good evening, Michael Standard, 13870 Bethany Oaks Point, Milton, of course. After the three or four meetings that I attended and then visiting the yellow farm, my house is directly in front of his house, so I can, if I wanted to, I could look in his window, so I can hear and see everything that's going on on his property. And after the tour of his facility, I determined, my wife determined, that we're not in opposition of this going forward. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. All right, city, the next. Next comment?
Next comment is from Jeff Wright.
My name's Jeff Wright, 13880 Bethany Oaks Point. I'm also right behind Mr. Runner and my wife and I, Stephanie, went to visit the property and it's a beautiful property and quite honestly, I'm not really concerned about it. I'm convinced that any noise would be a minimum. It's like Mr. Runner said, everything is on the exact opposite side of the house and so I'm definitely not opposed to it.
Thank you. Next, city?
Next comment is from Brent Reeves.
Brent Reeves, 15030 Freemanville Road, Milton, Georgia 3004. First and foremost, everybody knows the Yellow House. I mean, everybody who's ever come to Milton, even just passing by, says, oh, yeah, the Yellow House. It is the shining star, if not, if not the, it's definitely one of the shining stars of our community. And as you mentioned earlier, Mayor Lockwood, we have to do everything we can to preserve those types of properties. Anything that we would do here that would take away his right to economically use his property, which would be in detriment of this property and potentially push it towards some other use that may not be as detrimental would be completely against what the zoning is all about. Zoning has never been about trying to restrict someone's use, restrict someone's profitability use. It's been about making sure that the freedoms that people have in their own property are protected, but not at the expense of the surrounding landowners. The issue here is he owns obviously the four acres that we're talking about, but he also owns all the surrounding land. If we can't support this, I don't know how you can support a person's rights and their property. Sounds like most everybody that has reviewed this has been in support of it. There was just that one hanging issue that I'll kind of just, I guess, use an analogy for. There's a three-year renewal period that I think any business owner would see as being a ridiculous thing that you couldn't, you couldn't live up to. There is no business owner in the world that could ever come before you, ask for a permit and say, okay, I'm going to invest all this money in starting this business. I'm going to invest all this money in all the improvements that you're asking me to make. I'm going to invest all this money in expanding the road and meeting the fire code and putting in sprinklers and all of these things that you're going to ask and make Mr. Runner do. And then say, and then what I'll do is I'll come back in three years after I've established my business and ask you if I can keep doing business. You would never impose that on any other business. You wouldn't impose it on a pizza place and go, you know, go ahead and open up, good luck to you, and in three years come back and we'll make sure none of the neighbors, you know, don't disapprove of the smell, don't disapprove of, you know, the parking and all. You just, you wouldn't impose that. It's a ridiculous statute and I hope that you actually approve his request for variance. Thank you.
Thank you. Next city?
Next comment comes from Ms. Laura Renshaw.
My name's Laura Renshaw. I live at 1060 Birmingham Road, Milton. I represent Preserve Rural Milton. We feel very strongly, this is a very good example... We feel very strongly, this is a very good example of a landowner trying to save land and avoid any type of development. This helps him maintain his property, it retains the horse farm feel of the city. We believe it's very consistent with the rural character, and so we're strongly in support of it.
Our final comment, Ms. Amy Browning would like to have read into the record. She is at one-three-eight-nine-five Hopewell Road, Milton, Georgia. I think this is a great use for this property. It would be highly beneficial to Milton. I fully support the runners and their use of their property.
Okay, and that's all in support?
Yes, sir.
Correct. All right, we'll open up to those that, not, not in support, in opposition to this application.
Our first comment comes from Mr. Carl Haas.
Carl Hayes, twenty-eighty-five Double Creek Lane. Really? This is preserving the rural Milton to have a party facility that's operating seven days a week till eleven o'clock at night, right in my backyard? I know folks have spoken that are living in the neighborhood opposite where this facility would be. Double Creek Lane and Crab Apple Forest is actually going to take the brunt of it. If you look at the way the land goes across that farm behind us, it's just going to roll right downhill. I mean, the horses in that farm behind us, my kids can't swing on the swing. If it squeaks, I have to go out and oil it because it drives their horses crazy on the far side of, but in his property, just imagine what bands and everything else is going to sound like. I mean, I don't even know where to start. I don't want to tie up, I think there's some other people that want to talk, but, I mean, I can't imagine that we would want to approve something like this. And this is a residential area. This isn't, I mean, we're talking like in a city thing here, right? You know, to have a party facility operating seven days a week till eleven o'clock at night. I mean, unless we're having Quakers getting married, I mean, let's talk about the alcohol, the driving, and things afterwards, so that's just my opinion.
Thank you.
Next comment comes from Andrew Jordan.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. My name's Andy Jordan. I reside at one-three-nine-two-five Bethany Oaks Point, Milton, Georgia. Speaking tonight in opposition to the special use permit requested by Mr. Runner on the property adjacent to my neighborhood, Bethany Oaks. I'll let my neighbors talk about the adverse impacts to our neighborhood, which will include inappropriate noise, lighting, higher traffic, et cetera. All are good reasons to deny a project in a rural residential area, but instead I'd like to focus on some issues that haven't been discussed as much in the previous meetings. Mr. Runner developed this property with obvious commercial intentions. Your own staff indicates that the structures on this property could not and would not have been allowed if they were proposed today. This is his second attempt to commercialize this property, his first being in two thousand and six. At that time, he sent a note to the residents of Bethany Oaks indicating, we're not trying to build close to the property line, remove any of the existing buffers, or in any way intrude or encroach on your property. The use permit's exactly what it is, a permit to allow agriculture-related instructional events. Then right behind that, he says, this doesn't allow us to conduct commercial activities, have shows, or become a big party place. Now Mr. Runner wants to put in a big party place, and we're supposed to live with that. In presenting the application for the permit, planning and zoning staff quoted the Milton Comprehensive Plan, saying, they support programs that retain, expand, and create businesses that provide a good fit for the community's economy. What they didn't emphasize in that is it also says, and to locate them appropriately in the city. There are several other citations from the land use plan that indicate the permit request isn't appropriate for this location. Property is located in the central Milton character area of the plan. Under the development patterns for this area, it states that new development should match the typical densities found within this area, and should minimize undesirable impacts on surrounding rural and agricultural uses. While you can argue this isn't a new development, the intent of the plan is clear, that undesirable impacts on existing uses should be considered by the council. Appropriate land uses for the central Milton business, character area include AEE, Agricultural Equestrian and Estate, residential, private recreation, parks, recreation and conservation, residential loa, which is one unit per acre or less, and community facilities. What isn't included as an appropriate use for this area is retail and service. Retail or service businesses' uses are documented as appropriate for land uses in Arnold Mill, Deerfield, and the Bethany character areas, but not in the central Milton character area where this permit is proposed. The Economic Development Policy section of the plan, where your staff took that previous quote about supporting businesses that are good fit in the community, also states, we will consider access and our impacts to housing and transportation when considering economic development projects, and limit the expansion of businesses and/or commercial uses into established and stable residential areas. Let me repeat that. The Milton Comprehensive Plan states that the City of Milton will limit expansion of businesses and/or commercial uses into established and stable residential areas. You're all familiar with this area. It's been established and stable for a long time. Bethany Oaks been there for eighteen years, and a lot of the surrounding homes have been there much longer than that. As you review this permit application, I ask you to consider three things. Recognize that Mr. Runner chose to overdevelop his property for supposedly personal use. His stated intention of personal use is inconsistent with his two attempts to make it an income-producing property. Regardless of how much money he spent, or how much time has elapsed, allowing him to convert it to commercial venue would reward him for his approach of building first and asking permission later. Approval of this permit will incent other landowners to find ways to skirt zoning and land use plans that were carefully developed to preserve the best aspects of our community. Approving this permit sets precedent for retail and service businesses on AG1 zone property throughout Milton. I'm concerned, as are many neighbors, that it's only a matter of time before we're faced with additional applications to expand the uses of Mr. Runner's properties to other commercial activities. If the permit's approved, you may be creating future liabilities for the City of Milton when you try, when you try to deny applications for commercial uses on his or other similarly located and zoned properties. When you throw out the land use plan, as you're considering doing for this permit, you give away one of your best defenses as a city in future permit and zoning applications. Finally, I ask you to be sympathetic towards the homeowners in our area, and put yourself in our shoes. We bought our home in this neighborhood because we knew it was insulated from the noise, lights, activity, and traffic congestion of commercial areas. I ask you to consider these questions. How would you feel if this permit were for a property next to your family's home or your neighborhood? Would you or your staff be as open-minded about approval of this permit if you were faced with the prospect of neighboring property hosting unlimited parties seven days a week for up to two hundred guests until late evening hours with all the music, lights, traffic, and alcohol consumption that goes with it? Would you be comfortable that this commercial enterprise wouldn't impact the value of your home, or the, or your peaceful enjoyment of your home, or your quality of life? Those are my concerns. I hope I can make them your concerns tonight. A wedding venue may be a good business to have in our community, but clearly, it's not appropriate for this residential area where we live with our families. As your neighbor and as your constituent, I'm asking you to honor the spirit and intent of the Milton Comprehensive Land Use Plan and protect our neighborhood from encroachment by this commercial enterprise. Thank you for listening, and thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Our next comment comes from Tom Chapin.
Mayor Lockwood and members of the City Council, my name is Tom Chapin, and my wife and I reside at thirteen-nine-hundred Bethany Oaks Point in the Bethany Oaks subdivision. This comment pertains to special use permit U thirteen dash oh-four, VC thirteen dash oh-four, thirteen-eight ninety-five Hopewell Road. I'm opposed to granting the special use permit. Our home is directly across from the proposed location in, in this residential area, and I want to point out one aspect that may have been overlooked along the way, and that is the topography of this land. It has a bearing on this final decision, and it's worth consider, consideration. The land is hilly, and this venue location is elevated relative to the homes adjacent to the property. Thus, there's a valley between the proposed location and Bethany Oaks subdivision. This creates a special challenge for noise and lighting emanating from this potential commercial gatherings, and will be objectionable to the homes adjoining the property. Substantial steps must be taken to minimize noise and lights with proper screening and restrictions. Fulton County originally, as said to the past speaker, originally approved the applicant's barn and riding areas as accessory structures to the home on the property for personal use only. Now they're requesting to have a commercial business in the home with these dependent accessories. The applicant is also, keep in mind, a non-resident, an owner who will not be affected by the noise, lights, and travel from this business activity. The surrounding neighborhoods, however, would be adversely affected. If this proposal were to be approved, the following limitations should be set. Number one, the City of Milton planners suggested a low fence and vegetation facing Bethany Oaks subdivision, and this should be an essential part of the decision. Number two, no outdoor music should be allowed, and artificial noise should be not allowed after ten PM. Keep in mind, he's requesting six days a week till eleven PM at night. The variance to delete the three-year renewal should be denied. Renewal requirements should be implemented to provide a review of the implementation of this radical precedent in a residential area. At this point, all of these discussions on the commercial activity are theoretical, and they should be validated to ensure compliance. Lastly, this permit should not be transferable to any new owner if the property is sold. And thank you very much for your attention.
Thank you.
Next comment comes from Sandra Chapin.
I'm Sandy Chapin. I live at thirteen-nine-hundred Bethany Oaks Point. I'm opposed to granting a special use permit for the farm on Hopewell Road. This special use permit would allow a commercial act, activity in the midst of a residential neighborhood. This type of permit does not currently exist in Milton on AG1 property. I feel it is a dangerous precedent to set. It is inconsistent with Milton's development goals and should not be allowed. Milton is allowing the farm to be grandfathered into the City of Milton, and has indicated that the current configuration would not be approved today. There are not proper buffers for the structures that are located close to Bethany Oaks homeowners. There's already a traffic problem on Hopewell Road. I feel that if this goes in, that we'll have additional traffic. In the report, it said that this would be only on weekends, but as you can see, it could be any day of the week. So I feel that, as it is now, difficult to get out of our subdivision on a Friday night, that would exacerbate the problem. And I am concerned about the noise. Weddings and other events can occur every night of the week. Some activities will be outside. There is talk of outdoor, outdoor pavilions for the future. This type of noise on a regular basis is not in keeping with our neighborhood and why we moved to Bethany Oaks. One of the City of Milton's Comprehensive Land Use Plan goals is to limit the expansion of business and/or commercial uses into established, stable residential areas, which is what our neighborhood is. I've lived there for sixteen years. This is precisely the situation here. I believe that the council has a responsibility to look at this and the intention of the plan. If this proposal were to be approved, I think the following limitations should be set. The City of Milton planners suggested that low fence with the bushes at, I guess, five feet high, and I feel like this would be critical because our house sits right across from the parking area, and all of the cars coming and going, the lights would shine into our house. So if you had a fence with the bushes, at least it would screen out the car's lights. I don't feel that there should be outdoor music, and I like the idea of the artificial noise stopping at ten PM. The variance to delete the three-year renewal requirement should be denied. There has to be a check, a check and balance if there's any problems that are going on. There has to be a review period. The maximum number of attendees, I believe, should be limited to a hundred people because greater numbers will increase the traffic and the noise and the lighting. And lastly, I believe there should definitely be a limitation on the number of events. Thank you for your service.
Next public comment comes from Janice Cox.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council members. My name is Janice Cox. I live at one-three-eight-six-zero Bethany Oaks Point. I am against the special use permit. I feel it could be detrimental to our quality of life at Bethany Oaks. The frequency, the traffic, the hours, the noise, the loud music, the PA system, DJs, alcohol, lighting, I just feel that, and many others do feel in our community, that it doesn't, not fit in an established residential community. It's been mentioned previously that at a, at a previous wedding, we could hear the toast from our deck coming from Mr. Runner's property. You may state in the documents that we are two-hundred-and-thirty to three-hundred-and-thirty feet away, but as mentioned previously, there's open fields, there's a slope, and just how, as voices carry across water, we hear everything. And for that to be imposed on us after eighteen years, thinking that we're safe in our little community, to have a commercial operation like that come in is just, it's unprecedented. And I think you should really consider what that will do to the residents. This is one family that wants to run a commercial operation at the expense of many of us, and I feel it's a slippery slope. I, as mentioned again, I don't know what's coming next. I feel anytime any of you have been to a wedding, the, the noise does not decrease as the evening goes on. It gets louder, there's more ruckus, there's more music, there's more toasting, hooting and hollering, and I don't think that's something that we should be subject to. I just feel that, I think if all of you were adjacent to a property like that, you'd be opposed to it also, especially if the applicant didn't live there. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next public comment comes from Mr. Theodore Cox.
We have four minutes and fifty-five seconds.
Is it okay that I, I put something up here that I can show you something? Is this allowed? Thank you. My name is Ted Cox. I live...
Hold on one second, Mr. Cox.
I just want to get some clarification as to what you all did by extending the time for the presenter in the beginning, so that we make sure we have equal time.
Yeah, I think we had a five minutes. So we'd give total of fifteen.
So we're down to about, yeah, we're down to about forty seconds to make a match.
Okay, I'd be glad to. How many more cards do we have?
We have two, three more speakers, and three to read in the record.
Okay.
I'd like to let the remainder of the four minutes and fifty-five seconds play out. That would be a total of twenty minutes per...
Yeah, I mean, I would be willing to certainly add another almost five minutes, and then obviously they'll go to both sides, but everybody okay with that?
Okay. Thank you very much. My name is Ted Cox. I live at one-three-eight-six-zero Bethany Oaks Point, directly across from the covered riding arena. I guess it's no longer in dispute that, the fact that the traffic is intending to come in one direction and go out another. I understood that some of the City Council members visited the property, but this was never brought to their attention. The original application for review, I think it's noteworthy, that the original intent was seven-point-five acres. Somehow, in consultation with staff and other things, this has been pared down to four-point-seven acres, but that was never the intention originally. I think you need to look at this map. The direction of the traffic is in this way, and then it goes north up towards this primary parking facility. Yes, now they're talking about the, the traffic going out this direction. We're talking about a buffer in this zone here. What about the people that have to face the traffic that are turning this way? We see lights coming into our property because it's elevated directly into our living room, directly into our dining room, directly into our bedroom, consistently. We had our kids once so upset at age fourteen, they called, they, they couldn't find us. We were across the street at a neighbor's house, they thought there was someone in our backyard with flashlights. This is something that goes on all the time, and I think when you look at the map of what actually is there, this will become even clearer. Yes, Mr. Runner owns five lots.
One.
One, two, three, four, five. This one little parcel is part of one big property that goes all the way to the Bethany Oaks subdivision. This is, this is from a two thousand and six zoning variance request. Same thing, I'll skip this. This is the actual map of the parking. I find this very interesting. We've got a hundred and six parking spots in this scenario. Can imagine what it will be like for the people that have to be in these homes across the way. This is the direction of the headlights that they'll be facing constantly. A four-foot fence is not going to stop lights in this, in these directions. Every single home that's along the side of this property is going to be confronted. Plus, the fact is, they're going to be coming... Plus, the fact is, they're going to be coming into this direction down in the entrance way, then turning, going up here to park, and then turning around and going, exiting that center, all of the slides. I also question the fact is, has Mr. Runner discussed whether or not anything is going to take place outside of this particular 4.7-acre sub parcel? I find it basically inconceivable that everything is-- First off, he was already saying that the traffic is going to exit that way. There's a parking lot at the other end down near Yellow House Farm. Is the intention to use that at all? Or is everything, every truck, every delivery, every tent, every alcohol, every tent, every setup, the band, none of those trucks are going to be next to this particular facility? Because who would want to have a wedding and look at all the truck setup? I think the intention is very clear, to use the facilities at the other end of the property. Yes, in 2006, and I know we've had some discussion with staff about this, in 2006, Mr. Runner's contending now that he's in compliance with all the rules. If that was the case--
Two minutes remaining.
Why did he seek 13 variances in 2006? Why do we have all these pre-existing conditions about lacking of buffers and setbacks? There's a reason why, because an application was made that he was saying these properties were built, being built for his personal use and for his family's use, when he had no intention of that. But then he went before, after he went before the Fulton County Planning Commission and was unanimously rejected those 13 variances, he said, "I want to qualify these properties as accessories to a personal residence." Why does that matter? Because, I'll just have to read this. Article 12-H of the Fulton County zoning resolution states that northwest Fulton overland only applies to properties zoned and developed as non-single-family residential use. As long as the property is being utilized as a single-family residential use, the barns, arena, paddock, etc., are considered accessory. By rezoning this particular property as a special use, as a business, those properties are no longer deemed accessory. What are we going to be doing about that? We have 13 variances. I also have an argument-- This point, he makes the point, this is good for the community, but I think Andy Jordan made the point very well. Limit the expansion of business or commercial uses into established, stable residential areas. This has been established, stable for 18 years. The last point. This property is 230 to 300 feet. That's what he actually says. It's 230 to 320 feet. The fact is agricultural use notices and waivers under the CLUP states agriculture use notice require a new, non-agricultural use, abutting of within 1,000 feet of active agriculture land, to sign a waiver and deed restriction against future nuisance complaints about agriculture operations and their noise into perpetuity.
Time has elapsed.
I've heard no such thing raised by anybody. He needs a waiver from everybody that's 1,000 feet that owns agriculture. Thanks very much.
Thank you. How many more cards do we have?
We've got three more comments and three to read in the record.
Okay. I'll ask the council to add a few more minutes, like five minutes. I don't think, maybe they won't take that. You guys okay with that? And we'll go back to the other side, and that should get us--
I got it, I got it.
--a chance to say something.
Got it.
Next comment is from Richard Calhoun.
Mayor Lockwood, I'm the council. I'm Richard Calhoun. I represent Ted and Janice Cox, and I've given a letter to the mayor and council this afternoon, which I think pretty well explains our position. I'll be very brief. The folks that have gotten up here in opposition have made all the points, I think, that are important here. A couple of reminders. In the special use or the use permit process that the city has set up, it describes the council's discretion as a limited discretion. The applicant has said that he's, part of this is jamming a round peg in a square hole. I think when you look at what the emphasis has been here tonight from Mr. Runner, it's an emphasis on expansion of a business. And again, if you look at the comprehensive plan, and this has been mentioned by several of the speakers, the comprehensive plan recommends limiting the expansion of businesses into stable residential areas. None of you would want to see this sort of expansion of a business in your backyards, and certainly not on a perpetual basis. So asking to eliminate the three-year sunset provision on a use permit is equivalent to asking that the property be rezoned, which is, again, something neither, none of you would want in your backyards, and so we request that it be, that the application be denied. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next comment is from Art Pashayan.
Good evening. My name's Art Pashayan. I live at 13895 Bethany Oaks Point. I'm neighbors with the folks here. Very brief, I'm also concerned about the noise levels that are going to be generated, or potentially be generated through loudspeaker or just by the pure numbers of people being that close to our homes, really. I'm concerned about increased traffic as well. Sometimes that getting out of our subdivision is okay, sometimes it's very, very difficult. There's a lot of traffic that comes up and down Hopewell Road, tremendous amount of traffic. You know, the round peg in a square hole comment actually was really good because it seems like that was posed as being a negative thing, but in reality, this isn't really requesting--
Two and a half minutes remaining.
Yeah, this isn't really asking for an event permit. This is asking for commercial operations seven days a week, so I'm opposed to that. Thank you.
Thank you.
And our final public comment comes from Janice McCloy.
Good evening. I think everything that I wanted to-- I'm Janice McCloy, 2600 Bethany Creek Court, in the neighborhood that's adjacent to the proposed variances. I just wanted, everything that I have on paper to say has already been said, so I just want to know that I am definitely opposed to all this. If it should happen to be approved, I think there are several things that need to be addressed. The number of guests that would be allowed to participate. Additional buffers need to be added. No outdoor music. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I have three to read into the record. First, Lauren Craig, 13915 Bethany Oaks Point, Milton, Georgia. Opposed due to concern regarding noise, quality of life, property value, hazardous road due to increased traffic. Mr. Walter J. Craig Jr., 13915 Bethany Oaks Point, Milton, Georgia. Main concerns are traffic, noise, from unlimited events. And finally, Margie Chergis, 13945 Bethany Oaks Point, Milton, Georgia. As a resident of Bethany Oaks subdivision for 18 years, I have seen much development in this area. After the construction of the Christian High School, I have to listen to the loudspeakers while sitting on my back porch in the evening. I do not want to have the same coming from the front side of my house as well. In addition, I feel that the approval of this zoning opens up Pandora's Box for future rezoning and amendments on this property, as well as others in our area. The end result will be devaluation of my property and my neighbors. And that is all, sir.
Okay, that is all, concludes our public comments. So I'll close the hearing.
Before you do that--
Oh, I'm sorry. It's late. We've got time for the applicant to rebut.
There's nine minutes and nine seconds remaining.
This property is not going to stay the same. Mr. Runner is going to either do this or something else. And this is not in any way meaning is a threatening, it's just a fact. So there is a huge amount of development pressure in the area. So he is not going to continue to hold this property and just have it be a money pit. So he originally came to me on the premise of, you know, how many lots can we get in? And I said, "Well, you know, is that exactly what you want to do?" "Well, no, really, I'd like to, but we're going to have to do something." So there are other use permits or other uses that do not require a permit. So we sat down, and we sat down with staff, and thought this was the best use for this particular piece of property. Put a fair amount of foresight in, created it where we thought we were buffering the neighbors, and coming up with a good plan. So as a lifelong resident, you know, anything that preserves the larger tracts and gives us the character that we have now, you know, I really think we need to be focusing on that instead of just another one-acre-lot subdivision. So, thank you.
I want to respond to a couple of things that were said during the opposition. One is, we do not live on the property. Our intention when we bought the property was to actually have burial plots put on the property. We were never going to leave the property. Unfortunately, we're driven off by some harassment from the neighborhood, and you decide life's too short. Go live somewhere else. If you don't want to do it there, live somewhere else. We've never built the barn to be a commercial venture. When I made the original application or the permit, for the building permit, we checked commercial on it because it had two choices. Was it a residence or was it a commercial operation? It obviously wasn't a residence. It is not an accessory structure to the house. Most of the things that Mr. Cox said about the barn and how it was set up is not correct. It's an accessory structure. The arena is an accessory structure to the barn, which has an apartment in it, which makes it a residence. Never had anything to do with the house at all. Going on with my-- Can you put my presentation back up? We talked about the variances, you know, the opaque, eight-foot opaque fence, neither of us want it. The buffers, we have a concern. We want, we do not want to affect the rural feel or the charm, and the planning commission went along with that. That five-foot fence with the plans in front of it, if we feel, or you all feel, that we need to do something there, we're more than happy to go down to the Bethany Oaks property line and put a buffer there. And we can certainly plant some Leyland cypresses or something up along that line to protect them from any lighting. We do not want to block the view of our pastures or our arenas. We do not want to create the pinned-in feeling for the wedding, and we do not want to buffer ourselves from ourselves. You know, we've got over 250 feet of pasture between us and the neighbors. We're going to have all the cars along that east border back into the parking spaces. That way, the headlights won't be shining into the neighbor's houses. You know, that's something we did with the first two weddings that we had there. You know, Milton is a distinctive community embracing small-town life and heritage while preserving and enhancing our rural character. The buffers that we're doing just take away from that rural character. You go out into the country, you don't see buffers between every two houses or between every house. It just takes away from that. The next thing I want to talk about is the three-year renewal period. It reads, the actual ordinance reads, "The festival or event shall be limited to a three-year period from the date of the city council's approval, not to exceed a total of 180 consecutive days in a calendar year." So obviously, it wasn't set up for a wedding. You wouldn't have a wedding that's going to be 180 consecutive days. This is a non-starter for us. We can do everything, you know, Scott said, we can do everything right and still be shut down. It does not allow us enough time to recoup our substantial investment. The uncertainty of being able to continue operations interferes with the booking of events. It requires that we go through this process every three years, and having been through it now, this is enough. We aren't going to do it again. It's very expensive and very exhausting. And it doesn't close the zoning action, which then allows the maligning of us and our farm to continue. It doesn't stop the issue. We're going to have to redo the driveway entrance. We're going to have to put sprinklers throughout the house, which we don't want. We have to do handicap accessibility and handicap bathrooms. So we're going to have $150,000, $200,000 in investments here. We can't get that back in a three-year period. This next chart shows the actual uses that we can do in AG1, and I'm sure you're all familiar with this, so I'm going to hit it very briefly, but we can do a, you know, single-family dwelling, we can do some sort of agricultural things, you know, either a chicken house or greenhouses or some sort of a cattle farm. We can do a roadside stand, or, and this is the one that I find most interesting, we can do a kennel, veterinary clinic, or a veterinary hospital. When we bought the location that our barn's at on, and the neighbors talk about how they've had 18 years of peace and all that, well, that's not exactly true. When we bought the place, the lady had 72 dogs there, and these very same neighbors that are here tonight spent years trying to drive the dog lady, as they called her, off the property. And we were able, successful, by going in and buying her property from her. If you don't like what's on the property, buy it. It's kind of our philosophy. So that's what we did. So we could turn this in under that use permit, and again, this is not a threat. I'm just showing you what can happen. I'm making a point here. We could turn that into the Dog Castle at Milton, have room for over 1,000 dog kettles on the property. We can take the lower 10 acres, we could put rental houses at Yellow House Farm down through there, come out, even go on further over, take out our lower arena and put rental houses there. But that's not what we want to do. That's not what Milton was about. That's not what we loved about this property. This is a charming rural setting, and we want to continue to keep it that. Now, here's a list of all the miscellaneous uses that are in our ordinances. Now, this is more than just AG1, but this is every miscellaneous use that we have. And I'm not going to go down through them, but I want to pick out a couple. We could do a landfill, we can do a rock quarry, we can do, there's an airport, we can have a heliport. There's a number of things that we can do on there, but not a one of them. The only one that requires renewal period is a festival or events, outdoor and indoor. That's the only one. Nothing else has a renewal period on it. Now, under the actual things that we can do on our property with a use permit, you know, we can have an aircraft landing area, we can have an amphitheater, it'll fit, we could have church temples and places of worship, we'd have a driving range, and I've highlighted the ones that make noise and the things we could do. We could put a campground or retreat in there, we could do a racetrack. I was shocked. We can do recreational fields, we can do schools, private or special, or we could be here, asking here for the stadium, you know, associated with private school. We could be asking for any one of those. None of those have a renewal period on them. I'm not sure what the deal is against weddings, but for some reason, it appears something's against weddings. All of these uses create significant traffic and make noise, some more than others, and are not required to renew the permit. However, we're going to throw out a carrot.
One minute remaining.
If you feel that you need to do something, then set by limits whereby if we exceed it, you take the permit away. Allow the zoning action to be done. If we exceed, say you give us five citations, and I'm just picking a number, five citations in a year, if they're upheld by the courts, then we have to come back before you and show why we should not lose our use permit, rather than come back and beg for you to give it to us again in three years. Whichever way you go, we request something else, and that's that you take action against false reporting, much like you do with false fire--
Thirty seconds.
--or burglar alarms. You cannot allow the neighbors to continue to use the fact that governmental agencies must investigate every report as a means to harass other neighbors. This is a sign of, you know, obviously, you've probably all seen it, a for-sale sign in Milton, they're all over. Here's where some developments are going on. There's an uprising by landowners going on in Milton, as evidenced by the large number of farms for sale and the number of subdivision developments already under construction. You have to allow us more options--
Your time has concluded, sir.
--to make us want to keep our land, not try to drive us off. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, that will conclude our public comments, so I will close the public hearing and open back up for questions or comments from council to either our staff or the applicant. Anybody have anything?
I've got a couple. We've got the approximate five-acre carve-out there. With the egress going out the southern driveway, I guess, how does that affect? Does that need to be included in that, too, with that traffic flow going out? Or is that--
It is a condition of zoning there that's a one-way traffic pattern, one way in and one way out. And if you want, Carter to-- Carter, would you like to respond in more detail, please?
Well, I guess my question is, if that driveway is being used because of what may go on in this special use permit, why isn't that, you know, a path, a right-of-way, for lack of a better term? And I don't mean that in the same way that you think of a right-of-way, but why isn't that included in part of the special use boundary? but why isn't that included in, in, in part of the special use boundary?
I mean, currently, it's, it's owned by the same property owner and so it was just a part of, you know, he could do a cross-easement on his own property to access it.
All right. What the, the barn and existing arena, what, what accessory use is it tied to? Is it tied to the, to the house, the yellow house?
No, the barn is the residence because Fulton County may have put a 3,000 square foot apartment in the barn. So the barn was established as a residence. Then the arena is an accessory structure to the barn.
To the, to the barn residence.
They're, they're on their own separate 10-acre parcel.
Okay. And do you propose, while you're up there, any, anything to do with any wedding or event going on outside of the, the boundary that you've carved out?
We don't even propose parking a car or a truck or anything outside of the boundary that we carved out. Everything will be done there, with the exception, if they do something at the barn, they'll come in because, you know, every property is allowed to come in twice a year and get, get a use permit or get a, you know, one-time permit. So anything like that would go through the barn and they would, they would do that. And we've done that on a couple of occasions. We had a charitable event at the barn for the Down Home Derby and that's, you know, for children's function. They came and got a permit for that.
Okay. Kathy, changing, changing the use of the current yellow house to something other than residential has no effect then on anything with the barn or the arena?
That is correct. It only relates to the house on that four-acre site. That's what they're asking for.
And can we confirm, you know, talking about zoning changes and all this, but actually this, I believe this is allowed in the AG1 zoning, just needs a special use permit?
That is correct. So that you can look at it on a case-by-case basis.
So a use permit does not set a precedence by definition?
Correct. It's, it's an allowed use, but it needs to be looked at individually.
So we don't have to worry about any kind of precedence being set and?
Correct.
Joe?
Kathy, there's been a couple of comments from folks about the, I guess, the conformity of the property itself. And we've in the past have used the term legal non-conforming to describe properties that have come into existence that basically the city of Milton inherited, but didn't have any say in terms of how it got the way it got. And one of my concerns is obviously, you know, if we're dealing with a legal non-conforming property, I think there's always a little bit more attention that we need to pay to it because, you know, through no fault of anybody's, this property has sprung into being and the city wouldn't have had it that way. But what I'm also starting to realize is that there's a separation of these properties. I mean, if you're telling me that anything that we do to this particular parcel in terms of a special use permit, does it piggyback, tag-along, get affected, change the status of the adjacent property, then I guess, I just want to make sure that the legal non-conforming piece of this whole puzzle is where the barn and the riding arena is. Because the house, the six acres that, that we're looking at for the special use permit is actually, it's just a home on the property. It, we wouldn't classify this as legal non-conforming, would we?
And Robin could correct me, but my, my response would be no. Robin, do you want to weigh in?
No, it's a total separate parcel and it wouldn't affect the, the barn and the riding stable.
Yeah.
Because it's, it's a legal description of the four-point, so, and some change. And so the use permit carries only with that legal description and that's why it's a part of the record.
Yeah. It's just that parcel. And what clouds is, is the fact that he owns other parcels surrounding this one.
Right.
But we're just talking about that one, yes.
So, so, and this may be a question for Ken, but I'll ask you anyway. Regardless of the renewal period of a special use permit, okay, if it's one year, if it's three years, if it's perpetual, if at any point in time, we feel like something is amiss with the operation under the special use permit, does the city have the right to revoke the permit on demand? Or is there some legal machinations that we get involved with in order to revoke a special use permit?
That would be a Kenian question.
Yeah, Councilman LaGoya. The answer is, is certainly not on demand. You know, the city of Milton has policies and you're going to have to follow those policies. If it's three years, it'll expire at three years. If there is conduct on the property that results in the issuance of citations, we have, we have recourse there. We issue you a citation. But I don't think we would have the luxury of just on-demand lifting someone's special use permit. Now, if that's something we want to discuss with respect to the variance that's being proposed, and we want to get perhaps the buy-in of the property owner as part of some sort of a special relief, we might be able to fashion that this evening. But in the normal context of things, no, that's not the way a special use permit works.
One of the reasons I asked the question is because, you know, a three-year, you know, renewal period to me isn't a big deal. If we can give the surrounding property owner some guarantee that if operations are not in accordance with what the permit is all about, then we can keep that operation from being on, an ongoing thing.
Well, the applicant, I think in the last presentation they provided, offered up sort of a, you know, a solution on that with respect to the X number of citations in a given time period might result in some sort of a, I think he termed it a show-cause hearing. I think if you're going to set up a hearing process by which you're going to basically call into question someone's use permit, you'll have to follow the Zoning Procedures Act.
Okay. All right. And then a follow-up question, Ken.
Of course.
In my way of thinking, a festival special use permit, while it contemplates multiple days of operation, it's really about a single event. And I want to make sure that the permit, the ordinance that we adopted, was it specifically changed to envision the ongoing operation of a series of events that aren't the same event? Or was the original intention to support the idea that we could have a festival here and this special use permit covered the operation of that single event, even though it might have been multiple days?
Councilmember, I don't know. I don't, I don't know that I have the understanding of the intention of the 180-day period within there.
Because, I mean, to me, while I, you know, applaud the ingenuity of binding a piece of code in Milton's ordinances that could cover the operation that the applicant is seeking, I, I'm worried that it's the wrong application of an ordinance or a, or a use permit. In my, you know, way of thinking about this, I can certainly see the Renaissance Festival coming in and saying, hey, I want to run a three-week event in October. And so I need a special use permit to cover that. But they wouldn't get a special use permit that covers, I want to operate this event three weeks every October for the next three years. That, that sort of seems like a different thing.
Well, that's why, again, I don't want to speak for the applicant, but when the first presentation was, you know, made as far as whether this actually fits, I think that was more of a, of an expression with respect to the limitations of our code as it was to the proposed use and whether or not that, you know, our code really is a perfect fit for that. But I think this just goes back to the inheritance of a Fulton County code, correct?
Correct, yes. In light of that, what kind of permit do these country clubs have that offer basically a special use permit? Because that's where most of the wedding receptions are all. I mean, you've got, you know, White Combs, Atlanta National, operating country clubs. They all, yeah, they all have weddings all the time there. What kind of permits do they have and how does, because they're all very much in residential areas, how do these differ from what he is looking at? Because I know they don't get a special use permit.
So they do, there's administrative permit for clubs that are permitted within a golf course. And so it's an administrative permit. And then that administrative permit allows for those types of occasions. So it's only because you already have a golf course.
So if he put a, if he put a, a nine-hole golf course on his 10 acres, then he could, wouldn't have to have a permit at all for the clubhouse there for the facilities? I mean, I guess I'm just trying to understand how all this works.
So let me, you'd have to give me a minute to get to the exact regulations.
And I think the point you're making is the difference between a, a use permit and administrative permit, one being a zoning requirement, one being something, you know.
Yeah, I'm just trying to figure out what the difference is. Because, I mean, let's face it, that's where we have wedding receptions and stuff in the city, is at these country clubs. They're all very much in the middle of residential areas. I mean, every Saturday night at Atlanta National on the front lawn, if it's not raining, there's a wedding going on.
Right. Yeah, I think the only, the only difference, I guess I would note is, in that case, you already had a golf course with the country club in existence as people came in.
Maybe further to that point, just to add some more fuel to the fire here. There are other farms, there are other barns, horse farms out in, in the city. I cite at least three or four of them right now, up on Birmingham Road and Wood Road, several others around. And I know they have special events. Do they apply for an administrative permit? Or do they have a, a special use permit to conduct their events?
Robin, you want to respond to that quickly? It's, it's usually a special event permit that they get because it's, it's not a continuous type of business. So if they're having a, you know, a fundraiser for something, and they'll, they'll call us and so that we're knowledgeable of it and we can watch the traffic and whatnot. But that would usually come under a special event permit as opposed to a use permit, which is a business operation of a special event facility. So just a little different.
But the problem with the admin, with that is that you're only allowed so many administrative use permits for a special event per year. And so because Mr. Runner knows it's going to exceed the, the requirement, that's why he's asking for that. And so.
But those don't have to have all of the, the different sprinkler systems and everything else that were required for this kind of facility.
Correct. It's just occasional.
Because of, because it's an occasional type. How many of those are they allowed to have a year?
Let me look that up.
We're asking what the question is.
You know, we're just looking it up. Let me, let me weigh in just quickly. So we've got a reasonable parallel drawn between that type of an event and this type of an event. Usually what catches the one-off, I'm going to have an event at a barn and I need to put a tent up, is the production or consumption of alcohol. And that's usually what triggers the permit. I think that's what causes people to all of a sudden find us because they need a license to be able to pour alcohol. Are there weddings that probably occur in the northern expanses of Milton on a Saturday that are never once known by this city? The answer to that question is probably yes. But there's not any that occur with the type of repetitive basis that we would be four out of four weekends in a month. And once it starts to get that intense of a use, that's when we start to, to capture those things. But the, the trigger that usually sends these special events to us is when they decide they want to start pouring alcohol and they need a permit to do that.
So it's, it's two administrative permits shall be granted per year and no permit shall be effective for more than 14 consecutive days for a single permit. So.
And do you find a thing about how the, for the country clubs, is that because they're adjacent to a golf course? Is that what that is? Could you go and look that up?
Right. I believe that, I haven't been able to find that yet, the exact. But I know it's allowed under CUP that a golf course and a club. And I believe that with the alcohol license, and maybe Stacy can confirm it, that alcohol is allowed, license is allowed to pull, be pulled at a club, which is an exception really, as far as not requiring a full restaurant and all that. So let me just keep on figuring out how that happens.
But I'm not sure. Are you trying to parallel?
Well, it just seems like we're trying, we're trying to fit, we're trying to fit something into a place that really doesn't fit because we don't know what, we don't have a ordinance that fits a special, you know, a special event facility. So we're trying to put it under this 180 days. Man, yeah, I hope nobody's wedding lasts 180 days. But, so I have no marriages that have lasted less than 180 days. But, uh...
So I had a real quick question for Mr. Runner. First of all, your house is beautiful. The property is beautiful. It's unfortunate there seems to be a difference of opinion between you and your neighbors in terms of, you know, how this could potentially operate. But in contemplating, thinking about all this, I wanted to ask you, is it your intent to be the proprietor, the custodian, the person that operates the business? Is it going to be a family business? Is it going to be sold off to somebody else to operate? Who's, who's actually running the business?
Sally, Amy, Anna, Audrey, stand up. Those four.
And my daughter-in-law.
These are friends of yours or?
There's my wife.
My friend, three daughters.
Three and my daughters.
All right. That was a loaded question. I sort of, is, who operates your, the business on the barn property today? Okay. So daughter, sister?
No, she's a, she's a trainer.
Oh, okay. Okay. So, so your vision for what's going to go on is keep this in the family, make it a family business, that kind of thing?
Most definitely. Most definitely.
All right. Thank you.
Um, go ahead, Matt. Just a question for Mr. Runner as well. I mean, explain how come there, obviously with the history of your neighbors as well, why there isn't a planted buffer on the far east property line next to Bethany Oaks? I'm just curious about that. Is there?
Because there was, we went for, I guess I need to back up. We built the barn. We operated the barn for about a year and a half. I went down to get a building permit and Fulton County says, oh, we aren't going to issue any more building permits until you resolve the issues with your neighbors. And we're like, what issues? And they pull out a stack of papers about this high of all these complaints. Well, I didn't go through the process or the procedure to get them. I just went and started going through the neighborhood and they all pointed to one or two houses. And, and I went over and talked to them and it became readily apparent that there wasn't going to be much solution to this. So I went down to Fulton County again and talked with Randy Beck down there. And he said, look, the safest thing you can do, we're about to become, you're about to become the city of Milton, apply for a use permit. So why do I need a use permit? He says, because you don't own half the horses, which we only own 13 out of the 30. So, you know, had a day or two to apply. So we went ahead, filled out the application. I saw Pete Hendricks walking around in the lobby. I grabbed Pete. Pete says, yeah, I think you need a use permit. So we applied. Then I spent the weekend going through all the ordinances on the internet and reading everything and called Pete Monday morning and said, Pete, see what you can set up downtown. We need to go down and talk to them and find out why I need this use permit. We got down and about a week later and Pete, you know, Pete's sitting there and I'm asking him, where, show me anywhere in the ordinances that horse ownership is relevant. You know, we're a residential land, residential use. We're operating it. Half the horses, you know, a third of the horses in there are ours. We're riding them. Where is horse ownership relevant? And they came back with, Mr. Runner, you're absolutely right. I said, well, fine. Give me my money back for the use permit application and then we'll go on down the road. Couldn't. It already had been submitted to the paper for a public hearing. So we had to go through the whole process, knowing right from the get-go that we were going to withdraw. And the reason we were withdrawing is because Fulton County ruled that everything that we were doing and wanted to do was perfectly within their ordinances. There's no, I'm not sure where the non-conforming comes up. We were never non-conforming under their guidelines. We didn't need the buffers because we were a residential land use. But we proposed to the three or four who sought an attorney that we would plant buffers, but they would never come to what they really wanted or anything reasonable. And then finally, we just, you know, we had our lawyer send him a letter saying, hey, stop harassing us or we're, we're going to go after you. And that's where it ended for a while. Now we started this process and it all started back up again.
Robin, something else?
I did, I'm sorry. It took a little digging. I don't, you wanted to answer to about how a golf course and?
Yeah.
Okay, so there is an administrative permit for golf course. And it says, required districts all standards. And it goes into the standards. So then it says, it doesn't really talk anything about clubs or anything specific to what we're speaking of. So I looked in the definitions of golf course. Golf course means a use of land for playing the game of golf. One, the term golf course includes a country club and a driving range as an accessory use. The term golf course does not include miniature golf. And then just by the definition of country club, a country club would include And then just by the definition of country club, a country club would include, you know, food and beverage and I assume entertainment areas. So that's how those uses are permitted through some of the country clubs and the subdivisions with the golf course. And then the alcohol licenses are permitted through allowing it in at a golf course.
So if he built a golf course on 10, at 10 acres, then he wouldn't have to go through any of this. I mean, technically, that's just the way this, our ordinance has worked.
I mean, I, like Chris said, there's probably a lot of things that go on out there that we don't really know about, but.
That's a, that's a strong conclusion for us to be able to draw on the spot.
Yeah.
I wouldn't want to, presumably we could interpret our code that quickly and make that.
Two good questions, I'm sorry. Jeff, again, would you be amenable to buffers on that East property line? You know, I'm just curious.
Where the neighbors want them, I won't.
Like you say, if some did not want them, then they.
You mean, you're talking about between us and Bethany Oaks?
I'm talking like on the other side of the, yeah, exactly, right there on that East property line.
Not buffering us from ourselves, but buffering, yes, we'd, we'd do that.
Unless the homeowners on Bethany Oaks.
Yes, a lot of them tore out their buffers to see the horse farm. And so we're trying, I mean, we're trying really hard to come up with a use that won't interfere with them. You know, we had tenants in the house, that didn't work out. So we got more complaints from the tenants were there than we did when we were there. So we're trying for a use that won't interfere with the neighbors. They, a lot of them tore out the buffers, the natural buffers that were there so that they could see the horse farm. And like the mayor said earlier, one of the worst things you can do anymore is own land because they put subdivisions next to it and you're, you're looking at trees, now you're looking at the backs of people's houses. So, you know, we, when we had these two weddings that we inherited, we had the cars back in specifically so that the headlights wouldn't shine across there. Even though if you go to your, your driver's manual, it says you have to turn off your bright lights when a car is 250 feet away. Well, these houses are further away than that. You know, we're 250 feet if it's our land and there's another 100 plus between the border and their houses. But we still had them back in just so that the headlights wouldn't shine in. Planning a fence along the line that they were talking about and putting a buffer there, I just think that stuff just really just takes from the rural character of the property. Planning commission, you know, with the, I was even prompting them, they were, no, we don't want that. You know, that takes away from the charm. But you, you start making these pent end peninsulas with, with buffers and it, it just doesn't look good.
Next question, next question I have is, a lot of them have said that you're going to have an unlimited number of parties and events. Are you planning on doing this seven days a week?
I'm, I'm 59, 50, I don't know, 50, I'm so old I can't remember. But I'm, I don't have the energy to do it that often. We, we want these events to be, and this is really, I say we, it's really my wife and daughters. They want this event to be something special for the bride. We aren't going to be a wedding meal where they have one on Friday night, two or three on Saturday and a couple on Sunday. We might have two on a weekend, on a really, really busy weekend. But more, most weekends it'll be one wedding.
Are you amenable?
And I don't even think it's going to be every weekend. You know, we just, I don't see it getting that busy.
Are you amenable to it being just like Thursday, Friday, Saturday and maybe by, you know, done at 6 o'clock on Sunday?
I don't have a problem with that. I would, I don't want to limit the weekday type stuff though because there, there could be a baby shower or a bridal shower or, you know, charitable.
I would almost think the market would dictate that. I don't know too many people that say, let's get married on Tuesday or Wednesday or Thursday.
One of the planning commissioners came out and said something about the Rotary Club or something, having their meeting there on a Wednesday afternoon or something. I don't even know if that's even, you know, like, like the mayor said, the market, I think, would dictate that kind of stuff.
Well, I mean, I'm just, I'm just trying to think of other ways as well to work.
You know, we, we missed the biggest wedding day and that was 12, 12, 12.
So, or 13, you know, so we won't have a 13, 13, 13, so, you know. Okay, I have a question for you is, obviously if, and I've heard this from some of the residents next door, if he were to get this permit and then sell, it's not a transferability of ownership on this, or is there?
No, the use permit goes with the property.
Goes with the property or with the owner?
Yeah, but I'll tell you, if that's not, that's not our intent. I mean, to be honest, and I'll, I'll be as honest and as blunt as I can be here. If we wanted to screw up the neighborhood, we would put a kennel in the barn and I would put rental properties on the other side. I mean, that's what this is, this is about. We love this property. We hated leaving this property. It was a very tough decision, living it. But you get to a point where you, the cops can only show up so many times and you say enough's enough. And we're looking for a way, the kids love the property. We're looking for a way that the kids can continue to have the property and not be a detriment to Milton.
Do the kids live on the property?
Uh, my daughter's moving in next week.
Thanks, Bill.
Going back to Ken, and on the conditions of the use permit with the three-year renewal. As I understand it, if you could clarify it for me. Anytime during the three-year or the three-year period, we establish X number of citations that come up, we could sus, it's my understanding then that we could suspend the use permit or give them some period of relief to rectify it. And the second part of it is, what triggers either suspension or continuation of the use permit after the three-year period is up? Is it still conformed to whatever conditions we apply in the first three years?
Going to the first question, the default, the default rule is that you get a use permit and in Milton, with, with, in this particular subject matter, it's good for three years, all right? What I thought the applicant proposed in their presentation was, in an effort to try and persuade that perhaps there's a way that the council could be comfortable, was during some period, I don't think it's three, I think that the applicant wants longer than three. But at some point, if there are X number of, I think it was successful citations. In other words, I assume either a plea or a finding of guilt by the city court, that they would then be required to come back before the council for what I heard was a show cause hearing, in which event you may strip them of their permit, of the special use permit. What I'm suggesting to you is, is I would be okay with that, A, if we have the applicant agreeing to it on the record. And B, of course, that's going to be a little bit interesting because I suspect that last citation in any year may go all the way to the, to the Supreme Court, to the extent of trying to fight it if they believe they're about to lose their permit on the final adjudication. But I would be okay with that if that's going to be your triggering mechanism. So if that's your, if that's your question, I'm good with that.
Although I'd like to add that that might be the legal answer, but practically that is impossible to enforce. So can we put it on paper and say that that's, that's a possibility? Yes, is that, in, in the real world, what does that look like? Where we send somebody out there to take enforcement action based upon noise or parking or something else? If you have a threshold that you need three of those before it comes back to the council, practically that gets tied up somewhere so that it can get drawn out for long beyond whatever we, kind of timeframe we could put to it. So I can see that noise violation ended up right down in Fulton County Court. And then 18 months later when they lose it, you're, the substantial justice that you're looking for is.
They're saying it has no teeth.
Not, well, the reality is not practical.
Well, would be in favor of saying after three violations, it comes back to the city council? That, that doesn't make any sense. Uh, my thought is that if the applicant is signing up for this kind of monitoring, it's just, hey, if we, three strikes and you're out, or eight strikes and you're out, or five strikes and you're out, whatever that is. But to get to the finer point that you're trying to make here, Chris, how does, how many successful noise ordinance tickets has the city of Milton given out in its history?
Two.
What made them successful? In other words, what was the burden of proof?
Unreasonable noise, it was the, you know how we have in.
No, it's very specific in our ordinance. It's got to be above this level for this number of minutes and this, that and the other.
Respectfully, I'm going to disagree with you there because we have both the perceived and an actual component towards those ordinance. We have the actual, which is the deals with the decibel level. We have the perceived, which deals upon a reasonable and standard of the person that responded. If the decibel level's not met, we can default to the perceived part of the ordinance. So it does have two components. And I'll take you back in time to where the noise ordinance is, the citations that we've written. And it's a restaurant that exists on Highway nine.
Right, right.
My neighborment, so, you know, I can tell you exactly where they are, but that was not the decibel level that was enforced. That was the perception part of the ordinance that was, that was enforced.
Is that what was enforced in the other case as well? Are both of these the same or?
The two that I mentioned when I said two are both at the same place.
Okay.
So if you know of a third, then I stand corrected.
No, no, I, I don't know of any others. And that was my whole point is that, is it so difficult to prove that even setting this up as a triggering mechanism is sort of silly on its face?
Well, you made the, you made the point of X number of strikes and you're out. And the trick is going to be the strike. What is the strike?
Yeah, that's, that's what I'm saying.
And if it's an adjudication of a finding of guilt at the city court, then that's what my point was. As we get closer to that threshold, you can look for the defense to become a little more strident. And, and to Chris's point, we have seen, you know, these demand for Fulton County State Court adjudication, they take a year and a half.
It's easy to say, it's hard to commit.
Let me try to pull this back and kind of go, what I'm hearing, and I've got two concerns. One concern, I've heard from residents and their concerns with, you know, noise, lights, traffic. Another concern though is that we have heard from a lot of our citizens and I think if you look back at, at the mission of the city of Milton, we want to preserve equestrian. We want to promote people with larger pieces of property to hold on to them. It seems like everybody's up in arms when, when these properties are now being sold and developed into subdivisions, even if they're AG1. And, you know, we can't force someone not to sell their property or build houses on it or develop it. But we want to promote that. And, you know, to me, this could be a win-win. You've got a beautiful piece of property, a beautiful historic home. You've got a way that promotes, people come to Milton, they see this beautiful horse farm and maybe it'll trigger some other people to buy some more horse farms and, and stay here. So I, I see the positives, but I also see the issues and the concerns for the neighbors. So, you know, if, if we're all looking at it that way, we need to look at two things. One, what, how can we buffer? How can we address all, as many of the concerns the neighbors would have? But then also, you know, in order for the applicant to, to be able to use his property the way he's requesting, how can we come up with something that, we know the intent here. You know, the intent is if there are problems with it or whatever, you know, is there a trigger point that we can halt operation or, you know, suspend their operation until whatever? But also, you know, I think we all realize the three-year mark, that's a, a problem too. So I guess the question is, if, kind of think outside the box, we haven't had to deal with this yet. But, you know, what can we do to, you know, if we approve something and the applicant agrees with it and operations, but then if, you know, if they're not doing that, what can we do to, to enforce it? And you guys, tell me if I'm thinking wrong. I mean, I'm, I'm just assuming from what I'm hearing here.
I'd like to say regardless of whatever happens here tonight, I would love for us to look to see how other jurisdictions handle this type of event facility. Because it's, it's got to be handled differently in other jurisdictions than having to go through this kind of use permit with a 180-day thing with a three-year renewal. I mean, that just doesn't make sense for what we're trying to do.
Any thoughts?
Well, I mean, one thing that comes to mind, and again, if you wanted to, because the city manager's point was a good one with respect to the notion of trying to perhaps elongate the period by which the use permit allows. So maybe it's not three, maybe it's five. But then again, I know that the city council's concerned about losing control of it. So how do you still make a mechanism by which you can come back and have the hearing in front of you? From my perspective, if we want to get away from the notion of an adjudication of any sort of guilt, because that, that brings its whole, a whole range of issues to the table. How about just the number of citations that are issued? As the city manager said, citations do get issued. And we're not talking about an automatic penalty. It would simply trigger a hearing. That would be an option.
Was that what he was talking about originally?
No, that's not, I think the original discussion was the notion of some sort of a finding or adjudication of guilt. I'm saying that's going to be, that's going to almost tear the legs right out from the.
So, so what, what are you saying? There's a number of citations, X number of citations. It brings it back to a hearing to the court or the council?
To the council, to the.
You know, is there a, and then what, we suspend operations for a period of time? Or until they get compliance? Or we take the use permit away? What, what's your?
You wouldn't do anything automatically. It would literally be for a hearing, not unlike what you're having this evening, where individuals, both pro and con, could come and speak, including the applicant. And then you could take whatever, you could make whatever decision or render whatever, you know, conclusion you think is appropriate. I think the council's talking about though, just having a triggering mechanism to bring it back before you so you can attempt to address it. For instance, it might be noise. Even if you didn't suspend it, you might then allow some sort of further sound buffering. Or it might be light. Well, you wouldn't shut down the use, but you might allow some additional light barricades or light. But, I mean, so I'm just saying, that's the option.
So Ken, the difference here between a citation and.
Complaint.
Complaint? Now, what, the original thing that we were talking about, I don't want to call it a conviction because that sounds so criminal.
Right, right.
But, yeah, a successfully prosecuted citation.
Exactly.
The difference there is the citation is issued when, on the surface, it appears like something has gone wrong. And the conviction is a, a statement of fact that it was indeed something that went wrong?
That's correct. I mean, it's an adjudication by tribunal.
Because the last thing I want to do is set up some other kind of a venue for whatever feud is going on between neighbors to continue. And the worry that I have is if the, if we set the bar at 15 citations, within the first day, there's going to be 15 calls wanting citations written. And that's sort of.
That's true, but I also don't want to minimize the discretion that your code enforcement officers utilize as well. I mean, my experience has been a lot of those individuals, both men and women, have the discernment to know when there's actually something going on worthy of issuing a citation.
So it wouldn't be based on number of complaints, where they just come out there and decide not. It would be actually when they would go out there and decide that a citation was appropriate.
It was a violation of the ordinance.
Based on what, yeah, what they thought was a violation of the ordinance, so.
And if I could just add to that, don't forget that the citation process is really a three-step process in that first we go and we, we'll, we'll go in and do an inspection and give a verbal warning. And, and then secondly, we'll, we'll give a written warning if it continues. And then the third step is the issuance of a citation. So, so there's plenty of time for the code enforcement officer to ascertain what's going on and to convey that to, to, to the owner, you know, to work through it. So it's just not going out every time and issuing that citation.
Is a citation on.
With, with that, okay, so say if there's whatever citations and then, and before they're heard in the court, we have some kind of hearing, like you say we're having tonight. And whatever decision we make, are we kind of hearing them out of, out of turn there, out of order?
Depends what the timing is, but, but, yeah, one, one process would not necessarily impact the other.
This is going down a place.
Yeah.
Okay.
And the reason it's going down a place we don't want to go is all of a sudden we're going to put our, our enforcement staff in a position of issuing a citation that now is going to have parallel tracks to some level of tribunal, one being the court, one being the council. What's the court do, what's the council do? This, if, if, if we were putting a round peg in a square hole, that round peg just got bigger.
Let me ask you this, if, you know, in all correct, in reality, and I, I see it from property owner's side too, that, you know, a three-year window is just not enough. In all practicality, as, you know, if we, if we had waived that or if we gave that variance, explain what would happen if they don't abide by the, the terms of this use permit? Basically, then the code enforcement would go out there and they'd get tickets, citations after the three times or whatever. They'd go to court, they'd, they'd be fined.
Could be, and they would have all sorts of, because when we go out there and issue those citations or those charges, it then travels in the municipal court system through, all the way through all the appeals and lawsuits. So it leaves our municipal court and it could end up in a court of appeals. It could end up in the superior court. I mean, only a very limited scope happens here before, either as a matter of law or as a matter of appeal, it can be taken out of our hands completely.
Is there enough of a, a, would that be enough of a concern of the property owner and event facility owner? That it would keep them in check to make sure that they, follow what I'm saying? Is there enough?
You don't think so.
The punishment there that's going to keep, keep them on their toes, but.
What's the check and bounds there?
I'm just being real honest with you and making this next statement, that once it leaves here, it becomes a whole lot easier for the person that's been cited. So it's, you know, it's most, it's our easiest ability to get compliance, but also the hardest ability for, as long as we can keep it here, we have the most control. As soon as it leaves here, it gets really out of our control really quick and it becomes fairly small fish. As soon as it leaves here, it gets really out of our control really quick, and it becomes fairly small fish in a big pond scenario. But at least is my experience on these code violations, they're about the, they're about the bottom of the important scale.
No.
Now, what we've been discussing here for the last 10 minutes or so, are the consequences of not doing, not meeting some standard.
Right.
What are the standards? Should we not define the standards?
Well, let me address.
It's the noise.
Noise is one of the biggest factors.
It'd be noise, it'd be the, the time, you know, the, the number of events, number of people.
Trying to get it all out here.
Trying to help you.
Thank you. I guess my point is, I don't wanna see the bar moving all the time. So we've corrected these violations here after two or three citations, now some other violation comes up. Well, the bar was never up here to begin with.
And I guess I'm trying to understand why we have a different bar for this type of permit than we do for other businesses sometimes.
Well, the bar is, is essentially the, the recommendations from staff in the granting of the permit, the special use permit itself. I mean, they're detailed there, plus we have the normal ordinances that exist in the city. I mean, every, everybody in the city has to conform to those, so we're not talking about anything more than that, are we?
Well, I don't know.
Okay, well.
Just wanted to clarify.
Okay, I mean, that's one side of it. You know, the other side is, what can we do to protect the residents, and what kinda bar can we add to this that will alleviate some of those concerns if we were to approve?
That's kinda.
So we got two issues here.
You're, you're right, and, you know, kinda sitting here watching it play out, the, the one thing that might get us off the hook here from even having to have these detailed discussions is whether or not this council even feels that this use is appropriate. And if the use isn't appropriate, then the rest of the discussion doesn't matter.
Right.
But if the use is appropriate, and you decide that this is something that you'd like to see at this location, then I think we need to start doing the heavy lifting and figure out what regulatory controls we put in place to make sure that they stay within some type of a framework by which you're comfortable allowing that use to occur. So, we can, I can, you know, we can go down that road and have those discussions, pretty detailed discussions probably, but if, we need to, I would think we would want some sense as to whether or not this is even a, the use is even a starter at this location. Just, just some thoughts.
Yeah, I don't know, Ken, how you, how you'd do that, or, you know. I'm not looking for a knot of hets or anything, just, again, like I was saying, trying to.
Do you have a question?
Come up with, you know, I said, Mike, I got concerns on both sides, I, you know, and I, I wish I could make both sides happy. But, you know, trying to think of some things that will at least get both sides halfway happy.
Well, what I'm hearing too, is some of the opposition here, several times have been stated, if you approve this application here, here's some of the things that we'd like to see. So I think there's some common ground there that we can start talking about.
How about, I made some list of some things, and maybe we can, the council kinda compile a list and see, you know, if, uh... We talked about buffers, I think that's a, a important one, but, but buffer for light and sound along the property line with the homeowners.
Eastern property line.
Yeah, is that a, and I think the applicant even said he'd be, be willing to do that, so is, is that something that everybody would wanna be concerned with?
Except for the south property line, 'cause I think she specifically said she did not want it, correct?
I think if you got a letter from any of the residents who didn't want that buffer.
I think it was, yeah, it was one, but I'm talking about the main one where, you know, it seems like most of the residents are affected that have spoken or contacted us.
Two of them, the closest to, the closest three to it did not want the buffers, the other ones do, so.
Well, I guess that one concern would be there, if you have, what if you have transferred property, somebody sells, then are you gonna allow the, the new resident to have the opportunity to put up a buffer and go back to Mr. Runner, say now, install it here?
And put one on their property.
Sell what they have, they could plant around.
Due diligence, let the buyer do work.
That, that's a concern, obviously. The noise after 10 o'clock, which I think was in the these transferable lights, screening, you know, what else does?
I think, I think, um, the time on Sunday might be reduced, just from 10 o'clock back to five or six or something, just because it is Sunday. And, um, I don't have any way I can understand that, but I think the neighbors should have an expectation at least of something on a Sunday night. Less noise.
Anybody else? I mean, I think, you know, the main thing is lights and noise and times.
Number of events, I think you'd said too, correct? Like how often?
I didn't say that, and I just, I wanna be careful, you know, with trying to put parameters on our business, and then being responsible if the business is successful or not, yeah, that's not our.
Yeah, I mean, the, the things that we heard were lights and noise primarily, there was a number of guests, which was really both lights and noise when you translate it. Buffers, which, you know, I think we addressed, and the outdoor music issue, which again is a, is a noise issue. But I, I guess I, I've got some real concerns, and, and the concerns are for both parties involved. I'd hate to send Mr. Runner away thinking that he's gonna be able to operate properly under this special use permit, and in reality, it was never envisioned for this kinda thing, and I would hate to, you know, have confusion reign in terms of what's the permit being used for, and is it being used for properly? So, I don't think I got that question necessarily addressed that I asked earlier about that.
Well, I think your, your question was about the whole 180-day element, is that, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah. Yeah, the appropriateness of use of this special use permit for what we're talking about. In other words, are, are you saying, Ken, that there is no doubt that the, what the petitioner's asking for can be done?
Yes.
Under this, okay.
I believe it can be done.
I, I didn't hear you say that earlier, I'm sorry.
But to the extent you're questioning the 180-day, I, I don't know that that has anything to do with this. But I think that under this permit, that he can do this use. I think it's just, it's been raised by multiple people, this 180-day thing, and I think it has nothing to do with this use. But, but the overall classification is fine for this, with these.
But the issue is the three-year.
That's another issue, that's another issue.
Term limit, and then how do we handle that, or, or not handle, or, or give that variance?
Well, I think it's something that needs to be handled, but I don't know how, I mean, like all of us don't know how to handle it, I mean, that's, that's, that's.
I mean, how do we normally do it, when you have, you know, a, a use, and here's the requirements, and, you know, if they're out of, in violation, I guess we go through the code, code enforcement.
That's right.
You know, that was, I was going back to earlier saying, you know, is code enforcement enough to, enough of a sting where the operator realized, you know, can we suspend their service until they, you know, get in compliance, or, you know, how would that work?
Well, I mean, theoretically, theoretically, code enforcement is, is supposed to be exactly that sting. It's the, it's the same sting that most of our, the other residents in Milton are subject to as well, and it's meant to ensure conformity with our code.
But I think you look at a, maybe a case we have ongoing with code enforcement that's, that the city is.
And, and there's code enforcement where it applies to commercial property, where they're, let's say they're doing something terrible, like operating neon lights when they shouldn't, okay? It's obvious that something's going on, and nobody has to call in and say, "That guy's operating his neon lights again." In this particular case, what we're really saying is that code enforcement becomes the one place that the residents who are affected can go to make something happen. So now all of a sudden, we're putting the real impetus on the people that live in Bethany Oaks, who pick up the phone and call the city, and say, "Hey, I can hear the drums playing again," or, "I'm tired of that toast being said, this is the 10th time this hour," or whatever it is. So, so it's real different in this particular case in my mind, but.
I don't think it's much different than the issue we had up on Highway 9, two, three, four, five years ago.
Yeah, that's a, uh...
A noise problem.
I mean, unfortunately, this has got a little history to it, which makes it.
I don't think it's any different than a band playing in any country club. Toast going on all night.
You know, I, I had my kid's graduation party, and the police came and told us, "Turn the band down," so. I, I mean, you know, I don't think it's any different than, yeah, so. But I, I don't know, looking at staff, is that, you know, is this not a simple?
You know, it's simple to write, and, and I just want you all to have the, you know, the reality that these are a lot, these, these types of clauses are a lot easier to write than they are to enforce. I will certainly do our best to enforce, but I just don't want you to have some false sense, and I don't want the community to have some false sense that if all of a sudden this council elects to approve these use, and there either becomes like issues or noise issues that would rise to the level of violating our code, it's not as simple as going out there next week and just putting the close sign up, and saying, you violated what the council, there's a process that goes along with it. And to Councilmember Hewitt's point, you know, we've, we've identified a nuisance in Milton, and now we're working on year seven, getting it fixed. So, you know, there, there's process that, that kicks in when you, when you start to deal with these code things. I just, I just want, as you make decisions, I just want you to do it with your eyes wide open.
Let me ask the question, if this were a new restaurant on Highway 9 or somewhere else, and, you know, got their license, and they're supposed to follow these rules, and then all, all of a sudden, there was a noise issue, or a light issue, or whatever, outside of code, would we be, and there was no history, would we be discussing all this now, or would it be pretty automatic that, "Hey, here's the special use permit, here's the rules you go by, and you agree to it, Mr. Applicant, and if you don't, code enforcement comes out, and you get a citation, you go to court?"
You know, but there, there, that's a great example, but in that example, there's one major difference between that and what we're dealing with here, and that's the zoning that would be required to operate restaurants. So, you know, there's, there's no restaurant that's gonna operate in AG1. So if you were gonna, you'd make the parallel, you'd have to make the argument that this residential zoning was adjacent to a zoning classification allowed a commercial use. And in that circumstance, there's some belief that those two uses are allowed to have different.
Yeah, but the whole reason commercial isn't an issue here, is because this is envisioned as an appropriate use with a special use permit. I argued with myself about this leading up to this meeting, that what we were really doing was special use permitting, commercial operation. And I had to convince myself, no, no, the reality is, this was envisioned as, as a use in AG1, which is what this property is, it's AG1 property, and they just need the special use permit to make, to make it happen.
Now, what?
And let me, let me, let me re-step my question, let's say we're over on the other side of town, and the same issue, you know, you had some AG1 property, and we were doing a special use permit, and there was same parameters, and there was no history there. Would we be discussing all this, or would it just be kinda automatic?
I don't know the answer to that question.
I mean, I think it would just kinda be automatic.
I think it would be more automatic than this has been.
Yeah, I think the, the history's kinda.
And what would happen if, if Joe and his friends at Crooked Creek decided to have wild parties in their clubhouse that were going noise? Would the police just come out there and, all night, would the police just come out there, how would that be handled?
Yes, they would, and yes, they have. At the clubhouse, I wasn't involved, but I know of them.
But that's really more like what this would be, that it would be a restaurant, which is a commercial use in a commercial area.
The reality, you know, if this special use permit is granted, it's gonna have the parameters that have, most of, or some have been discussed already. And, you know, the rule, then it'll be up to the operator to let his guest know that, hey, at 10 o'clock, the, you know, the, the music's off, or it's inside, you know, the light, all these different codes, and if they break that, you know, the police are gonna come. And they're gonna get a citation, and they're gonna shut it down.
I think part of the difference, and, and, and we can argue this, or talk about it for two more hours, or not, and, and, and I don't know if we can come to a wise decision tonight or not. You've got use parameters for use permit, but, but they're asking for four, four variances that are varied from those parameters. And, and a couple of them are, are probably trade-offs, you can all get there, and I think that the one big one is the, is the renewal period. And, you know, I don't know if we, if we defer this and, and try to come up with something for 30, you know, in 30-day period, where we can... I think that would do a better service, whatever we come up with, which may be nothing, than trying to craft something in 15, 30, 45 minutes or an hour. I, Chris asked a question, you know, is this use something we see positive in this area, or good with this area, or fitting with the area, let me put it that way? Then we can kinda craft some of the other things. Well, they go hand in hand to me. I think that we could come up with something that satisfies our concerns, and hopefully the residents' concerns, and the applicant's concerns as well. But I don't know if we can do it at 11:06 tonight. We hadn't done it in the last two hours, I don't think we're any closer to it. I hate to put things off, but maybe that's something we need to think about.
Yeah, I don't, you know, again, I, I hate to put things off if we're gonna just say the same things, but.
We don't seem to be getting anywhere right now.
Yeah.
Well, the, the challenge that I see in the whole process, I mean, is, I understand the flexibility that we're given, the applicant, granting a special use permit, I don't see the counterbalance that we're giving the residents. And, you know, again, you know, if I was living next door to this, I would have no problems with it, except I, I don't. So therefore, I can't live the life that these people have lived, and they say they've suffered, and there's been pain, and I've gotta take them at their word. So, I just don't see where we're giving them any, any options. So I, I, I would like to figure out how we get options into this for the next-door neighbors.
Well, I think we've discussed those, but I would agree with Bert. I think at this hour of the night, I would recommend that we do defer, let's get our, our thoughts all together, and maybe we go out and survey the situation again, let's come back with a clear head, and maybe a plan that's agreeable to both parties.
That would be a good.
I get the sense that, that somebody wants to make most, you know, I would like to kinda, Ken, I'll ask for your direction, you know, let's button this up of what it is, the, let's define what we're, if we have to bring this back, what we're trying to.
And also which neighbors want.
Specifically.
Who wants to be involved?
Yeah, which, which neighbors want to have some kinda buffer, which neighbors prefer not to have a buffer, 'cause I think we heard by, from both tonight, so.
Well, I mean, again, I don't wanna backtrack us at all, but going back to Chris's comment, I mean, do, do we feel, I mean, is, is this the use that you see on the property, or, or do we, are we negotiating conditions before we've decided if this is what we, we wanna have on there, and I don't mean negotiating, but just kinda come up and give staff direction on what to come up with? I guess, I guess it is, because I think that's the, I think that's the implicit instruction you're giving.
I don't think, yeah, I, I'm not hearing from anybody saying they're specifically totally against.
I agree.
I, I think everybody wants a balance that, you know, would, would completely, you know, would serve both, both parties somewhat.
Okay, so I'm just trying to figure out how that to be successful, 30 days from now, we'll bring this back to you, because I've got to, what do we need? Find the right people to sit down with Mr. Runner, as well as, as folks representing his interests, as well as the representatives from the neighborhood over there. And take two parties that we've heard from tonight, really don't share a lot of common ground on the desire for the use, and try to figure out how I can bring them together in 30 days around a plan that's a win-win for both. I don't, that's a pretty tall order, we'll, we'll, we'll try.
I think it started out just by, if, if you guys came back with a solution on how you monitor something like this, without the three-year, you know, just drop dead date, but.
Kinda like Councilmember Pogoria said, is, I, I wanna feel, and I think we all do wanna feel like, that the folks of, of Bethany Oaks come away with something that's positive. And my big beef about the whole thing is, is the concurrent variance number three, and how we can come up with something that is agreeable as it can be to both applicant and neighbors. And that's, that's our challenge, I think, to, to work out what that may be like, what, what we can write and practice.
Okay, so would it be fair then to say, without asking you to nod your head tonight, but would it be fair to say that it's generally the consensus of the council? but would it be fair to say that it's generally the consensus of the council that you'd like to give them the opportunity to try this use, so long as you don't give away your ability to rein it back in if that was a bad decision? Does that, did I capture that?
I think that's the case, in my opinion, that's the case. If that's what we need to, to preserve the property and the historic home and all that's on the property, it'd be nice to try to find some kind of use that would allow that to be preserved and allow it to be kept as an equestrian farm without being turned into another subdivision. So.
But it's work on, I mean, I can, that's, that's, that gives me, that gives me.
But I think it can't be an open ended thing. And this way I'm going from homeowner to the property owner, it can't be an open ended thing. It's got to be more specific. Here are the rules you abide by, and as long as you do that, you can run your business. It can't be something that, you know, there's just things where at any point, you know, we come up with something and yank it. I mean, I don't see for the property owner, if they're going to invest all that money in there, they've got to have, they've got to know the playing field and agree with it from the front end. And on the flip side, then staff can also look at, because I know there was, you know, with the planning commission and some recommendations without buffers and without fence and all that, but I would like to ask our development staff to look at how we can buffer everything from the neighbors that are affected by this. Give us some, Matt?
One other question for Mr. Runner. Obviously, you said three years is not enough time to recoup your investment, if you were to do it?
This isn't about the investment.
Well, I just want to know how long, how long do you think it would take to recoup it?
This isn't about the investment, this isn't about recouping the investment, this is, the time limit is strictly about keeping the zoning action open. I cannot allow for that to happen. I will go with something else rather than keep the zoning action open.
Well, you don't want to.
And the renewal does that. So, if you can't not do it without renewal, I understand. No hard feelings, we got other options. I showed you several of them today, I don't think we're going to do them, but I can't allow the zoning action because that allows the fight to go on. You tie my hands behind my back, give them the gun and say, go make your business work, and I can't do that. I won't do that. So, if that's what the issue is, then let's resolve it tonight and vote no.
Mr. Mayor.
And then I have to ask, why is this the only use? Why is this the only use that you're putting a time limit on?
I just wanted to clarify, I think what I'm hearing then is that from the applicant's position is they, with respect to the three year, it's not an elongation of the three year, it's strip that out, weigh it all together.
And what I'm seeing is this is the only, this special use permit is the only one that has that. Maybe we've got to look at that and say, you know, that doesn't really fit.
I could do amphitheaters, I mean, I'd have to come in front of you and get a permit, but you grant those, you know, landscape businesses, they don't have.
Or we grant the variance, but then we have the stipulations that give us comfort too.
This is the only one that's a closed in permit.
All the others are wide open and you have the same rules for them, you know, if they violate the noise or if they drive too many trucks or whatever, you cite them. We left the property because the police showed up when we were doing things right. Can you imagine what effect it would have if we were doing things wrong? We aren't going to do it wrong.
Maybe the better thing to do then at this point, rather than try to put this wrong peg in the hole, is see if the applicant's willing to withdraw. And if the applicant's willing to withdraw, then let us see if we can write a better code that is more specific to, that's not written to the Renaissance Festival, but written to a special use permit for a wedding facility, a special event facility in Milton, Georgia. You know, that's an option. Two, you know, I shied away from offering that because my thought was that there was the willingness to have a decision sooner than it would take to do that. But if that's truly the desire, I can't imagine that would take us much longer than doing the process by which we would defer for a month or two tonight to see if we could figure out some regulatory controls to get the council comfortable with it. Maybe there's a better, maybe we work better together if we figure out how to get this one off the table for the short term and craft a code that's better written for this function.
I guess along with that, Chris, I'd ask that we also get the community, Bethany Oaks involved to give their input, that if this does go forward, what is it that is amenable? We heard a couple of things where people said, we'd like to see this if you pass it. Well, if we defer it, we want to make sure we've got both parties involved so that when we come back, we've got a solution, we can move forward one way or another.
I'll go back to the fact that if you've got, if Mr. Runner has indicated tonight that absent moving forward with something that just all but strips away some type of time requirement, maybe if that is truly something that's important and that it's not negotiable, if that's not something that's negotiable with the council, maybe just deny the thing tonight. And then we can look at a.
Time periods aren't the issue. The issue is the ability to prevent abuse from taking place. And that's why my initial question was, can we just yank the permit at any point in time? Ken pointed out rightfully that there's a process you have to follow, and I understand, I get it, I wasn't thinking that way, but certainly the applicant has rights as well as everybody else. So, I understand that.
And, you know, in all due respect, I'm not trying to be difficult asking this question again, but, you know, I respect everybody's opinion about, you know, maybe need more time, it's too late or whatever, but if staff takes the time, whether it's a month, two months or whatever, and we go through that and write a different ordinance, how different is that going to be than doing this ordinance with the variance from taking the three year out of there, you know, in reality? And, you know, is it going to be, it'll probably be the same thing where if they did not live up to the conditions, they're going to have code enforcement, you know?
At a minimum, it may trigger.
So, my point is, if that's the only thing we're talking about now, does it dictate taking, you know, 30, 60 days, staff time, applicant's time, everybody's time, you know, does that dictate? Or does the council, you know, know the intent they want?
I would say either, I mean, as a council, we have a responsibility to make decisions and on this particular one, you know, we've been through the property, we've talked to the homeowners. I think that with what you're saying, you know, I don't see any difference coming through if we spend more time doing it. You know, I think from the, from what I heard from the residents, I think the buffers and the time, the noise and the noise being indoors is the most important thing. Granted, we want to make sure that he does that. If he does, and he's amenable to buffers on the eastern property line, you know, I think that will solve the headline issues from a quality of life perspective. And I think that if we were to vote on that for those things tonight, I'm okay with that. I just want to say that.
I'll say, I mean, if we're talking, you know, if it's an up or down vote tonight, I'd be okay with the use and not okay with all variances.
Yeah, you know, there's a couple of options here. Somebody can make a motion that, you know, approval with buffers and, you know, variances, or make motion without the variances, you know, when it can be voted up either up or down. The question is, what, where are we going to get to, you know, we're going to be back, you know, we've got three or four more zonings next week or next month and, you know, we're going to be back here at midnight again. Let's take a shot in the head. You want to take a shot at it, Bill?
I'd rather Bert take a shot at it this time. I shot the last time.
Well, I mean, my shot's going to be real easy, is what I said about.
What'd you say?
13 minutes ago.
Denying the three variances or not?
I'd rather see if we could come up with something outside of this meeting to work on that, giving some teeth, or putting something we can enforce and practice, or write and practice in the enforcement issue. And with that, I mean, I'll make a motion to defer you 1304 slash VC 1304.
You want to second it?
I'll second that.
Just for the record, if you give us, if you're going to do a deferral, I'd suggest February 17, 2014.
To the city manager's recommended date.
February 17, 2014.
That would be the 19.
19, I guess that's a holiday. Okay, February 19, 2014.
Claire Finkage, can the applicant withdraw with that? But then what would?
Motion of the council, I believe the applicant can withdraw.
I don't know what.
Even if we deferred it, he can withdraw it.
At any time.
I mean, he's in front of you this evening. If y'all take an action to withdraw with or without prejudice, you can do that this evening.
And what would the intent be then to resubmit it or come back another time?
The intent would be to use our backup use. If we go into February, I have to renew my COVAC next month. My COVAC is prior to two weeks. It's all some sort of, it's all rip right there.
I was looking at the date, it's either January 20th could be an option or February 19th. I was just trying to.
January 22nd. Okay, well, the council can do.
Can I be the dumb councilman that has to ask the question about what a COVAC is?
Conservation.
Oh, okay, thank you. One for your mayor with the acronym.
Okay, the council could do, you know, they can defer it, approve it, deny it, the office may want to withdraw it.
We got a motion, so we.
We got a motion and a second for.
For what now?
To defer it.
To defer until February 19.
We can't, we can't hear it in January?
You can defer it to whenever you think is appropriate. I would be more comfortable telling you that we could have some substantial work towards progress done, especially this time of year with the other zoning cases on February 19.
And my reason for looking for defer it, Mr. Applicant, is to try to figure out how to make it work.
If you want to go to, is it January the 22nd, Sue?
Yes, it is.
Okay, if you want to go to January 22nd, we could work towards that goal.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. Any more discussion on it?
Well, I mean, we need to, I guess, fix a date to it, and I'd like to.
You said January 22nd.
Okay.
If you want to go sooner, I mean, we'll expedite.
Okay. Bring to a vote, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I think we can do this tonight.
Okay, that passed five to two.
For defer to January 22nd.
Okay, Sue, if you would move on to business.
Our next item is consideration for the purchase of an aerial fire apparatus as a replacement for the current frontline unit. Agenda item number 13301, Chief Robert Edgar.
Mayor and council, before you this evening is a request to purchase a new aerial platform truck to replace our current aerial apparatus. As we presented last week in the work session, this new truck is expected to be more economical to operate and due to the design and the weight of the vehicle. In addition, the platform style aerial will provide an additional safety for our firefighters and give us a greater reach with the 100-foot aerial opposed to the 75-foot we have today. Our plan is, it includes keeping the 75-foot aerial as a reserved piece of apparatus at our Fire Station 41. It is our intent to take advantage of the Cobb County contract, which allows other municipalities to purchase from. We've researched all our options to purchase for this purchase and the Cobb County contract provides us with the best price possible, which we do have budgeted in our current fleet plan.
Excuse me, one second.
Yes, sir.
Want to make a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve purchase of an aerial fire apparatus.
I got a motion by Councilmember Loz, second by Councilmember Lorig, I believe.
Sorry to interrupt you, Chief.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you, Mayor.
You did such a fine job updating us at the last work session. We didn't need to talk about it again.
All right, City Clerk, please call next on him.
Our final item this evening is consideration of the Second Amendment to intergovernmental and sublease agreement between the City of Milton and the City of Milton Public Buildings and Facilities Authority. Agenda item number 13301, Mr. Chris Lagerblum.
Mayor and council, this would be the document that would transfer the lease that the Public Facilities Authority approved to the City of Milton. I do want to highlight, though, that there is, this is the correct contract that we're adopting tonight. We're going to have to go back into the Public Facilities Authority at some point and reaffirm or ratify this version of the contract. There was a couple of, Ken Shink said there was a couple of dates that were messed up in it, nothing substantive, just something we're going to need to ratify. But this is the appropriate one tonight, so then when we ratify the Public Facilities Authority, it will be a good document. Ken, do you have anything to add?
I don't accept just to say that the mistakes with respect to the dates, the document were my office's fault, so we'll, it's corrected in the document you have in front of you, but we'll have to come back for the PFA to ratify.
I'd like to make a motion to approve agenda item 13301.
Second. Yeah, I've got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous.
Mayor, I move that we adjourn to executive session.
Do we have any staff reports? Do we need to do any?
At this hour, I'd rather just get to the executive session.
To the executive session, all in favor, please say aye.
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 To discuss land...
I'm listening.
To discuss personnel.